Called meeting order. Mr. Scott, would you lead us in the pledge? Please rise, take your hat off, put your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll observe a moment of silence.
Shivi, Brekas, Zadra, Delgado, Dorch, Jarden, Kishel.
Here. This time, we'll open up the public comment section. Ronald McGee.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council and Chief Pitts and all his crew. Thank God we have an honest police chief. I'm in some places that ain't the story, but I just wanted to say one thing, a little humor for Chief Pitts, that he doesn't know that the camp down here under the bridge where the 25 people were sleeping by the police station, they named it Camp Pitts because it's a Pitts living there, but there's 25 of them there. So anyway, number two, I want to go on to, that was the humor. I got a parking ticket on Second Street that's pretty amazing. I have a BMW that I have trouble passing smog. Been fighting with the referees. It's an Autobahn car. Well, Metric Motors, I shouldn't drop names, but they screwed it up worse so it wouldn't even run, so I got stuck on Second Street. In the snow, I didn't realize there were some little red spots on each side of the driveway, and all the buildings are vacant. They're all locked up, tired in a barrel. Nobody living there, no business, but the volunteer police, the next day or two, come by and give me a ticket. They can't give citations for tags or nothing, but they had my car towed to Sparks. Why would you tow a car and give away money that should go back into Reno? Don't tell me the answer. But anyway, it's over in Sparks on Glendale. The bill is $750 already. I don't know if Pitts wants to pay for that, but maybe Evans will. Okay, he has a lot of money. Anyway, I'm still officially going to run for Mayor of Sparks as 13th, but I might back out due to Gino's going to run again. We talked about that. And I've been asked to run in Virginia City because they only have one person running up there, it's some female that's a famous author and brothel owner. So that town is kind of like a mayor with a dog. You know, they don't really have mayors too much. But anyway, who was my time? Oh, 113? There was something else. Oh, due to this BMW, about two or three weeks ago, I stopped on Fourth Street because they thought I was a drug dealer or, what was the other word? Pimp. Okay. So the tag was expired, but I had a temporary in the window. Six police, I'm an ex-fighter profile, heavyweight boxer, 64, 5'6", Army football player. They bring six officers, jumped me, knocked me to the ground, and then one officer come from the paddy wagon, very professional, pulled them off. The lady officer was real nice. She moved my car over to handicap parking, so I didn't get it towed that time. And then the officer on the paddy wagon, he had a couple stripes. He should be a sergeant, but then the sergeant showed up with a rocker, too late, so they detained me for eight hours and let me out because they gave me a $1,000 ticket. You know why? Because they said I knew Chief, I said I knew Chief Pitts. They said I was lying.
You got off cheap.
So I gotta go to court tomorrow, huh?
You got off cheap.
Well, no, that's cash bail. I get it back when I go to court.
No, if you knew Chief Pitts, it'd be more.
Well, the officer out there didn't know him. That's the sad part.
Oh, excuse me.
But anyway, I'll let you have the last second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Bob Knoll. Bob? Bob Knoll? Oh, okay, all right, there he is. Got you buried in back there, Bob.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, ladies and gentlemen of council, esteemed staff, and Chief Hernandez. Many of you may recognize me as an employee of the Reno Fire Department. I have spent many hours in these chambers during council meetings, and we have met in other meetings and in the hallways and elevators. I retired from the Reno Fire Department on January 10th, 2014, after 26 years with the City of Reno Fire Department and 32 years overall in the fire service. I wish to take this opportunity in this forum to thank the citizens of Reno for the opportunity to serve them in a multifaceted manner in which emergency services function. It is an uncommon privilege to enter people's homes and lives, usually when our clients are having a difficult or catastrophic event. The professionalism and caring demeanor I have observed in these emergencies exhibited by the personnel of the Reno Fire Department have, I believe, repeatedly mitigated the emergency and confronted, or excuse me, comforted the victims to the extent possible. I strongly feel that the City of Reno and its leadership can take pride in the services that this agency provides. This is exemplified by the actions of Police Fire Dispatch and other City of Reno Department personnel in both small and significant events, such as the Miss Bah Hotel Fire, the Collin Ranch Fire. I was the incident commander at both of these events. I was impressed but not surprised at the work effort and dedication exhibited by all responding City of Reno personnel to effect the resolution of these incidents. While assigned as a division chief in the fire department, I worked directly and indirectly with staff representing all departments in the city. I observed competency and professionalism exhibited by these individuals. You can be proud of the work they do and the services they render to the citizens and the city's visitors. Although I hope to do some traveling and fishing and spend more time with my wife and family, typical activities of retirement, I will continue to serve people and my church in whatever capacity to which I am called. Thank you to the citizens of the City of Reno for allowing me to serve you, our community, and our visitors for the past 26 years.
Mayor, distinguished members of the City Council. My name is Fran Lane. I'm the president of the Iron Nation Motorcycle Club, and this club is dedicated to raise money for Nevada military families that need assistance. And the way we do this is through our annual charitable event, Never Forget 9/11 Memorial Ride. This year, it will be September 13th at Cottonwood Park. We took a leap of faith last year and moved it to Carson City in the event of trying to raise more money for that event, and it was a successful event. And we were able to donate $19,000 in that one-day event to the Nevada Military Alliance Support, Support Alliance Fund. But there is no place like home, so we're going to bring it back to the Reno Sparks area and have it at Cottonwood Park. And once again, we just want your support in our event and possible assistance in the direction of our parade and whatnot. I know a lot of times the motorcycle officers always like to come out to our event, so just to let them know as well that we really appreciate their assistance and would like to have that again this year.
Well, you'll get it, but also go visit with our special events coordinator so we can get it in the hopper right now.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. You'll do a great job. Yes.
Sir, are you aware that the event applications for assistance from the city will be reviewed in February? Are you prepared to have yours submitted by then?
Sure.
Great, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Christopher Corbett.
Yes, good afternoon, Honorable Reno City Council. Christopher Corbett, Panda, People Against the National Defense Authorization Act, Northern Nevada Chapter. I'm happy to see that the grassroots initiative to stand up against creeping federal tyranny continues to take hold. I have two pieces of news here. The first is Emmett, Idaho City Council bans the NDAA detention provisions and the laws of war. On Tuesday, December 17th, the Emmett City Council approved Panda's Restoring Constitutional Governance Resolution, thus banning the detention provisions of the 2012 National Defense Authorization Act and the application of the laws of war, which originally made Emmett as well as Reno a battlefield in the War on Terror. The resolution also encourages the state legislature to interpose against these detention provisions and Idaho's congressional delegation to take steps to repeal them. Emmett grows a wave of cities banning the provisions and the laws of war as unconstitutional, including Albany, New York, Oxford, Massachusetts, and Webster, Massachusetts previously. Emmett's resolution states it is unconstitutional and therefore unlawful for any person to arrest, A, arrest or capture any person in Emmett or citizen of Emmett within the United States, B, actually subject a person in Emmett to disposition under the law of war, or C, subject any person to targeted killing in Emmett or citizen of Emmett within the United States. Also, on December 17th, the Clark County Commission passed their portion of a joint resolution. Back in March, the Las Vegas City Council in a five to two vote passed a resolution voicing dissent, which had been modeled after a resolution passed by the San Francisco City Council. It's not quite as strong as the Restoring Constitutional Governance Act, however, it is a step in the right direction. Our Clark County Chapter head, Daphne Lee, basically after the Clark County Commission had tabled the resolution and it became clear that they did not want to bring it up for discussion at all, she began to approach an public comment. She delivered a very powerful and impassioned six-minute public comment, which was uploaded to two YouTube channels. Currently, between those two channels, it has received over 180,000 views and has led to interview requests from amongst others, The Washington Times and former Congressman Ron Paul for his Ron Paul channel. Back on December 17th, the Clark County Commission had placed that resolution on the agenda, and I'm happy to say that they did pass that resolution in a six to nothing vote. So it leaves me to wonder, we've spoken about this here previously, and it's pretty much gone nowhere, so I'm just wondering why it is that these people, they get it, they see the threat of, you know, creeping federal tyranny. They see what's going on, they're willing to stand up, uphold their oath of office, and take action. So I don't know what the disconnect is here and why we can't get something done here locally within Reno, within Washoe County, and within the state of Nevada. So I encourage you, I've brought the Restoring Constitutional Governance Resolution here, there's eight of them there, so I think that's enough for everybody. I'd ask you all to take a look at it, and I do also intend to forward you guys the link to the video of Daphne Lee. Thank you.
Eddie Lorton. Hi. Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Eddie Lorton, for the record, and I wanted to speak today, I want to congratulate Mr. Pitts for his great service he's done for the community first off. And then today, I've analyzed a few things that are on the agenda, and I'd like to see how a few of you are going to vote today so I can see how we're going to move forward in the future on a few different items like the bonds and ADP. So I hope we can move forward from here and be more fiscally responsible, and thank you.
Mark Markell.
Cool. Hi, Mr. Mayor and City Council members and Mr. Mayor. Hi, my name is Mark Markell, and my mission in life is to educate students in the community about what happens when one gets in the car with a drunk driver. I'm reading for this today because I suffer from a traumatic brain injury and get off track. Through much bad People Against Drunk Driving, I help to prevent others from making the same mistakes and suffering the same consequences that I have. I was in a drunk driving crash, and we were doing 100 miles an hour, we'd roll eight times, I was ejected, and the car landed on my head. After the crash, I was in a coma for a month, and once I regained consciousness, I had to learn to talk. I had to learn to talk somewhat, walk somewhat, and even eat all over again. Due to my traumatic brain injury, I can't do everyday tasks. I walk with a walker and have to ride the bus everywhere. Parents don't drive drunk with the kids in the car. Kids listen to your parents, they were young ones, and listen to your teachers, they just want to make good citizens of you, they're there to help you. I never listened to either one, and look what happened to me. My life has completely changed as a result of getting in the car with a drunk driver. Please don't end up like me.
Thank you, Mark. Good message.
Sam Diney, the encyclopedia of Reno government. And if I'd known there were going to be this many people at the Sam Diney Show, I would have brought my guitar. Sam is an Air Force Academy graduate. By the way, I'm Sam. I speak in the third person quite often, only because I cannot really believe I'm as great as I sound I am, like I am. Nice chortle over there. All right, keep it down. The mayor doesn't like them, and the mayor only likes people laughing in his little jokes.
I've never said that.
Not true. Anyway, Sam is an Air Force Academy graduate. Sam spent many years flying fighters and bombers, defending our nation against enemies inside of the border and outside of the border. Sam, since Sam's airline, Pan American, has blown out of business by the terrorists, Sam has attended virtually, essentially, every city council meeting since 1994, and many of Sam's episodes are on YouTube, and many of those episodes have also gone viral. Sam is the, Sam, that's me again, Sam is the father of Reno's next mayor. My son was the challenger for mayor last time and received 25,000 votes, in spite of the fact, in spite of the fact that the media did everything it possibly could to keep him down. He's a, he was a Marine Corps veteran, he received 25,000 of the votes, and that was before the vote counters stopped counting his votes. At any rate, Sam is the father of Reno's next mayor. ADP, does anybody know what ADP is? Anyway, it's something to do with the folks who are calculating the bloated salaries of all these people up here, and they were given a contract a while back, the contract's been increased and increased, and it's just turned into a gigantic disaster. We need an outside organization to come in and take a look at that thing. I don't want to, I don't want to fry a little fish, and I probably shouldn't talk about fish with the terrible economic and environmental disaster taking place over at the beloved Sparks Marina, where apparently all of the fish have died. At any rate, the fish I'm frying right now is this crazy scheme to increase the parking ticket fine. It's bad enough to have the parking meters costing so much as it is, then if you park overtime and don't get back to your car in time, they're going to increase your parking fine 66%. That's a tax, folks. And according to the Reno Gazette, the dysfunctional, whoops, Dysfunctional Pathetic Reno Gazette and most of the rest of the pathetic media in Reno, according to the way they look at it, since nobody showed up to object to this bizarre tax increase, they're assuming that nobody objects to the increase. That's what you infer from the Reno Gazette Regurgitator. The folks do not want this parking increase, and by the way, we should have free parking at city council meetings, the way it was long before until Mr. Kishel, unilaterally of his own volition, canceled that program. You used to be able to come down here and not have to pay the parking meters, that was the Sam Diney rule, you used to be able to come down here and go to your meetings and not have to pay to go to your meetings, and Mr. Kishel canceled that wonderful idea.
Yeah, sure I did. You get funnier every year, Sam.
You can laugh at that one.
All right, now we've got item A5, City Managers' Announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several announcements to make this morning, or this afternoon, I should say. First is Coffee and Comments with Council. I want to invite the public to attend Councilmember Sharon Zadra's Coffee and Comments on Wednesday, January 22nd, beginning at 11:30 a.m. It is at Swill Coffee and Wine, 3366 Lakeside Drive. This is an opportunity for residents of Ward Two and all residents to meet with Sharon in an informal atmosphere to discuss concerns and ideas for improving the city. We also have the School Community Safety Forum. The city invites members of the Latino community and really the entire community to attend the School Community Safety Forum Thursday, January 30th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Pine Middle School. Councilmember Oscar Delgado, along with Washoe County School Superintendent Pedro Martinez and representatives from the Reno Police and Washoe County District Police Departments or Washoe County Sheriff's Office, are presenting the forum, which will be in Spanish. Again, everyone is invited, and there will be translators there for those of us that don't speak Spanish. Next, I'd like to make an announcement regarding the Reno Citizen Institute. There are still openings for the Spring Reno Citizen Institute. The Office of Communications and Community Engagement is taking applications until January 31st for the eight-week program. Participants meet every Tuesday evening from February 4th and end on Tuesday, March 25th. The free classes are a great way to meet with elected officials, department directors, and city staff to gain an understanding of the city's structure, services through hands-on exercises and presentations. You can also sign up for the Reno Citizen Institute by going to Reno.gov. This month is American Heart Month, or February is American Heart Month. The American Sign and Crane Services will be replacing bulbs on the Reno Arch with 2,100 red bulbs at the end of the month to recognize February as American Heart Month. The goal of turning the arch red is to raise awareness that heart disease is the leading cause of death for both men and women, and that it is preventable and controllable. Contributions from your city council donation funds are paying for most of the project, along with energy savings from using LED lights in the arch. And finally, I want to recognize a fallen hero within the Reno Police Department. The Reno Police Department recently lost a valuable member of the K-9 unit, Zero, and correct me, chief, if I'm not saying that correctly, Zero, a German shepherd, began working for the K-9 unit in 2007, where he was partnered with Reno Police Officer Stephen Mayfield. Zero and Officer Mayfield assisted every unit of the department, as well as all of the local, state, and federal law enforcement agencies in Northern Nevada. Zero was instrumental in locating large amounts of illegal drugs and aided in the arrests of those suspected who were selling drugs. He was also loved by our local children, who watched his many demonstrations.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to Agenda to item A6, Approval of the Agenda, before we go to a motion on that. Pulled item will be item E1B5, Petro Solutions Secondhand Merchandising Sales Staffs Requested That Be Pulled. Public hear comments are after 12, Proclamations or None. We have Presentations, item D1, Chief's Commendation. Number D2 is Economic Development Update, and D3 is a Rosewood Lake Golf Course Presentation. Public Hearing, after 12:15, is item F1, Evans Ranch PUD Amendment. Item F2, ADP Amendment and Service Agreement. Public Hearings at 6:00 p.m., there is not one. Requests for Time Certains will be held after the, the items heard earlier today, following items will be heard earlier than 2:00 p.m. Presentation and Opinion Finding Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Request to be Moved After the Consent Agenda will be item J1, J9, J12, and J13. Is that all of them now? All right, those items will be done, so with those changes, any other changes to the agenda? Okay, motion to approve the agenda? Have a motion, second? All in favor say aye. Those that approve, motion carries unanimously. Item A7, Approval of the Amendment, December 4, and December 11. Any changes? Chair of the Intertainer Motion? Have a motion? Do I have a second? I have a second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item B1, Cash Disbursements, any qualifications or anything? Chair of the Intertainer Motion?
Move ahead, sir.
Have a motion, second? All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. This time, we'll go to Presentations. Chief Pitts.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Council. Steve Pitts, on behalf of the Reno Police Department, want to thank you for agendizing this period of time to recognize four police officers from the Reno Police Department and the family of a citizen we lost in a bank robbery. The vision of the Reno Police Department is to model policing excellence, and there are a few days where we come up short, but the stories you'll hear today about these four men and about Mr. Sperry, who's not with us, but obviously his family's here, are where we achieve that with excellence. With me today is Deputy Chief Tom Robinson, and he will read the citations. Thank you.
Our first presentation will be a Life Saving Award for Officer Blount and Officer Brian Bukasey. Officers Brian Bukasey and Officer Adam Blount, on November 2nd, 2011, both officers formerly with the Downtown Enforcement Team for Adam and currently still with the Downtown Enforcement Team for Brian. Now, these officers were in the 400 block of Nevada Street when they just happened upon an individual whose lower body was on fire after he fell asleep and accidentally rolled onto an illegal campfire. Officers Bukasey and Blount extinguished the flames using two of their water bottles, the victim's pillow, and they removed the victim's pants, which were engulfed in flames. The victim suffered severe burns but survived due to the effort of these officers. For these actions, Officer Brian Bukasey and Officer Adam Blount are awarded the Reno Police Department's Life Saving Award. Next is Officer Anthony Della, who just happens to be accompanied here today with his father, retired Police Sergeant Dave Della. His mother's here also, sorry.
Where are they? Why aren't they up here?
They're here.
Come on up here. Get up front. Mama here too?
Mama's down here and Brother...
Oh, she's taking photographs, okay, all right.
On September 13th, 2013, Officer Della responded to the area of Second and Lake Street on a report of a stabbing. Officer Della located the victim lying on the sidewalk with a stab wound to the abdomen, and he immediately recognized that the wound was life-threatening. With his medical background, Officer Della immediately began life-saving measures, coordinated additional aid from RFD and REMZA. The victim was taken to a local hospital where he underwent emergency surgery. The victim's survival was due to Officer Della's quick thinking and immediate response. For these actions, Officer Anthony Della is awarded the Reno Police Department's Life Saving Award. On October 16th, 2013, a lone suspect entered the Bank of America at 5905 South Virginia Street, robbed a teller, and shot and killed a customer. Officer German Rodriguez, off duty and conducting personal business at a different area within the bank, witnessed the crimes and took decisive action. Officer Rodriguez assumed a significant risk in his decision to follow the armed subject out of the bank into a bus depot where he was trying to make his getaway. Officer Rodriguez displayed tremendous courage in his decision to apprehend the suspect, doing so after a physical confrontation with the murderer, during which Officer Rodriguez was able to disarm the suspect, retrieve the stolen money, and take the suspect into custody until responding officers arrived. He did that all by himself. For these actions, Officer German Rodriguez is awarded the Reno Police Department's Police Medal of Valor. Here with you, with us today is Milka Sperry and Joe Sperry. On October 16th, 2013, a lone suspect entered the Bank of America at 5905 South Virginia Street, intent on robbing the bank. Armed with a firearm, the suspect approached a teller and demanded money while threatening to shoot. Charles Sperry, assuming great personal risk and putting himself in harm's way, intervened and confronted the suspect in an attempt to stop the crime. The suspect shot Mr. Sperry, who later died of his injuries. For this selfless act of bravery, Charles Sperry is awarded the Reno Police Department's Chief's Commendation Medal, which will be awarded to his family.
I just want to say thank you to everyone, the community, for doing this for my husband. He was a good man, always helping everybody, and good father, good husband, good serviceman. I'm so proud of him because he left us in a good way to defend somebody like we do as Marines. I thank you, the community. I never had the chance to tell everyone for the support, us, and my squad, and our family. Thank you so, so very much for everyone. And everybody knows who I'm talking to, the help. Thank you again.
and women of the Reno Police Department and Mr. Sperry's family is there's nothing like service.
I hear you've got a lot of clips, but we want to limit the number of clips.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Fred Trenier, Community Development Director. And today, before you, we have Mr. Zaleschuk. He is the owner of the Virginia Motor Lodge. And in support of the council's priority to promote a vibrant economy and livable neighborhoods, we're inviting local businesses and entrepreneurs to the city council meetings to share their success stories. I am pleased to introduce Mr. Lauren Zaleschuk, who is here today to share some of his experiences and what he's done to turn around the Virginian Motor Lodge. Just to let you know, in our downtown area, in 89501, we have approximately 24 motels within the area. And through Mr. Zaleschuk's dedication, he has turned around blighted downtown property to make it a very attractive, safe place that it is today. And before you, Mr. Zaleschuk has a very brief presentation. He does know he has up to five minutes to speak, and at this point, I'd like to introduce you to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. I renovated the Virginian Motor Lodge. Took me about two and a half, three years. When I got it, I'm sorry, when I got it, it was only about 40% occupied, and it was gonna take a lot of hard work getting there. The sign was original, it was built in the '50s. Everything's been neglected. Parking lots, sidewalks, graffiti was a real big problem. The floors, all the floors on the 2nd 11 all had to be replaced, the walls also. The ceiling from the upper floors leaking, all the lower ceilings had to be replaced. A lot of drug paraphernalia also. I also redid the roof with Go Green Roofing. So throughout this transformation, you can see, even redid the parking lot. Throughout the transformation, you noticed the clientele changing, and the 40% occupancy rate went to about 99%, which it's been for years now. And this is what the rooms look like today. I also recently just took over the Courtyard Inn at 601 West Forest Street as of the 1st Video surveillance helps a lot. And that's what it looks like today. It's right down the street.
Beautiful job, and we appreciate that very much. That's what our community needs.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do you think, you have done just a beautiful job there. Do you think that we should have annual inspections of motels? Would that be something that would generate more of this kind of activity, do you think?
Yes, ma'am. Right now, the Health Department's only required to inspect a couple to three rooms per inspection. If they inspected 100% of the property annually, we wouldn't be running into this problem with the rooms getting so ran down that they're actually uninhabitable.
And I would invite you to make this same presentation at a Health Board meeting. We actually have a meeting tomorrow, and you could come during public comment, but we could actually agendize you for our next meeting if you would be interested, would you?
Yes, ma'am. The Health Department helped me a great deal. You know, they work with you, they come in, like the courtyard, I just had my inspection on Friday, and they help a lot during the transformation process.
I think the Board of Directors should see this and kind of be more inspired with some of the assistance that they could provide to those operating areas at the Health Board.
Thank you, ma'am.
So we'll be in touch with you.
All right.
Beautiful job, yes.
What type of demographic do you market to?
Just about anyway, you know, the people there right now are less fortunate people.
And they're staying for...
And now I have Cedar Citizens who just like to pay one bill. They're renovated into more of a studio apartments, and it's safe, it's clean, you know, they pay one bill and they're taken care of. If they need anything, all they do is ask. There's a maintenance man that fixes anything.
So you mentioned two properties that you, you have rehabbed this one, but you're rehabbing another one?
Yes, ma'am. I just took over the Courtyard Inn at 601 West Forest Street.
That's fantastic. What's a magic bullet to rehab in these properties? Is there any?
The Reno Police Department. They help you so much, it's not even, it's incredible, the job they do. All you have to do is ask, they help.
Good. Well, thank you.
And then a lot of hard work renovating it.
That's obvious, thank you. And I like, nice pin, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
The Reno Pin, thank you for wearing it.
Beautiful job, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Ali, I don't usually let people speak on public comments on this, but I'll give you a minute or so, go ahead.
I appreciate it, sir. Yeah, I do the same thing which he's explaining, I do. I did the same thing with Desert Sunset Motel, I renovated the place and all that, and I cleaned it up. But what I'm, basically, I'm here to complain about the court enforcement, I'm sick and tired of harassing by the court enforcement agencies. It is time for us to do something about it, because it looks like it's not a motel, it's like a Waco, Texas, you know, every time, federal agencies, all agencies are over here, the government agencies, I have five agencies in front of me, the motel catch on fire, the next thing you know, the fire, I mean, the police department is here, they have been harassing me since 2008, you know, the level field should be equal. I need to be somebody who should talk to me on the subject and hopefully help me to clean up the mess over here, because if he can do it, I can do it. I do the same thing. These are rundown motels, these are not palaces, but we need some help from the city of Reno.
Okay, thank you.
Since I have one minute, I would appreciate if you give me some more time so I can come and talk to you on the subject.
You'll be able to get somebody to visit with you, sir. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Rosewood Lakes Golf Course Presentation, we have six people that wish to speak and six that don't wish to speak. So I'm gonna let them speak, and then you can make your presentation. Laurie Elliott does not wish to speak.
Do you want to do a presentation?
Huh?
Do you want to do a presentation?
Yes, that's what we're gonna do. Okay, we'll do that. We'll do the presentation first, then we'll let the other people speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. For the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager. Andy Bass is going to more formally introduce this, but I did want to make a few comments, both for you and for the public, related to this item. First and foremost, this is being presented to you as information. It's a presentation, it was not contemplated, nor would we expect, nor is it agendized that you would take any action today. So it's really about learning and listening and hearing what the consultant has recommended or is recommending in terms of how we move forward. Another thing that I need to correct from what people might have seen in the media is that the council actually didn't engage this consultant. This consultant was engaged by staff, and the reason we did that is because for many years, when we go through the budget cycle, the golf course, Rosewood Lake Golf Course comes up because it does require a subsidy from the general fund. And so rather than have the traditional discussion, we thought it was important to actually bring somebody in who knows the business. And so we retained this consultant to answer questions that we could not at staff level or from the manager answer, because we are not experts in the golf industry. So that's the purpose of this presentation today, is to bring forward to you an expert in the golf industry, to present his findings in looking at Rosewood Lakes, and also to give you an opportunity to ask questions of him. As far as the process moving forward, we anticipate coming back to the city council in a meeting that will be well advertised in terms of public participation, where we will actually ask you to make some decisions and provide us with direction. But again, today, we're not looking for any direction, we're simply asking you to hear the information. Lastly, I just wanted to make clear the connection between this request and the Southeast Connector. While certainly the Southeast Connector does influence what we do at the golf course, the discussion that in the presentation that we have today really was done more in the context of this issue of annually looking at whether or not the city council wants to continue to fund the golf course operation. So I thought it was important to put that on the table, not only for you, but also for the public to understand why we're doing this today. So with that, I will ask Andy to come forward.
For the record, Andy Bass, Recreation Manager. That was really a pretty good introduction of what our goal is today. The Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Department, we routinely evaluate our operations and our programs, and as part of that ongoing process, the city of Reno did engage a nationally acclaimed expert in golf operations, Mr. James Keegan from Golf Convergence. We asked him to come to Reno and evaluate Rosewood Lakes Golf Course, the operations, and also the financial condition. Mr. Keegan has given this presentation to staff previously, as well as the leadership of the Rosewood Lakes Golf Course Men's Club and the Recreation and Parks Commission. As was mentioned earlier, we are not seeking any action today, but really here for your information. We are seeking your feedback, though, so that we can return at a future city council meeting to answer those questions, and then we anticipate returning to you for your direction on the future of Rosewood Lakes Golf Course by the end of February. At this time, I'd like to introduce and welcome Mr. Keegan, and we will be available for your feedback once he is completed.
Thank you, Andy. Mr. Mayor, City Manager, City Council, it's absolutely a pleasure to be with you here today. What we wanted to talk about is the dilemma you face with respect to Rosewood Lakes, the process that we undertook, the findings, and the decisions that you will make in a month or so regarding should Rosewood Lakes be opened in 2004 in future years. My name's Jim Keegan, I'm Managing Principal of Golf Convergence, and it's really great to be with you here today. We're headquartered in Colorado, and I only wish we could have brought you some of the snow that we are just getting inundated with in the mountains. But I've been fortunate to travel to 41 countries, and I've seen over 4,000 golf courses. We do this for a living, flying around the world, looking at the viability of golf courses, and are they self-sustaining? The reason that we're here is the connector is going to be going through the golf course, and the question is, is what is the viability of the golf course? How can it be reconfigured? Should it be nine holes? Should land across the street be developed? And so we were asked to evaluate... And so we were asked to evaluate the viability of the golf course with the connector, realizing that $7.5 million has been paid to access the land. And so the options that you face, and the decision that we're planting a seed for you to, today, for you to make a decision within a month or so, is, should Reno be in the business of golf, offering it as a recreational amenity? Should you be in the golf business? Yes or no? If the answer is no, you have some options with respect to open space and trails, the wetlands, or you can just sell the property. Or if you decide that you should be in the business of golf, how can it be reconfigured to, with a driving range and a teaching area? Well, the essence of this, the fundamental question that you face is, as part of a general fund, do you want to annually subsidize the golf course? Or are you gonna hold it to a standard, like most cities do, of being fiscally self-sustaining? That's the essence of the decision that faces you. So what we did in the process is that we're very fortunate, having traveled, that there's all kinds of possibilities and permutations. But I like this expression, because the options that we are going to make, and in terms of recommendations for you to consider, are really to appear to be viable. We're like doctors, and we use this process. Clemson University did a PhD dissertation on vetting our process of looking at the local market. The age, the income, the ethnicity, and the population density determine the success of a golf course. We look at the number of playable days. We look at how well you've integrated technology. Is the website, do we know who the customers are? We know that 90% of your customers come from within 10 miles of the golf course. We know that golf course in a city of a quarter of a million people serves about 4,000 citizens on an annual basis. We then compared the financial benchmarks, the performance of the golf course against state and national averages. We looked at the agronomy, and the golf course, and the wetlands, and my heart goes out to the superintendent in terms of the great job he does with what we found is to be a very difficult site for a golf course. Very difficult. We also looked at the operations. There's 13 steps on what I call the assembly line of golf. And what's that customer experience? Because everything that you ever bought in your life, you've subconsciously made a decision. Did you get value? Was that experience versus the price you paid, where you have that experience equals or exceeds? You have loyalty. But where that experience is less than the price, you have customer attrition. And we also did a survey of the golfers, using the Park and Rec and the golfer database. Well, the essence of a golf course, and the decision that you have to face is, what is the purpose of the golf course? Who is it intended to serve? Is it to be the entry level? Is it about values? Is it about bringing in women and others and youth? Is it about values? Or are you looking for it to be, because once you decide what is the essence of the course, is it to be a championship golf course, like Edgewood Tahoe? Who's the market and what you're serving? Because once you make that decision in terms of the strategic vision, every once you decide it, it determines what are the resources? If I were to say Donald Trump, and I would say a course by Donald Trump, you'd anticipate valet parking, you'd anticipate water that was bottled and free divot tools. So defining that becomes important, because what we look at in terms of Parks and Rec as an activity is that you've got 2.5 acres per thousand. The Class A standard in the United States is 10 acres per thousand. Parks and Rec serves an important role in terms of providing swimming pools and trails and skating rinks. And why does Parks and Rec do that? Is because private enterprise will not. Golf is discretionary. It is offered by the Parks and Rec Department, but that need, is it adequately met within the community by private enterprise, and do you need to be in that business? So when we looked at this process, we know, where does Alexis dealership go? Where does a Starbucks go? Where do they determine to put a hotel? They use the Experian Mosaic profile, and golfers are found within sophisticated singles, bourgeois prosperity, comfortable retirement, Korean family. The average golfer is 41.5 years of age. His household income is $85,800. He is 82% male and largely Caucasian. For every one round, a Hispanic or an African-American plays. Caucasians play seven rounds. So we looked at this in terms of the demographics, and we compared the demographics within 10 miles of Rosewood to, do we have the demographics where it would say we need to build a golf course? And we need on this, having done it many, many times, we need a plus 20 in terms of the sophisticated singles and the bourgeois prosperity, to know that we've got the right demographics to make the golf course work. As you can see, the demographics are working against Rosewood Lake. And so we dived into and delved in terms of the income levels within 10 and 20 and 30 miles, because these give us indications, just like a doctor that looks at an x-ray, what is the probability for success? Well, what we found in terms of, there's 28,000 golfers within 10 miles, and there's really one important statistic up here. Reno is in the top 100 of the core-based statistical areas. There are 2,640 golfers per 18 holes, and you're at 2,484, which suggests to us that there is a golf experience that could be provided. The question is, is Rosewood Lakes the right kind of course, the right experience for this demographic? So we looked at the weather impact, and that you have about 315 playable days a year in this banana belt we could be playing today, and that the capacity of the course, on average, you could be playing 94,000 rounds. So we took that information, and we started benchmarking, what is the performance of your golf course? This is from PGA Performance Track, where there's over 3,000 courses of the 15,000 surveyed around the United States. And you can see the financial performance of Rosewood Lakes is in the bottom 25% of all municipal golf courses, in terms of the rounds played. But the more important statistic is, the average municipal course makes 142,000 before dead service. The bottom 25 make 50,000. You're losing a half a million dollars a year in the operation of Rosewood Lakes. So let's look at the trends. The golf course is at 23% utilization. The reason hotels, airlines like to be at 70 and 80%, so when you hear just in the paper casually, and if you are typical of most, only one of you play golf. 14% of the citizens play golf. But look at the trend in terms of how your rounds have fallen, and look at what's happened in terms of, is there anything we can do to increase play? Well, in the survey of the golfers, they said, there's no barriers. They're playing as much as they want. Times a barrier among those like us who are working, money's not a constraint. So there's nothing we can do to increase this capacity from 23% that the golf course is currently at. So when we look at what's happened with the revenues over the last seven years, they've fallen from a million two, and since 2011, they're constant at 600,000. But look at what you're losing in terms of money. $5,256,000 has been lost since 2007, serving about 4,000 citizens. $5,256,000 has been lost. It takes about a million dollars in revenue to be able to cover the operating expenses, and to be able to have sufficient capital, you need to put aside $130,000 a year for capital improvements, bunkers, sand, irrigation systems. Replace irrigation systems, a million four. You need $90,000 a year to make sure that the superintendent has the right equipment to be able to maintain the course properly. You can't get there with the golfers, the demographics, and the experience being created, and that you will continue to lose 400,000 annually. So the information's being provided for you to make a decision within a month or so. Do you want to continue to fund out of the general fund a half a million dollars a year for the operation of Rosewood Lakes to continue? We looked at the customers, and here's where the survey came. And you can see that we got the heart of Reno. The darker the green shows where the customers that are playing Rosewood Lakes. And we said to them, what's important? I teasingly say we didn't even need to ask this question anymore. In doing over 200 surveys around the United States, it's always condition, it's always price, it's always pace of play is what's important to a golfer. But let's look at Rosewood Lakes. This is a green. Can't putt on it. This is the bridge, gone from eight to nine. This is a fairway. I secret shot the course. That happened to be my ball. Would you, who don't play golf, what kind of experience is this? Is this worth the money? On the 13th hole, the wetlands are so high that there's a sign saying, aim just right at the green diamond, that's way in the distance, because you can't see the fairway. This is your shot. Are we having fun now? You could throw a lot of money at this and not have enough because of the wetlands, the irrigations, and the drainage issues. So if we're looking at, do we take, what's the 18 holes, and we look at the access that's being provided, and have them play three or four, and walk under a highway and play a couple more holes, and walk back under a highway, if this is the underlying condition? Well, we wanted to see, who were your customers? 84.8% were male. Average age is 53.4, and I sense they're in the audience today. That their median household income that they reported in the survey was 81,000. 89% are Caucasian. They have 15.2 years of education, and they play 38 rounds of golf a year. They're probably retired. They're probably senior citizens, and they play 7.9 courses. They play 7.9 different golf courses a year. So there's plenty of alternatives. So the question before you is, do you need to lose $400,000 per year to support the recreational leisure of, if you'll allow me the liberty of a broad definition, $85,000 median household income? That's upper-middle class. Do you need to support that? So our recommendations are, and this is what this all means, if you want to support that, then we've got to say, do we have the right location? Is the layout the course? What about the conditioning? How do we fix it? Do we have the right management team? What are we gonna do with respect to marketing? The website would have to be redone. We don't know really who the customers are. Of those 4,000, half that were here this year won't return. The velocity of the turnover customer base is amazing when you study the demographics of golf. And so therefore, whoops. Do you close the golf course? Has it served its useful life? There's the county course, there's Sierra Sage, there's plenty of public alternatives. Do you just take the existing nine holes, the existing land, and reconfigure nine holes going under the highway and back? We believe, it's our professional opinion, that compounds the original error. Or do you take 18 holes across the street, do you use nine holes of the existing land of the existing course and nine holes across the street? Well, I can tell you now, of the money that's available, you're never gonna generate an ROI from the golf course greater than the interest income you'd make just by putting the money in a bank account. So the recommendations are, close the existing 18 holes. You've got bond debt, 1.48 million to pay it off. You could repurpose the current site with open space and trails, wetlands for affluent use. You could sell the property, legal restrictions may apply. You could even take a look at the commercial use of the property. Or another option is, you could investigate a private business to develop a partnership to design, build, and operate a golf course north of the existing site across the street. Executive 18-hole course would suit the demographics of your customer base. Nine holes for a teaching area, miniature golf, chip and putt, driving ranges. There is no driving range in the heart of the city that's open at night. The expenses there are nominal. But this is the information you're, we're providing you, and as part of our research, we talked to those within the community as to the viability of the idea among those currently managing golf courses, and they liked the idea. They're willing to invest, they'd be willing to help you manage the facility among the recommendations presented. So at the end of the day, the question becomes, Rosewood Lake, do you keep it as it is? Are you gonna insist on a financial return? Or is this an intangible asset, like an open trail space, and you're willing to invest a half a million dollars to support 4,000 people? What question's gonna answer for you? It's been a pleasure to visit with you today.
Anybody got any questions right now? We're gonna, I'm gonna ask you a question, then I'll ask for a public comment, then you can ask questions. Thank you very much, sir. We're gonna have some public comment, then we'll probably call you back if we have some questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We have six people that do not wish to speak. Douglas Reamer, Carol Reamer, Jim Woodke, Karen Woodke, Danny Ludwig, and Laurie Ellett do not wish to speak. The six that wish to speak. Just another one, yes? Good. All right. Mr. Denae's getting his in. A little late, Mr. Denae. You'll have to get him in earlier now. Nothing, Ed wasn't talking to you. Kim Rodemeyer? Here she comes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. Wow. So those of us who live around the golf course, I particularly don't play golf, don't like golf, not interested in it. However, it's, I understand the other use for that land. This gentleman's arguments don't address the history and the subtleties of the area, because it ignores the original rationale for the course which was flooding. Y'all weren't here in 1996 on this council when that golf course was being discussed, or 1995 or whatever, and it was specifically designed and built to hold floodwaters. That's its job. Its secondary job is a golf course. So basically, what he's saying here is that there's nothing to be done because it's not working. That's not true either. I urge you to consider other options, like better marketing, better getting the word out that the course is there, and that it's available, and that it's affordable for people to use. I'm a little bit upset with his rationale that a half a million loss every year is not viable or affordable for the flood, for the city count, for the city. The 1997 flood was $700 million. And if that course hadn't have been there to hold that floodwater, then the fact that the damage would have been worse in the surrounding communities, and since you're not very interested in protecting those people, let me talk about the industrial areas, the airport, and other areas that are a little bit further away from the golf course. I'm a little bit flabbergasted by the report, so I'm sorry if I'm not making a lot of sense, but I'm really, really very concerned about the fact that the city is looking at getting rid of this flood storage. This is flood storage for the entire city of Reno. So if you, if you take the golf course and you use your option, one of the options was to sell the land, maybe to developers, we're already losing half of the golf course for a road, potentially. But let's be very clear, all of this is all up in the air. The Army Corps of Engineers makes the final decision on whether or not that road gets in, and it hasn't made that decision yet. And there's not gonna be a decision until at least mid-April to mid-May. So if you're gonna come back next month and make a decision on the flood storage that is available for the homeowners that are surrounded, the golf course, I think it's a little premature. And also, let's be very clear, if there is no road, you guys have to pay that money back for the right-of-way, because RTC is what they've said over and over and over again. They're not in the business of owning land, and you gave them the right-of-way. And they specifically, Garth Oxl has stood up here and said that...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Woodside?
Good afternoon. I'm here to represent Wooster High School in Rosewood Lakes. I just wanted to share some of our thoughts. That is a very powerful presentation, and the money that the city is giving up to the golf course. As far as high school golf goes in Nevada, it's not as strong as it used to be. Rosewood Lakes is the home course for the Wooster High School Girls Program, as well as... as the boys program. And just a story from this year, the high school golf teams take a lot of, they require a lot of resources from the golf course that they're working with, whether it be with Rosewood or any other course. In this year's girls' golf season, halfway through the year, I received an email from the golf administrator stating that there was no course to host the regional golf tournament. So what they were going to do is go to the team scores and the individual scores from the league to determine who went to state and what teams qualified. So they asked us to ask around to see who could host a tournament. Rosewood Lakes immediately accepted that opportunity, and were more than welcoming to everyone. We're the only high school, Wooster High School, that has the teaching pro and the professional on the site that works with us. Bob Force was on the golf course during the regional tournament. You haven't seen that in any other year before this year. Fred Elliott does an amazing job with our girls as well. And I'd just like to express that there's already golf courses in Reno that have taken two and three high school teams, and if we don't have a course, I don't know what Wooster's going to do. With the smoke in the area at the beginning of the year, we didn't have a course, nobody got to play. But let me express to you how difficult it is, as an educator, to provide a service to students when we don't have somewhere to go. And I don't know where, what other course Wooster will have if Rosewood isn't there, and I understand that it's supporting money, but if you're taking away that course, you're taking away from our kids as well. And it's extremely important to get students and kids out on the golf course because those are the golf courses, the golfers that are going to be later in life. The majority of golfers can't afford a private course or even some of the courses in Reno, so having that cheaper situation is better. So I just wanted to show up today and express Wooster's support to keep the course there, whatever it might mean to you guys, because it is there, and they are absolutely more willing to help us. We already don't have transportation to courses, so anywhere, any course that's further away from Wooster High School than Rosewood is going to be difficult for our boys and our girls squad. And the gentlemen that work there are amazing, and there's certainly things that can be improved about the course. Course condition, course difficulty, at least from these people that I talked to that play there, is something that could be improved. And if the nine holes on the other side of the road are approved, that can be a very different course, where it's a lot easier, more wide open, a lot more forgiving, and I believe that it would bring in more golfers to that course. So I appreciate your time this, this afternoon, and hopefully we can move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lance Van De Graaff?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Lance Van Leitigraaf, resident of the city of Reno, golfer for fifty-four years, and I've been involved with Rosewood from the inception, helping to create the men's and ladies clubs, the corporations establishing it. And I would like to say that what we're talking about is the city of Reno's decision to provide recreational opportunities to its citizens doesn't want to limit the opportunity of golf because it costs money. I would submit to you that each and every one of our recreational opportunities that we provide costs money. There's absolutely no return to the city for people using parks, for people using tennis courts. Golf is one endeavor where you can get a return on your money. Having said that, I would challenge you to ask your Parks and Recreation staff this question. Are they as intelligent as the Parks and Recreation staff at Washoe County and in Carson City for Carson? Because those staffs have found a way to deal with the financial issue without eliminating golf as an activity for its residents. They have each found creative ways to have golf course management outsourced, to have golf course maintenance outsourced. Look at Sierra Sage and ask yourself, why is that succeeding now that it's been turned over to Cal-Maz Golf? It was a money loser for the county of Washoe. It is not. Ask yourself about Washoe County Golf Course, which is operated by Bell Men Golf, Barney Bell and Darren Minetti, pardon me, Barney Bell and his partner. That operation is independently outsourced to them to operate. The city gets a franchise fee, a use fee, and the only expense to the city, pardon me, to the county, is in maintenance, which at Sierra Sage was outsourced, so they don't even have that expense. The concept that there are ninety-six thousand opportunities for rounds of golf in this study is entirely out of the question. Duncan Golf Management just bought Lakewood. They operate Wolf Run and Lakewood. They get forty thousand rounds a year at each course. Hidden Valley Country Club, where I'm a member, about thirty-two thousand. Somerset Country Club, about the same. So I'm not sure what these statistics mean. If the proposition was, present to us a survey that shows us that we shouldn't have golf in the city of Reno, this study accomplishes that. If you, as a council, want to offer your citizens the opportunity to still have golf recreationally, but reduce the cost, ask Washoe County how it did it. Or invite me to be on a committee, and I'll be happy to show you how it can be done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. James? Whoever James is, they just wrote James Lakewood Terrace?
Oh, no, that's not me, but I'm James as well, from the Financial Advisory Board.
Well, you can't talk yet.
Oh, no problem.
James from Lakewood Terrace. Yeah. Is that James coming through the back door? Here, he comes through the other door. Are you James from Lakewood Terrace?
I'm James Norton, and I do in fact live at Lakewood Terrace.
Okay, because you didn't put your last name on it.
I'm sorry?
You didn't put your last name on it. Just put James Lakewood Terrace, so I'm calling you, James, you're here.
I apologize.
No problem, no problem. I just wanted to get the right James.
I was, I also was taken, taken back a little bit by the presentation, and with exception of just a couple items, I think what I'll do is rethink what I was just presented and submit something on an email. However, I do have a couple issues that were not brought up by anyone so far, so I thought I'd step up and make those comments. The adaptive carts that Rosewood Lakes currently has, no one else, to my knowledge, no one else in the area has them or provides them. That's a market that certainly deserves some consideration. As well, I don't, I may be wrong about this one, though, as currently mentioned previously, Mr. Elliott, our golf professional, he currently has classes for these folks also, and offers another opportunity for them to get out and experience golf. The walkability of Rosewood is probably as, as good, if not better, than all other places, including Sierra Sage. It's not, doesn't have the altitude change. The pricing on, at Rosewood Lakes currently for seniors is an exceptional service. I don't think anyone could find golf at eight-fifty for nine holes anywhere else in the area, and we do currently have several folks taking, taking advantage of that. So with, I would ask you to consider these folks, and I will, with that, I'll, I'll give up the rest of my time, think over what I needed, need to say, and submit it in the email. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, council. I'm Fred Elliott, been a golf professional in the area for over forty years, and practically a Reno native. One thing about what you just heard is the premise really bothers me. It says, should Reno be in the golf business? Well, I've never known a public entity that started up a recreational facility, was creating a revenue center, or was going to compete with private enterprise. Always regarded as something similar to a tennis court, pool, parks. I don't use those much, but I have no problem with my tax money going there. It has to do with our quality of life in this city, and seems to me it's a lot cheaper than more policemen and more prisons. One thing this report did not get into, and it's very disappointing, is he gave you no history whatsoever of how this all came about. Prior to nineteen ninety-one, the city and the county had only built nine holes of golf. All three other entities were given to the, to, WPA built Washoe, a private entity built Brookside, and the first nine was given by the Air Force to the county. Rosewood Lakes was the first eighteen-hole golf course built by any public entity around here. Would be very disappointing if that went backwards. For the first seven years, Rosewood was in business, it built up a surplus of well over a million dollars, I'm told that by good sources. Since nineteen ninety-eight, as you all are aware, we've had a lot of golf courses go in, and they've all wanted to be country clubs. We had one country club for forty years, and all of a sudden we've got ten more? It didn't work, and we're seeing what's happening. Some have already closed, some are already dirt, and there's even threatening of more closing now. During this period, they've been looking for revenue, and it's been a good deal for the average player because they've offered the access to their facilities at a nice public rate, trying to gain any revenue so they could stay afloat until they can get to a country club status. And sooner or later, and maybe a few years, the dust will clear, and there will be probably a few more country clubs, and there may be a lot of vacant areas, as we've seen up at This report said, "We're losing money, should close." Would that be true of any entity? Would that be true of a tennis court or something? If that's going to be the, the sole criteria, that is, is not good. Number two, the demographics are rapidly changing in the golf business. Because of baby boomers, more and more of the percentage of your golfers are seniors. And Rosewood has tried to offer good deals for the seniors to keep them active. It is important for them. The ones who are active do seem to benefit health-wise and in length of years. Also, your, your other seniors that have been around for a while, we've had the nine-hole program for them, and the juniors get a great rate. As, as Coach Woodside said, the high schools, we've welcomed, TMCC has a strong program there, they called me the other day, and we have the adaptive classes for both the public and for our veterans. The veterans thing has been very successful and been right up to, to the moment. We do need more public golf, let's not go back to before nineteen ninety-one. Let's have public golf available for the citizens when they're going to need it.
Thank you very much. Pete Strom?
Good afternoon, everyone. First of all, what a great country we live in, where we can all get up...
Identify yourself for the record, would you please?
Oh, Pete Strom.
Thank you very much.
Sorry. But again, what a beautiful country we live in, where we all can get up and talk, speak our words. A lot of places you can't do that, obviously. I too was taken back by the presentation, so again, I'm probably going to want to revisit some of my thoughts and present something later. But just real quick, you know, this course serves such a wide range of people, from children all the way through seniors. It, it, it provides a needed service to all these groups. Fred Elliott, the PGA professional, has done just a fabulous job with the veterans, disabled veterans. You can go on and on, some of the good things, the Wooster High School golf team. There's just a lot of good things that Rosewood Lakes has given to the city of Reno and the citizens. So I would love to see it continue, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Sam Denae?
Sam Denae, the Encyclopedia of Reno Government, and right off the bat, Sam is not a golfer. Sam is more interested in other exercises like pugilism. But anyway, in a friendly manner, at any rate, once again, that was a, on the surface, that was a good presentation by the folks that you paid good money to bring in here to look at this thing. However, however, as usual, you bring them in in a vacuum. He should have been sitting down with that first young lady that was standing here, who has proven herself to be an expert on Rosewood Lakes, the entire area. I can't remember her name right now, the little, the blonde lady, I don't know if she's even still here.
Ms. Rodermer.
She put the, she put the other side of the story. I, I was reading the pathetic, excuse me, slap your hand, Sam, reading the pathetically dysfunctional Reno Gazette regurgitator media this morning, and you read this thing, and everything in there is basically slanted towards what this man here recommended, and it was an excellent presentation, extemporaneous, with nice graphs, graphics up there. However, this lady pointed this out, the other side of the coin, that that place was a floodplain to capture the water, and there's no telling what will be done with that place if it is sold off to other entities. I have no idea what you might want to do with this. But a real perspective that I want to put in this, and I've brought in, brought to your attention many, many times, although the pathetically dysfunctional Reno Gazette and the rest of the media, oh, we've got Joe Hart here, what are the chances? Look at that. He gave me a thumbs up. The rest of the media refuses to report Sam's brilliant ideas. When you bought this lavish building, you wasted dozens of millions of our taxes. Now we're talking about a million here, a million there, which is a lot of money, but relative to the massive amount of money wasted on this, these lavish quarters where you live up there on the fifteenth floor, eating caviar and drinking champagne, put it in the... Okay, no champagne during working hours, I understand that. At any rate, the idea is, put it in perspective, the amount of money that was wasted on this building, while a perfectly good city council building sat over there empty for four years until I talked you into turning into a children's museum. So finally, something was done with it. At any rate, it's that, it was perfectly good building, and then you ended up spending all this money on this. It's half-empty, it's unneeded, hard to park. As a matter of fact, I had to park at the top of the building over there that's falling apart. At any rate, I digress a little bit. My point is, first of all, the media slanted it towards the way you apparently wanted it. That lady right, who's here, no longer here, she had great ideas, she presented the other side of the case, and I think you ought to keep it in the perspective that you've wasted a lot of money on other stuff, and I don't want to call this wasted money, but this is money that should be dedicated to keeping that operation alive.
Thank you very much. Having no other public comment cards, I'm going to close the public comment section. Do you have a card? Do you want to, you got one?
I don't have a card.
Well, you come on up here, and then you fill one out for me, would you? Yeah, right over there, when you get the, no, 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 you talk first.
Great.
There, now we're getting along.
I apologize.
No problem, James.
I haven't been to a city council meeting since I was in Boy Scouts about fifteen years ago.
You should come more often.
I'll have to do that.
You'd have to listen, never mind, go ahead, sir. Identify yourself.
My name is, my name is James McDougall, for the record. I'm a member of the city's Financial Advisory Board. I don't want to take too much time, I just want to make mention and reiterate the, the Financial Advisory Board's previous recommendations in regards to the Rosewood Lakes Golf Course, and that is that, at least at this point, losing over half a million dollars a year on average for the past, since two thousand and seven, from what the reports have shown, we're really looking at it as not being able to, the city can't afford to continue doing something like this at the going rate. So I'll leave you with that, but just wanted to remind the, the city council of our previous recommendations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Filled out the report, and we're going to get along great. All right, no other public comment section, I'm going to bring it back to the table for discussion. Any questions, anything, anybody wants to discuss at this time? It's coming back.
I would like to ask you...
Okay, go ahead.
Questions?
Ms. Sheeby?
You know, this is so hard because you hear all these different stories about, are municipalities supposed to make money, and then people say recreation isn't supposed to make money and so forth, and so, and then you hear all these stories, how it's helping children, and it's helping seniors, and I agree with the man that said something about, you know, baby, baby boomers are getting to be much more, it's just much more important, and, and so you really look at it, and I think it's, it's incredibly difficult. But there's other things that I think that this gentleman didn't address, which Mrs. Rodermer did, and I think she did an excellent job talking about, is that something that your company looks at, is what the other purposes of, you know, of golf courses are supposed to be? In this sense, this is obviously, you know, for flood retention, and that's something I think that we all need to be concerned about, looking at, you know, what, what we've already studied in this whole environment. So have you, I didn't see, I didn't see anything in your report...
There were four recommendations. It could have been just left as open trail space, which would take care of the retention issues. There were four options, commercial only being one of the four. Our role was limited to saying, and all of the reasons that you've heard are very valid, the ability to provide for high school, the ability to provide for senior citizens, very valid. The question is, it's going to cost a half a million dollars a year. Our role was to look at, can the course be economically self-sustaining based on the demographics, the current layout, and the nuances that are available to generate revenue? And you need about a million dollars, and we don't think you can get there.
And wouldn't we have to also maintenance it anyway?
No.
No?
You can leave it open, please.
You can leave it open space. And the point that was brought up by, very articulately regarding Carson and Washoe, that they privatized, 45% of municipal golf courses in the country have privatized because of the late costs that are involved with, and the benefit that can come. But with only 600,000 in revenue, there are expense reductions that can occur, but we've only got 600,000 in revenue, and we need to push it to a million, and we don't think the market's there to get it there. Okay?
And then, is this deed restricted?
I don't know.
We'll defer to-
It is, isn't it?
Julie Conway, Parks Recreation Community Services Director. We, there are some provisions in the deed that legal can provide you some information for when we come back the next time. There are some restrictions regarding the use of the property, however, based on the recommendation that the consultant has given us, I believe the council has some options within the restrictions within the deed. So we will bring that back to council and working with our legal department.
Okay, thanks.
Personally, I think that if we, it depends on what happens in the future, what we decide, but I don't see this being developed or anything. I see it being kept as open space. Yes?
Couple of questions since we have the golf expert here. Can you tell me from a national level, where is golf trending as a recreation? What's happening across the United States?
Over the last decade, it has contracted from a high of 30 million players to 25 million, 24 million seven, if you want to be exact currently. That the demographics of the age of 41, five, the household income of 85,800, that, the people in the audience here that represent the baby boomers are playing, are in essence where the growth of the game is. They're playing 19 or more rounds. Those that are in the younger generations, if they play golf, are only playing one to eight rounds. And so there's a big hole in the belly of the snake with the younger generations are not playing in sufficiency, which is why you're seeing the contraction in courses across the country. It's gone from over 16,000. Today, there's only 15,641 golf courses in America.
So, given our demographics and our population projections, do you believe right now that we have too many golf courses to, in our region?
The answer to that, based on 2,640 golfers per 18 holes, you're under that national benchmark of number of golfers per 18 holes, which would suggest why DeAndrea is challenged. You have to come back and look at, what is the experience? You've heard gentlemen say the difficulty of the golf course at Rosewood Lakes, it's not playable, it's not easy, it's not fun. That's why Washoe and Sierra Sage are able to do better with the privatization because they've addressed some labor costs, but it also attracts a wider audience of golfer.
I don't play golf, I'm not an active golfer, but I do have a question about when you have a nine-hole course versus a full 18-hole course. Given the demographics of the average golfer, do you find that they're attracted to a nine-hole course versus an 18? Or tell me, tell me about how the division of usage falls.
Casual recreational avid golfers, how often do they play? What is their skill ability? The better players would prefer the more accomplished, the more championship courses. The more casual golfers are more suited for the nine holes. There's an index called slope rating. It measures the difficulty of a golf course. 120 used to be the average, the average course built since 1980, the slope rating, meaning the difficulty, is now over 128. And so what we're seeing is, all of the architects, based on the popularity of the growth of the game in the 1990s, they made the courses so difficult that people are trending away from the sport.
Some, just some other questions for clarification, and I'm not sure if it's, well, first off, you made a comment about DeAndrea. And I can tell you the thought of, just turn it over and let it remain open space, just drive by North Gator DeAndrea and see what happens when you just leave it as open space. It is sad, frankly. There needs, I don't, I'll just leave it at that until we make a decision, but with regards to the 7.5 million from the RTC, when did that sale occur? When did we?
Staff, who's going to answer that?
The sale of the land, the 7.5 million, when does that money change hands?
You're talking, you're referring to the 7.5 million-
That the RTC.
-in the RTC agreement. That money is freed up once the city of Reno has met its obligations as far as permitting activity goes. So it's only city of Reno permitting activity. So there are other entities that have to approve permits, the agreement is not contingent on those, and it's my understanding there is only one set of permits left that require approval, and Fred or Bill can help me on this, but it's the grading permits that are approved at the staff level. So there was an item, I believe, in December that came before the council for some approvals. There's, in my understanding is, there's another set of permits that have to be approved, but that's done at the staff level. Once that is done, that seven and a half million dollars is freed up to the city of Reno.
Okay, so can that due to any additional permitting beyond our approval? Do those monies have to be turned back over?
If, if the city of Reno approves the final permit and we take the seven and a half million dollars, we do not have a legal obligation to pay it back if other entities turn it down.
So if the project is for some reason stalled or stopped, that 7.5 million still comes back to the city?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor? You know, I guess this conversation is really about, you know, the tough budget situation we're in. Mr. Manager, I think you've been on record saying that seven and a half million dollars is really what you want, to make our reserves a little more whole, so our cash flow works and we're not, you know, bouncing checks, you know, potentially. But it's also about the competing interests that we have in our budget, in our parks budget in particular, because I'm sure the aquatics folks are looking at this closely because they're without a pool, and the skaters are without a rank, and it goes on. We've been told by our parks department, we can only continue to maintain our parks maintenance budget at a half of previous desired levels, and that is an unfortunate situation to be in. I guess some of the things that I was looking for from your report that I did not see is this quote subsidy, you know, public education subsidy subsidized, police forces subsidized. What is, so I was looking for a cost recovery ratio that is standardized and where we are within that, and I, I take it from knowing transit agencies, they run at a 35% Fairbox subsidy, Fairbox recovery rate. What is the municipal standard for recovery on fees into the course? And how, and where is this in line with that?
Should be self-sustaining.
Should be, okay, so you did say it should be self-sustaining. Is there a variation? You know, can you show us what percentage nationally and so on? I didn't see that either.
Currently, based on the decline in golf, 70% of all municipal courses are not able to fund their capital requirements ongoing. That is what's leading to the privatization of courses, of which 45% of all municipalities have now privatized their operation.
So we're with the 70% that can't afford their golf courses? We're not an outlier here.
No, you're not.
We're right within everyone. Okay, I didn't, I don't really see that. I guess what I also didn't see is, someone made a comment that nine rounds is eight and a half dollars. I didn't see any economics on rounds within the region, both on the two ones operated by the county or the private ones, throwing out then the ones that are membership. Or, as someone mentioned, you know, what are the trends? There wasn't overbuild, the ones that are, they call golf course communities, those are going down left and right, so what is the trend? And so I didn't see that, and I don't know, I'd like to see that. I'd also like to understand, last year we passed a midterm, midterm bond obligation for golf courts, carts? And so what's the plan if we make this choice? And someone came up and talked about adaptive carts. I would feel that under ADA, the other public courses have to provide some sort of adaptive accommodation, and probably even the private courses. And, and the debt, and maybe you can answer this right now, the debt we carry on this right now, what is that debt for? What was that? Was it an expansion, or was it the original construction? Or was it a refi? It was on the original construction.
Robert Chisel, Director of Finance and Administration. The debt we have currently on the books is from 2004, there's about 1.4 million dollars outstanding. It was originally issued for three and a half million. It was a refunding of the 1993 golf course refunding bonds, which was a refunding of the 1989 original issue of the bonds, which was 4.1 million.
Okay, so someone could draw a logical extension of the fact that, you know, we did some refunding, then that is adding to the debt load of this. Do we know if the refunding, which, did it pull money out to do something else unrelated to golf? Do we know that?
The last refunding did not. It just fully refunded the bonds. I, back in 1993, it's very difficult to tell. Unfortunately, our records aren't as good back 20 years ago as I'd like them to be, but it appeared to be a full refunding back in 1993 also. It been, but in 1989, when this original bond was issued, it wasn't for the entire cost of the construction of the golf course.
Okay, so-
There was additional monies put in.
So we don't know if the debt we're carrying has always been associated with that course?
We believe it has always been associated with Rosewood.
We think so.
Because the other, Brookside was debt-free at that time.
Okay, and I guess the last point I want to make is, you know, this, the information that I would like to see so I can have an understanding of what the golf economics are, particularly for those, you know, parks are really for, I think in this sort of thing, folks who can't afford the higher levels of this service. I mean, I swim, and I've always swam at our public pools because, you know, I don't swim enough or want to afford the private swimming, but I think golf is along that sort of thing. But having said that, we had the county parks manager comment before us six months ago and say that the county parks department is out of the programming business. They don't run after-school programs like we do. We're serving unincorporated Washoe counties and outdoor, after-school programs. So maybe on the shared services, the public needs being met by the county. I don't, I don't know, maybe we could get some understanding on what Washoe County's commitment is to golf. Are they a long-term holder on that? Because it was kind of an aside comment, the parks director said they're not, they kind of made a decision at some point to get out of the programming business, and that's why we seem to have upped a lot of our programming. So those are some of the questions I'd like, before this comes back to us in February.
Just a couple quick ones.
So really quickly, I think everything's been pretty much covered by both, by the council folks, but to point to Ms. Rotemeyer, of course, it's a great concern, I think she said there, regarding the flood basin retention in that area, and I believe, understanding that it's going to continue to be a well-in retention area outside of possible development where the current clubhouse is currently. So, you know, it could be that, if not more, with respect to if there's any changes to the current golf course. So if that answers any of your questions, Kim, because that was a concern to me early on as well, so I'm making sure I'm really watching out for that. I think it was highlighted that it was interesting, the demographics that were presented in terms of who plays and, and how often, and across the region. I think that was a really great highlight for me in terms of where we take this further. Of course, those are different times. I understand Mr. Klinger, where he wants to take us in terms of our budget lines. So with that, I just, I hope to be able to come back and have a better, better understanding from staff regarding the flood, what can happen with flood, what is developable, what isn't developable. If there is an extension of the nine holes, and I think that's all going to come through with design and everything else in terms of where we're going to go from there. But I think the council has pretty much outlined all the other questions that I've had regarding what else I'd like to see. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Doritz?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think this will probably be for staff, just to kind of recap. I know there was someone that was asking about us possibly privatizing, and I think we went out trying to find companies to take over our course.
Yep.
And we didn't have anybody, anybody bid on it, is that correct?
Yes, we did. And we didn't have a bidder.
Right.
Yes, Julie Conway, for the record, we did that in 2008, and part of that was because of the, the bond debt, the debt service was part of that, but there was, there were no private companies that were interested at that point.
It was, it was beyond that, though, wasn't it?
It was.
I mean, it also came, I mean, there was also some comments that the difficulty of the course, I think, was part of the reason.
The site, the location, yes.
Right. I mean, there were other reasons we couldn't get a management company-
That is correct.
...to come in and take care of that. And, and I do know that, from what, from the past, that I think it always was anticipated to be self-sustaining, and I think that's why it was an enterprise fund. Supposed to be separate from the, from the general fund budget, supposed to be self-sustaining, taking care of itself, and that's why you set up the enterprise fund for it to manage its own, manage itself. And the other question is, I mean, I mean, because we've seen the challenges the other, even the private golf courses are having in this community, and I think there's been some recent sells. I mean, if we, if we go in and try to rebuild these other nine holes, I think your number that you put up was like four and a half million? Is that correct? Or five and a half million if we go back to an 18, correct?
Yes, and 4.2.
And then 4.2 million just to restructure the other nine, to make it a nine-hole course. I mean, the numbers I've heard for courses selling in this area is substantially below those numbers, right?
Right.
The fair market value of the golf course trades at a multiple of 0.8 to 1.2 times gross revenue. So if you were buying Rosewood Lakes based on its revenue potential, it's worth about 720,000. The other multiple that is used in valuing business is the free cash flow. It's about 10 times the free cash flow, so if you were making a half a million dollars, the course would have a market value of 5 million, but you're losing the half a million dollars, and so that would not be an industry used if you were to hire a real estate appraisal on the golf course. As an operating business, it's worth about 600,000 dollars.
My understanding, there's a golf course that's an 18-hole golf course, you can buy for about five and a half million instead of spending, and you get all 18 holes.
Great. Those are the questions I had.
And you know where they are, too.
Mr. Mayor, I just had a-
Yes?
And this is more for staff. When, when did the city take over the operations of the golf, golf course? This, the, okay, the graph we have only goes back to 2007, and I would assume the, so we've been operating at the whole time, going back further. So the very drastic decline, starting in 2007 to current, is attributable to the economy and a reduction in players. Not our running of the course. Can you, can you speak to the operations?
I'm trying.
We have silence.
Councilwoman Jordan.
I'm pausing on that because we do have a thought with respect to the operations. The underlying experience is such a challenge, and to the golfer that it kinds of attract, that you've got a very talented professional, you've got very good maintenance crews, but they've got no capital to work with, and so therefore, even the best and the finest, without the right tools and the right resources, are not going to produce a desirable result. But ma'am, I come back to the fact that in terms of the economics of the area and what is the revenue potential, you need to look to get to a million dollars, and the golfers responded, they're playing as much as they want. Time is the only constraint, it's not money. I don't know how you can get, based on that experience, to a million dollars so it becomes self-sustaining within a city's budget.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question during the other discussion? Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you a lot.
It was a pleasure being here.
Thank you.
Mayor, could I speak one minute about my background in golf and policy?
No, sir.
No?
No, sir, we've already closed it. We're moving on. Thank you very much. Now we will- Now we will go to the consent agenda. Anybody got any items, Jonah Poehl, for discussion?
E1, B4, Mr. Mayor.
Which one?
E1, B4.
B1, B4.
E9, Mr. Mayor.
Who's that?
Me. E9.
E9, alright.
The last one. Add E5, Mr. Mayor.
No, two others, one and four. Any others? Chair'll entertain a motion, approve all the other items?
Absolutely.
All right, motion made, and second, and all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Zadra, item B1.
For staff, please. This is for another escort service, and you've heard me express my dissatisfaction when we've had at least two of these in front of us in the past, that we know what an escort service really is, but the difficulty that we have enforcing activities that are going on. So my question is, the last time it was in front of us, we actually talked about, is there a way that we can put some more qualified evaluation into these kinds of applications? So that's the first question. And then secondly, is this one, which is again, out in the Double Diamond area, I think, is this replacing one that we previously had to approve by ordinance, or is it yet a new incremental escort service?
For the record, Michael Chomp, Business Relations Manager for the Business License Division. I'll answer your last question first, I guess. It is in Double Diamond, it's a home-based type business. I did do a site visit out there, there's no indication that there's an escort or any type of business being conducted at this house. I will say that the escort application is for an individual to become an escort. As we mentioned previously, in previous meetings, there's two types, the Escort Bureau and the escorts themselves, and the escort works for the Bureau. The Bureau has the authority to set up the dates, if you will, but the escort must work for an Escort Bureau. So that is the case in this application. And the application is in the process of going through the full FBI background check at this point. That is still pending.
So it is yet another one. We have, the ones I recall is around Virginia Lake.
Yes, it is an additional.
And out in the Double Diamond area already.
Correct. We did have, the ones you saw last January, a couple of the Escort bureaus did close. They did not renew their license. And those were up in the north, the north area, I do believe. But this is an additional, you're correct, this is an additional escort.
And have we had any opportunity to evaluate if there, have you, I know things have been very busy, intense-wise, on your time demands, and very limited staff, but have we had an opportunity to look at ways that we can improve how we are able to, first of all, evaluate and substantiate what activity is actually being performed through the escort services?
And we can work along with the Police Department to do that evaluation. I know that Chief Pitts and I did speak, this is a year ago, January, I think, that we had these before us the last time, and there wasn't a lot of concern there, but we can continue to look into that and see if one of his units are having any issues or any undercover operations that have been conducted, because I'm not aware of that right as of today.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to, I have a couple more que, I'm just asking if I may speak. Thank you, thank you. Councilwoman Zadra, thank you for bringing this up. This actually is kind of a segue. When you talk about escort services and the verification of the escorts, and the verification and validity of the age of the escorts, I think in the sad state we live in right now with regards to sex trafficking, and the very young girls that are being put into that industry, I would have to imagine that this escort environment in some way supports the sex trafficking. Do we require, I know in Las Vegas, at least I believe in Las Vegas, they require a, through the Sheriff's Office, a, I want to say it's a work card, where they do a extra verification of the age and the background check? I mean, is that something that we do here as well?
At the time of application, we would verify the age in Title 5, 510-030. There is a requirement that they have to be, minimum age of 21 years old, so we verify that at the time we take the application. They do have to go through the complete FBI background check, which is fingerprints, and I do believe the escorts have to, in addition, have to have a work card in their possession. They do have to apply and have it in their possession.
Okay, so that's, that, we check.
That's what we do today.
We do that today.
Correct.
Okay.
As a follow-up, so you can be 21 to be an escort and go out on these social dates, but you can be 18 to dance without clothing in the adult businesses, is that?
That's how it's written today, yes.
That's how we have it, okay.
That's our ordinance?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Oh.
And indeed, that's why I requested a year ago that we take a look at that.
We need to review that.
Yes, we do.
All right.
Thank you.
Let's see. Did you have another one, Ms. Zadra? I got you all messed up there. Ms. Brackus?
Well, do you want to motion on that? Should we motion on that license then?
Yeah, let me have one, yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion then. Or, it's Councilmember Zadra's word.
She made it, and you got a second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now, Ms. Brackus.
It was Ms., E5 was Ms. Jordan's.
Well, you're unanimous, aren't you?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Everybody wants to run the meeting?
Well, okay, we'll jump to E9.
I just wrote yours down first.
Staff, what is, we have an emergency situation that was unplanned, of having to rebuild retaining walls out of our road budget, that's already been, one, prepaid for some work that was already done, and two, maybe on the block if our bids come in for this Virginia Bridge. So can you go over the background of this work, in two different locations?
For the record, Charla Hany, Public Works. I wouldn't say that this is necessarily an emergency. It's an emergent issue that we've been working on, actually, for a period of time. So it's not necessarily an emergency. And I'm sorry, I missed the second part.
Well, I guess, the, okay, so the Public Works Department has a really good record of street pavement condition, right?
Correct.
Okay. And this is the first time I'd seen, out of the road budget, coming things where it were non-pavement sort of activities. And it would make sense, I mean, you've got roads with road cuts, you gotta do those. So do we have an inventory beyond our street pavement condition where we also expend the budget? Or do we just, someone goes, oh, this retaining wall's falling down, we gotta, I mean, do we have, do we have an inventory of these things beyond the pavement?
We actually don't have a lot of these situations. This is the only two locations in town that we have, that have retaining issues. We do have the occasional guard rail, and we actually have an item in the CIP budget for those kind of repairs that come up on a yearly basis. You know, so those are many times accidents, car accidents, that knock those out, yeah.
Okay, well, I walk by a rockery retaining wall in Socrates that causes, that I look at and just wonder. But the second point, then, is, you know, this is a big chunk, and we usually do isolate our road repair money for the pavement. And so, you know, our road budget's starting to get a little tight, I think, because we pre-did some work, so we're short. We're here on these two emergent issues, and we may be on the hook for the $2 million if the bid's coming on South Virginia Street high. So how low are we looking if, in the next two, three years, to do the routine neighborhood roadwork that we, you know, our residents count on in the neighborhoods?
I'm not 100% sure what you, what you're looking for in the answer, but I will say that we, this money is available for this project, I can say that. As you know, and we discussed previously, if the Virginia Street Bridge project requires the money, it would delay the streets that are planned for a year. And we've got our streets planned out. I believe we have two more years that are programmed that will get done. If they aren't, don't get done in the year they were programmed, they'll just move to the following year, so.
Okay, pushing it off. So no street, are any streets getting not done that have been previously indicated because of this work?
No.
Okay.
No, nothing's being, being reallocated, simply moved, perhaps.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Move for approval?
I do.
Second, have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. E5, Ms. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And mine actually kind of dovetails off of Ms. Brackus. This is relative to the Virginia Street Bridge. Also, this 21-plus million dollar project, of which, in here it says that the RTC agrees to reimburse Reno for up to $2 million towards the construction of the project. Jenny kind of touched on it, as with any construction project, and apparently payroll project, there's always cost overruns and change orders. So my question is, because I didn't see it in this document, and maybe I just don't have some of the backup materials, I didn't see how the cost overruns, how are those allocated?
At this point, I wouldn't say that the cost, there are cost overruns allocated.
How would they be allocated in the event cost overruns occur?
Many times, how our projects are put together is there's the base bid plus a force account, which is used for contingency items that come up during the contract. Those are, would be budgeted and would be awarded with the contract at the council meeting that the bid is awarded, and then they would only be used as an, on an as-needed basis. Now, how that relates to the Virginia Street Bridge project, and actually this agreement, is that there'll be a project team that's made up of representatives from the RTC, from the Trekkie Meadows Flood Authority, from NDOT, and from the city, who will all review all of those, any potential change orders that would increase the potential cost.
And I understand that. I mean, they would all, they would all be reviewed. How does the allocation of that, how is that determined? Who pays what?
Oh.
What's the percentage break?
Okay, let me, let's see. If there's a, if there's a cost overrun in excess of the total budget, then that'll be a big problem.
Yes.
But assuming that the bids come in, in a, in a, in a time, or I guess in a, in a fashion that can be covered with the funding that's available, then it would be, the way that it's set up right now is that NDOT is the first $10 million. The Trekkie Meadows Flood Management Authority is the next, seven and a half. After that, it goes to RTC, and then, and then finally to Street Fund. Now, when we get the bids, that totals about $21 million. We don't expect the project cost to be $21 million. So assuming that our bids come in favorably, then we may never make it through the Flood Management Authority's funding. We just don't, simply don't know at this point.
Okay, when you do the, when this project goes out to bid, is it a, is it structured in a manner of a not-to-exceed?
No.
Or, okay, anybody familiar with the construction?
I would love to do that.
Industry? Yeah, trust me, so would I. There's always, always overruns, always. An average construction project is 20 to 25%. Anybody that's built a house, bought a house, you know that there's always, so I'm trying to get at, if, I hope it's an if, but maybe when those additional amounts occur, I'm being realistic, because it tends to happen more often than not, what percentage is going to come from our Street Fund?
So I guess, I haven't done a very good job of explaining the force account. A force account is a cost overrun, essentially, that's built into the, into the project. So that's where it comes, and it comes in as a not-to-exceed amount that's added into the bid when you get it. When we come to council, it will already have a contingency in it that is intended to cover cost overruns. Now, of course, there are occasions when, when things have to come back, because there's something that's just beyond that. But that's where, where that comes in.
That's helpful. And what percentage?
I believe at this point, we have 10% built into this project.
Okay, thank you, you did, thank you, that clarified it then.
I'm sorry.
The last question, the last question I have is, it says reimburse Reno monthly for eligible invoiced project costs. I didn't see in here where a definition of eligible.
I think essentially that the project, anything that's included in the project, or, and I can't, I'm sorry, I don't recall the exact details of this agreement, because we have two others also. But I believe that the design, the construction management may be in an eligible project cost. What wouldn't be an eligible cost is something completely, park benches, for instance.
Is there any way that I could get a definition, or maybe we can meet afterwards and get a clarification of what's, what's considered eligible and what's not?
Sure.
Thank you.
Move for approval?
Have a second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no.
Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll go to public hearing, item F1, Evans Ranch PUD.
And for the record, proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
All right, thank you very much.
This is Bill Number 6881, and ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.08 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled "Zoning," Section 18.08, 102B, 1300, to change the text in the PUD Development Design Standards, to amend the zoning map from 41.31 acres of UT40, unincorporated transition, one unit per 40 acres, to PUD Planned Unit Development. And two, to amend the text and graphics of the PUD handbook to add 41.31 acres and 123 dwelling units to the existing 5,556 dwelling units approved, 5, 6, 7, 9 total units. Incorporate agreements into the PUD to define the timing and extent of fire, police, parks, and other infrastructure improvements as the project develops, and to modify the timing to which, in which to construct the fire station. The 2,166.3 acre site is located to the north and west of Red Rock Road, 5.63 miles north of its intersection with US 395, and generally north and east of the Blackjack Lane-Jackpot Road intersection, 4,500 feet, .85 miles north of the developed portion of Coal Springs, and the PUD zone, in a PUD Planned Unit Development Zone, together with other matters property relating thereto.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, could we get a presentation from the staff on this?
Mr. Mayor, do we think we're going to have a long conversation on this one? We had a time certen, the J items.
Yes, we did.
If we're going to be lengthy on this one.
Let me, let me call you back in a minute. I'm gonna postpone this right now, and we're gonna go to the time certens, because I jumped track. Huh? We can get there quick? Okay. Let's go ahead and see if we can't, then I'll cut it off, we'll go back. All right.
Good afternoon, and Vern Close, Senior Planner. This is a request for amendment to the Evans Ranch PUD to add 41 acres and 123 units to the PUD. It would increase the size of the site from 21, 2,125 acres to 2,166 acres, and also increase the number of units from 5,556 to 5,679. Also requested is to modify, or to allow development agreements to define the timing extent for fire, police, parks, and other infrastructure improvements as the project develops. This project was reviewed by the Planning Commission in December, and they approved it, subject to the changes in the staff report and the conditions that were attached to the staff report. Prior to the meeting, we had a request from Councilwoman Brackus to provide some additional information. One of those was to show the site. To show the site as it relates to other properties around it. The areas in pink are in the city limits, and this map shows, shows the site and the zoning in the city. The tan color is the PUD. The area north of this line is the Evans Ranch site, and this area is the area that The area north of this line is the Evans Ranch site, and this area is the area that's proposed to be added, and this is another PUD to the south. Also, there was a request as to the access road, there is a condition or a provision in the fire services portion of the site of the, of the PUD to require the extension of Echo Avenue to Osage Road to provide fire access to the site due to changes to fire service with the deconsolidation. This particular map shows kind of the whole area and the vicinity, this is the Sted Airport here, here's the existing city fire station, and Echo Avenue extends this way to the west, and then there's a bridge that goes right to the city limit, and then just, there's a parcel, and I can show the, better not. This is a blow-up of that area, this is the western extent of Echo Avenue, and this is the city limit, and then the road would be constructed to, to Osage, and then it would continue on, um, to Sted Boulevard, and then up to the site. Fire staff is here to explain any of the, the timing considerations and the appropriateness of this particular condition. That, I believe, concludes my presentation, be happy to answer any questions if I missed something in that, thank you.
I have a few questions. Thank you for putting that map up, Mr. Close. First of all, um, this is, you said, we're going from 5,556 residential units to 5,679 residential units with the increased addition of what, how many, how many acres are being added to this?
123.
123. So, we can get an idea of what size community we're talking about up here, how many units is Somerset Development? Were planned, approved?
I think it's around 3,000.
3,000, so we're talking a little bigger than Somerset here. What, and a fire station would, is proposed to be constructed, just like Somerset, we have a fire station up there?
It would be a similar fire station.
Yeah, yeah.
As in Somerset.
Yeah, we're not staffing that one all the time, but we're hoping here. So, let me ask you another question, why are we doing this? Because we're adding 123 residential units? Is that, is that why the developer wants this modification?
They are requesting to, um, they acquired this particular piece of property afterwards, and so they just want to add it into the unit, or into the PUD. And then also, as a result of the, as a result of the deconsolidation, they, they had applied in 2010, which is this particular project, and it's been on hold for three years, to allow for development agreements, to define the timing and, and extent of particular services such as police and fire parks, or other infrastructures, so basically, they can tie down what they need to do, what it would cost, and the timing to deliver those, those services.
Okay, well, with that rationale, I have a little bit of a question here, is, you know, we're talking about 5,000 units essentially, and we're adding a few, so we have to go through this modification, re-vest their instrument here. It says in the report that this is a 20 to 25-year build-out, and it was originally approved in 2006, so we're almost a quarter way of the projected build-out, they haven't built anything, is it really necessary to go through this exercise again for 100 units, which is just, 100 units, which is just a fraction of the 5,000 they already have? Why don't we just say no and let them have what they already have?
I guess that would be up to the council's pleasure to approve or deny the request, but what this does do is, is help the city with the fire services for the project, because with deconsolidation, a fire station that was counted on to provide services to areas no longer available to the city, so what, the changes to the fire services section does allow a better response time from the existing fire station instead to the site with the conditions and provisions put into the handbook.
Well, I mean, it says, your, your second reason for the rationale was so they could get development agreements, but when I see this document, I see that there was a, a requirement, that was put in one revision of the document, that said they will have to get development agreements, and that's been struck out to they may get development agreements, and, um, for the record, how many development agreements has the city entered into over the years?
The only one I'm aware of is for Meadowwood Mall.
So, we haven't really used those as a matter of course, anyway?
No, we haven't.
Okay, the, the other point is, and I think the council will remember, we bonded about $800,000 last fall to build a fire station out in southeast Reno, because we have 30,000 people down there and no fire station. And I think the basis for building that fire station was an agreement we had with the developers in a PUD much like this. So, what happens, or how do we avoid that scenario happening again? What protections do we have in here, in the negotiations that have been made?
Well, at this point, if the amendment is not approved, then we will have a situation that is probably not as good, and we haven't, if, if you do not add the 40 acres and approve the additional 123 units, if, if the whole request is denied, then we have an existing situation that's still in enforcement, in fact, it's a PUD, it still can, can still build 5,500 units, it still has over 2,000 acres, and all of the conditions and circumstances would remain as they are right now. So, so this would actually improve the situation from a fire protection standpoint, with a minor modification as far as the increase in number of units and the acreage to the, to the project.
Well, I guess another thing is, though, is it being improved to their benefit, or to our disadvantage, a jurisdiction that's already strapped in its ability to man up our fire stations we have? Because if they didn't need this agreement, wouldn't they just sit on the agreement they have already? I mean, who needs these 123 units? When you've got 5,000 you haven't built.
Perhaps you'd like to ask them that question, but at this point, from, from our perspective, from the staff, fire, legal, we believe that this is an improvement over the existing situation.
Okay, well, a few other questions are, in 2006, the council was very, there's notations in here that the council wanted to know the specifics of water and sewer provision. I see that there's a lot of conjecture of where the sewer's gonna go, it could go to the Cold Springs Water Treatment Plant, or whatever. Do we have any subdivisions that are searing out to the county, and do we know that the county will sewer in their Cold Springs plant, city properties? What do we know about that?
My understanding is, is probably the western portion of the, of the site would go to the Cold Springs plant, to the Woodman Village area, and the eastern portion would go down to the Sted plant, but that would have to be determined as the development comes in, so, at this point, until they go to develop something, the actual location and which provider would service which portion of the project would be determined at that time. They did provide conceptual plans for water and sewer with the project when the, when the zoning was put in place back in 2008, so, they did, and all that information is in the PUD, and as far as the water service area and the sewer maps, all those are in the PUD right now.
Did the county ever respond then or now on their ability to serve? Because if their plan is like our plan, our plan is 10 million gallons from not being able to make nitrogen release, more or less, 10 percent, I guess, and, you know, what do we know about them? Do they have capacity? Did anyone, is anything on the record showing that?
Aren't these things that they would have to do before they could build anyway?
Correct.
This is a vesting tool, Mr. Mayor, I think, I think that, it was the intent of the council in 2006 to get very specific answers, and I don't, I don't see these, and I'm bringing these up again. Well, here, here's another question, I want to go to, there's a comment in one of the conditions about this housing discount for essential workers, and it says, we'll do this if we can determine it can be legally established. Was there doubt whether or not the city has the authority to, you know, kind of be involved in this discussion of?
It was, it was written that way because it was not absolutely certain whether or not that would be allowable, but it was put forth in good faith to provide a lower-income segment for one, I think it's 1% or 2% of the units, for that purpose.
How about the legality of having someone build a fire station for us, and give $500 for every residential development for a police facilities, and buy us some fire trucks? Is that of question, the legality of that? Has anyone looked into that? It's outside of the impact fee ordinance, correct?
Well, again, it was, it was agreed to by the applicant at the time, and that was what staff, fire staff, and police staff determined was appropriate at the time, and the applicant agreed to it, and it was put forth as a provision in the PUD, so, at, at this point, they're still willing to live with that, and if it gets modified, when, if and when a development agreement gets done, or if impact fees come into place, should an ordinance be enacted before the first final map, then it would be determined that way, but basically, the services will be provided, it's just the method, at this point, is not exactly determined, but there are provisions to determine that before they can build anything.
Well, I would submit to the rest of the council that these negotiated terms are along the lines of what went on in Double Diamond, and some people who bought property or came in on this either went bankrupt, or told the city, you've got deals that aren't legal, and that's why we ended up bonding $835,000. There's also record in here, going back in a former fire chief saying, once you build it, we'll staff it. So, we're putting ourselves on the line to some staffing, as far as I can tell, when we are not staffing Skyline, and we are not staffing Somerset. So, I think we should take a, ask for more information from staff on this, and have an analysis of service and infrastructure one by one, and see how they are different and made better through this agreement to our advantage. I also see several provisions that I won't call out, where at the developer's option, at the developer's option, and timing of these sort of things. So, the developer is driving the train on this, on our ability to serve this development, when we have, you know, challenges to serve existing parts of our community, so I think this is premature, and I'd like more information.
Mr. George?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll move to a, a poll, the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Show the vote 6-1.
And then I'll move to refer the bill, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries 6-1. All right. All right, now we go to item?
J1. J1.
J1.
Thank you.
Sorry you couldn't stay today longer. Do we have a voiceless commentator today?
Mr. Mayor, council members, to the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager. I'm actually filling in for Maureen, who has lost her voice, so, if she jumps up here to whisper in my ear, I will be her translator.
That will be the, that is very fine excuse you came up with, sir.
This item is a follow-up to previous presentations before the council regarding the expenditure of, of community development block grant funds for economic development services, and in those previous discussions, the council had asked, and the staff had suggested that we would go back and come up with some performance standards for these expenditures, so, that's the purpose of this item. We do have Nancy Brown and Antonio Pizano from VEDC, one of the firms that is going to do part of the economic development contract with us, and then also, we have Nicola Kurzlake and Doug Irwin from EDON to talk about the, the second piece, so we really have two different contracts here in terms of how we're moving forward. The specifics in terms of the performance standards are listed in your staff report, and I think rather than belabor it, I will conclude my presentation, and say we're here to answer any questions about the performance standards that we're suggesting.
Mr. Mayor, I think that we would probably be well-served if Nicola, you would just kind of give us some history of how, either you or Doug, wherever it's more appropriate, how we got to this, and your involvement, and the securities that you're proposing.
Thank you. Good afternoon, thank you for the opportunity to speak with the council today. My name is Nicola Kurzlake, and my corporate entity is the contractor to the council for the Reno Accelerator Fund. By way of background, my career has primarily been in investments. Starting in London, I ran a team of analysts at ABN Amro in investment banking, and then moved with my boss to Asia, and worked on everything from large Chinese IPOs to advising firms like Fidelity on investments. When I came to this country, I ran part of a hedge fund, and then set up a private equity and real assets practice for a company called SEI Investments. They run around $160 billion in mostly mutual fund assets. When I moved back out to the West Coast, I've spent about three years partially involved with the Reno entrepreneurial community, and that's really what led me to believe that the greatest need of this community is funding. So, in the next 10 minutes or so, I know you've had a long day already, I'll, I'll keep it brief, in the next 10 minutes or so, I'm going to outline the program that we have put together and the rationale for that. I'm hoping that the maestro can forward the, thank you. Actually, if we could flip forward one, one more. Startups are the U.S. jobs creation engine. We've seen from successive studies over the past couple of years, that for every three jobs that a startup creates, an established firm will end up destroying one job, and that has really influenced the way that many think about economic development. So, for instance, our local Economic Development Agency, EDON, have established an economic, entrepreneurial development program, which is thriving in our community, and has helped to fund things like Startup Weekend and Hack for Reno. Accelerators, sorry, accelerators are really a vital part of this, this ecosystem. The traditional investment model is that you give money to a company, and they go away and attempt to build their business, and you don't know for a year or so if they've been successful, and what's worse, they are left typically as one or two people out there on their own battling the world. What accelerators do is three things. They bring you mentoring as a young company, they bring you funding, and they bring you a place, a co-working space typically, where you can spend time with other entrepreneurs. And the outcome of this is much better investment returns, so, a company that has an uninvolved investor gets about a one-time return, a company that has involved investors such as an accelerator program get a 3.7 times return, according to the Kaufman Foundation. In our state, we're lucky, we're really entrepreneurial, we're very good at entrepreneurialism. In fact, over the past decade, we have gone from a state that has one of the lowest levels of entrepreneurialism to one of the highest, and the Kaufman Foundation says that we are most improved on that score. What accelerator programs do is they take these young entrepreneurs and they work with them, so, they will help them figure out their business plan, they will help them figure out how to pitch to investors, and they will prepare them such that when they put them in the room with an angel investor or with a venture capitalist, they know the kinds of questions are going to be asked, and they know how to respond to them. For most companies, that process is overwhelming without some support. Accelerators have a demonstrated job creation impact. These statistics on this slide are from a national database which tracks accelerators' performance, and what they show is that an accelerator, a portfolio company that's within an accelerator program will typically create 3.5 jobs. That's far in excess of the target that HUD has set for us in this program. The case study that most, most cities look to is Boulder, Colorado, and they do this because Boulder has been phenomenally successful in creating an entrepreneurial community there. It's the home of tech stars, which is the best-known and one of the most successful accelerator programs in the country, and the learning from that experience is really that everyone, every constituency within the community has a, has a part to play. Entrepreneurs lead this effort, and we're already starting to see that here in Reno with the development of Startup Row. Nonprofits, accelerator programs, and agencies help and support this community by introducing things like Startup Weekends and Hack for Reno's, introducing the kind of programming that entrepreneurs need, and government has a very important role to play in terms of helping on the infrastructure and the funding side. The infrastructure that entrepreneurs need is not more roads and more parking meters, the infrastructure they need is faster Wi-Fi and better access to, to cheap office space and cheap co-working space. In Reno, we have some great accelerator programs already, and they're doing sterling work in our community. work in our community. At the moment, they can provide two of the three things that you need for an effective accelerator program. They have great mentoring, and they have co-working spaces. What they don't have right now is funding, and that's really where this program comes into play. And so, the Reno Accelerator Fund will be offering $20,000 as an investment into early-stage companies in the city. These kinds of public-private partnerships are the norm, not the exception with accelerators. We've illustrated two examples here of accelerators across the country who have federal funding as part of their backing, but we could easily have put another 15 or so of these examples on the slide. The program addresses 87% of our cities' businesses. 87% of cities in the business have fewer than four employees. Typically, they cannot go into a bank and get a loan for their company, they don't have enough credit history, and by the very nature of them being startups, they cannot take advantage of tax incentives as yet, not until they're much more developed. So, the Reno Accelerator Fund really represents a first, in that it's the first program that directly targets funding to this specific section of the community, that is, in turn, going to create jobs much faster as a consequence. These program measurement guidelines were developed by the city in conjunction with ourselves. We feel that they are fair measures, that they're somewhat challenging in some cases. We are very much aware that we have a short runway, in which to prove the efficacy of this program. We are aware that it's not a self-renewing program, and we intend to position it to bring early success cases to the council. Since being awarded the contract in a previous council meeting, we have worked with legal and other city staff to develop an investment process, which both captures HUD's requirements, and ensures that we use the minimum amount possible of city staff resources. So, with those comments, I think I'm going to thank you again for allowing me this opportunity. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
I just have a comment. I, when this originally came up, was a little skeptical, because of, one, our track record of using CDBG for business development programs has not been particularly good, and, two, my understanding of accelerator programs is, it's usually used with less restricted funds, whether they're charitable foundation, or general fund. Much like the state of Nevada's using their catalyst funds, or general fund. Having said that, I have confidence in our two vendors, that they have put into place good approaches, and we have measurables. However, we've only got a very short duration for these, I think they're only going to go for about six months. So, to really, if we want to be true to this, we may have to commit to roll these more funds over from next year, but we're in a world where declining CDBG appropriations are going on, and, two, you know, we have competing interests. I'm not entirely unconvinced that if we want to invest some capital in a community-wide facility like a golf course, we couldn't use CDBG in the southeast quadrant of the city, or a retaining wall that's failing, you know, near downtown. So, I think that we'll see what decisions are being made, and I have a question for staff, when we would be asked to make the decision if we're going to continue this for a second go-around.
That's a question that I have as well. Do we have the opportunity today, Maureen, or Bill, to actually approve an 18-month window?
No, I am sorry. For the record, Maureen, no, you don't. These funds expire on June 30th. You will have the opportunity, when you do your HUD action plan in May, to potentially commit more funding.
Okay. Well, we'll see if we're going to ask to roll these over again, this approach, and it's been represented that it will be leveraging some funds, so I hope that there are some, I see some funder here, who maybe will be able to bring some resources to complement ours. And you're with one of the funding agencies?
If I may speak to that, Antonio Pizano, Director of Small Business Lending for VEDC, one of the agencies that was contracted with the city of Reno. Very happy to be here, thank you very much. I'm happy to say that we have leveraged the commitment from the city of Reno to leverage not just two, but $3 million to the state of Nevada. So, we have a $3 million loan pool available to us to start lending now. So, that speaks to the commitment that we've made to the city of Reno, and that's how we use these funds. We use these funds essentially as loan loss reserves, so that we go out and seek funding sources, we come to them and say, "Hey, we have loan loss reserve money ready and available already."
That's great.
Thank you.
Move to accept, staff recommendations?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And then are we going to J-9?
12.
J-12?
12, and then 13? I don't know where nine came in. I think he misspoke.
What's that?
I think that was an error, I think he meant to say J... Yeah, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, we did have a request to take J-9 out of order, but it's certainly up to the body. What order do you want to take?
You want to do 12 and 13 first?
Yes, since they're all similar to, and similar participants.
So, we'll go to J-12 now.
For the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager. This is a, actually, two agreements that are related, and in short, what they are is, the city of Reno will be functioning, based on state law, to be a partner, both with the state's office, Governor's Office of Economic Development, and Lincoln Cutting Systems, to allow Lincoln Cutting Systems, which is a business that will expand here in Reno, to have access to state catalyst funds. So, that's kind of the short of what this is. There are representatives, Brad Momar and Pete Wallish, from the Governor's Office of Economic Development, as well as Mike Kazemirsky from EDON, here, if you have any questions about this particular request.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I have a comment. I understand the way the catalyst fund was set up, is that the money flows through a jurisdiction, and then on out, and so, we're actually being asked to function as a fiscal agent, but we're not getting any reimbursement for that, and we're stretched. I bet the Governor's Office of Economic Development has more people than, you know, our finance department and planning department combined, and so, I'm a little concerned, and maybe it's something to think about for the legislature, that, you know, there's an admin housekeeping ability, or recovery ability, for a jurisdiction like this, because, you know, why isn't the state, they have the capacity to, you know, administer this program?
And I can't speak to that, I know, I'm sure there are those who were around when the legislation was put together, in terms of why it was there. I would say, from our standpoint, and what we understand from the Governor's Office, is that we're talking maybe three of these, so it's not a large volume of work. We've also talked to EDON, since we do have a contractual relationship with them, about them perhaps doing much of the legwork, as far as making sure these contracts are administered properly. So, we understand the issue, and certainly, if it's going to move forward, we will bring this to the state as a discussion point, to see if there's maybe a cleaner, simpler, more equitable way to do this.
Yeah, and I think it's worth having the conversation, but, I mean, I think we should be thankful that we've got this opportunity to do this at all, so...
Absolutely. And it speaks to one of our top priorities, our economic sustainability.
Yeah.
And it's this kind of adventure that we're embarking on, that gets us the Kaufman and the livable cities kinds of designations, that will bring us more business.
Yeah.
Move to accept.
Are we, we can do J-12 and 13, Bill, or is it just, is 13 separate?
I'm assuming you probably should do them separately, because they're two different agreements.
So, we got a motion on J-12, and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. J-13?
Motion.
Yeah. Move to accept.
Approve, yeah. In a second? Okay. All those in favor? Oh, Jonathan?
Yeah, just for the record, John Shipman, Deputy City Attorney, these are agreements, so those were motions to approve the agreements, correct?
Yes.
I clarified that one, I didn't know that, I don't think I clarified the first one. So, we got a motion to approve, and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So, now we'll go to J-9?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, we had J-9 to be taken out of order, but I overlooked, we also had a request for J-4, which is a presentation on the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. We had a time certain at 2:00. It wasn't posted that way, but we had a request for a time certain at 2:00.
Well, if it started at 2:00, it should be done by now.
That's true.
What was that, J-2?
J-4.
J-4. So, we'll take J-4, real quick, right? Robert? Right, Robert?
Right. Good afternoon, Robert Chisel, Director of Finance and Administration. Thank you for taking us early, we have members from our audit firm here, and wanted to get them taken care of. Before you today is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which contains a single audit report and auditor's opinion for the fiscal years ending June 30th, 2013, and the findings in the year opinion. Staff is also presenting for review and approval of the city's corrective action plan, as identified in the annual audit process. The annual audit is required by law, and follows the NRS and generally accepted accounting principles. The audit was conducted by Piercy, Bowler, Taylor, and Kern, and with us today is James Andrus and Ralph Piercy from PBTK, to help answer any questions you may have. The audit we received was an unqualified clean opinion from PBTK. Staff and PBTK also presented the CAFER to the Financial Advisory Board on January 9th. The Fab accepted the presentation. Our auditor's conclusions regarding the city's compliance with the Nevada revised statutes and NAC are listed and described in Note 2 of the CAFER. The Department of Taxation requires the city to develop a Plan of Corrective Action, which is noted in those, in your packet. These reports and findings are an important tool to assist the city in doing financial planning, and improving our financial policies and procedures. Some highlights I'd like to point out, really, the biggest highlight is that there aren't a lot of highlights. It was pretty, pretty uneventful year financially. Our financial position has appeared to stabilize overall. Our general fund balance was up about $900,000 to $7.5 million, which is about 4.9% of actual operating expenditures, or 18 days, which may not sound like a lot, but it was up from 4.3% last year. Staff recommends council approval of the Plan of Corrective Action, and direct staff to file the plan with the Department of Taxation.
Okay, and before we go to questions, I do have a public comment card. Eddie Lorton? Yes.
For the record, my name's Eddie Lorton, City Council. I ended up over here on this, I think they did quite a good job on this audit, but as I'm overlooking it here, I see quite a bit of, quite a few problems. We had overspending of, like, line one there on expenditures for intergovernmental spending. I would like to know what that is, does anyone know what intergovernmental spending is?
What page are you on?
Page 1, from the audit, January 16, 2014, but they had overspent $1,020,562.
He's looking at the cover letter, not the actual report.
Or what? Okay, but anyway, I went through here...
If you've got specific questions like that, why don't you address those with staff? I mean, I think staff would be happy to get your answers to any of those questions.
Okay. Staff, what's intergovernmental?
I mean, not, this isn't the appropriate place for that, though.
All right, well, I just would like to get some answers sometimes.
Right, and I think staff's happy to get you those answers.
Okay. But as I go through here, I just wondering who's watching the store when we go over budget like this, between the finance manager and the city manager, to where, here I go through, there's a misspending, or overspending of $1,020,000. I see, as we go down the line here, for the, a non-major special revenue fund of $95,000, another $92,000 that's over, $24,000, another one that's in the retention, let's see, internal service fund, by $1,664,000, and then you go on, and furthermore, the workers' compensation internal service fund, another $857,000. But it goes on and on, on these astronomical figures, but in the end, there was overspending of $3,893,000 that wasn't supposed to be spent. So, that's just according to this, so, all them figures added together equal that, so, yes, that would be nice if I had an explanation, but from what I've seen here, they did a pretty comprehensive job, and brought some things to light, so I hope we use them further in the future, because the other people we used didn't really find very much before. So, I'd appreciate a little explaining, if I'm wrong, Mr. Klinger, on the $3,800,000 total, once I add all these problems up from the beginning of the front page, that'd be good. Would you know any of that?
Once you're done with your public comment, if any of us have questions for staff, we can ask those.
Okay.
This is your time, it's not for you to have debate back and forth with us.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted some questions answered, and so that'll be great. Thank you.
Robert, do you want to address any of those? Yeah, that was brought up.
Robert Chisel, again, for the record, going through the expenditures in excess, if you go to the items that he was referring to, the first item for $1 million was the difference between entity-wide accounting versus fund accounting, that's why there was an intergovernmental change. It was the RDA settlement from last year, there was, we needed to adjust the accounting practices to book that amount. The $95,000 in the drug forfeiture was due to a math error, when the budget items were submitted to the state. The $92,000 in the drainage facility impact fee was, again, a math error, when those documents were submitted to the state. $24,000 in the building permit fund was due to severance pay, that was paid out to an employee who left at the end of the year, and so was not able to bring those items to council. The expenses for the self-funded insurance, self-funded retention, and self-funded workers' comp were all due to actuarial reports that came in well after the end of the fiscal year. They were to book the IBNR, which is incurred but not reported. Incurred but not reported are items that are liabilities that are booked, and unfortunately, we don't know what they are until after the end of the fiscal year. So, those were those items that were noted in the audit.
Mr. Mayor, if I just may add one more thing to clarify it, based on Mr. Chisel's comments, just to clarify the record, none of these were due to overspending.
That was going to be my next question. Thank you.
I have a question. I have read the CAFER in its entirety the best, and understood it the best I can as a non-accountant type, and I would concur, I guess, some of the, you know, maybe confusion, or, you know, these are hard to interpret, is a lot of booking, kind of corrective actions, in the changing world of accounting rules for government finance, and so, things that appear one way, appear the other, and I get that, I understand it. I sat down with your deputy yesterday, and she explained a number of my questions, but I hadn't gotten through it all, and I had one question. There was a debt issuance, or a debt proceeds of about $356,000, $300,000, it's on page 156. Is that the medium-term bond that we entered into for the golf carts? Do you recall?
Let me find out.
For 20, it's a 10-year fiscal, unedited changes in fund balance, and its other financing sources, debt issuance proceeds, 366, 602. Because that wouldn't be the fire station, the fire station came in in the fall. Page 156, the last column.
It's the golf carts and the copiers.
Okay, it is the golf carts and the copiers, okay. And then, and I get that. One thing that struck me, and I didn't pick up on it in the last year, was, there was some 10-year trending on, you know, how much float we have to issue debt, and we have a lot of float to issue debt, but it's only GO debt, right?
Well, yeah, that's a calculation based on the assessed value for the city of Reno, which is a Nevada revised statute debt limit, and, yeah, we are well under our debt limit, based on that criteria. I wouldn't say the same thing based on, you know, cash flow.
Yeah, because statute does not count those revenue bonds as, you know, they're in some way firewalld away, right? And that's maybe why that statute reads that way?
That's correct, because it would be a general obligation of the city, which property tax is one of the main sources of general obligation, and revenue bonds have dedicated revenue, so they're not considered in that calculation. Even if they were considered in that calculation, we're well below the NRS cap.
Okay, so, revenue bonds are for the revenue for which they are pledged?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
My name is just comments, I sit on the Financial Advisory Board, and was in with the meeting when they went over the audit, and I will just say, the comments made from the auditors, if, are they here? Or, you're here. I won't speak for you, but I believe... the auditors, if, are they here? Or, you're here. I won't speak for you, but I believe your words were that it was, this year's was significantly improved over the prior year, which was your initial audit, which some of that could be for that purpose, but I wanted to just say the compliments to our accounting staff, our finance department staff. They have done a stellar job, and it's-
It's because it's such a big department.
Yeah, what, all three of you. But kudos to you. You, you really have done a, a great job with very limited resources, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Motion to approve staff's recommendations? Got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So, Mr. Klinger, do we want to go to J 9 now?
Good afternoon. Deanna Gishiter, Director of Community, Communications and Community Engagement, for the record. At the May 22nd City Council meeting, council directed the OCC staff to continue the current Neighborhood Advisory Board program for six months with an abbreviated meeting schedule of every other month and host citizen engagement working group, task force meetings, to evaluate the city's proposed citizen engagement efforts. Included in the new efforts were town halls, hot topic meetings, council, grassroots outreach, and the Think Reno Idea Portal. Each of these programs were designed to enhance citizen engagement, provide information on trending issues, and identify innovative ways to gather feedback. Some programs have proven to be very effective, while others need revision to fully achieve these objectives. Today, we'll quickly review each program, outcomes for each program today, and program recommendations for moving forward. First of all, current NAV members were invited to attend five working group meetings to assist the city in defining and designing opportunities for former NAV members and active citizens to continue their involvement as neighborhood leaders. The OCC CE staff hosted these meetings to gather input from citizens in attendance. Topics for the discussion at the meetings included an overview of the NAV process, proposed citizen engagement program, grassroots outreach ideas, town halls, hot topic meetings, development review process, advertising and promotion to gain awareness and participation on neighborhood outreach, and how citizens can start their own neighborhood group. Attendance at these meetings averaged about seven NAV members. Attendees tended to focus on the perceived successes of the NAV program rather than providing feedback and ideas on new ways to be involved in citizen engagement. Their enthusiasm to remain involved continues to be high, but the group was not successful in developing specific recommendations to the program design and implementation. I would like to highlight that discussion highlights included interaction with council as a priority. Continue, they, they, the leaders want to continue to help us and to be engaged, and that's important that we take advantage of that. We want, they want to continue to have the opportunity to develop development projects at the neighborhood level, and they want us to use traditional paid outreach methods to inform citizens about city meetings. We find often that seniors, and I believe the Latino market, needs us to use paid outreach to be able to make them aware of city things that are going on. So, jumping straight into town halls, ward-specific meetings were proposed for February, June, and October of each year. These meetings were designed to provide an open forum for citizens to speak directly to their council member in an informal, friendly setting. Town halls were hosted in October within the wards at various venues, including an elementary school, a senior living facility, and a senior Reno community centers. Each town hall was tailored to the council members and their partners to design and, to present and answer questions on various topics. The open forum format was not found to be necessarily beneficial for all attendees, because some citizens were more vocal than others, creating a focus for a few personal items of interest rather than a broader discussion with the entire audience intended to be slightly negative. The meeting attendance averaged 19 citizens, with some citizens attending all town halls. Just to give you a broader overview, we had 132 participants, so we were able to reach more people through that outreach meeting effort with the program in its infancy than we did with our established NAV program where there was only 17 attendees from July 1st to December. That's only six months. So, based on the feedback from attendees and council, staff proposes changes to the future town halls. The new name would be Community Forum. The format of the forums would highlight the parts of the NAVs that were working, the updates, and improve the parts that were not working, and that we would add a section dedicated to community visioning tied to strategic planning. We'd have sort of a citywide update meeting coupled with tackling neighborhood-specific issues as directed by neighborhood leaders and citizens. The agenda framework would include updates from code enforcement, Reno Police Department, and Fire Department, neighborhood-specific topics, and a review of certain development projects as necessary. The Planning Commission Ward Designee would be invited to attend as development projects are on the agenda, allowing the Designee to hear directly from the neighbors before making their decisions at the Planning Commission. This is the difference. There would not be a board, but rather the meetings would be coordinated by the council liaisons, but directed by the city leadership. The purpose of this recommendation is to ensure that the format remains informal, not allowing open meeting, and not allowing for open meeting law formal process. The characteristics identified that worked were the interaction with council, the review of developments, the same-time, same-place meetings, and the uniformity of the agendas, and that will be carried over in this Community Forum concept. The proposed big difference is that there would be less meetings, and there would not be a board, but rather an informal approach to a meeting where citizens' opinions are equal rather than being managed by a board. Moving on to the grassroots outreach, informal council outreach gatherings in a variety of locations can provide flexibility and easy access for citizens to meet and engage with their council members. Liaisons will continue to coordinate and tailor grassroots outreach programs to each council member's style, design, and preference for allowing citizens' personal access to their council representative. The hot topic meetings were, are timely and effective for citizens. They were, they're proposed to be held on an as-needed basis to provide forum for community input on time-sensitive issues. The hot topic meeting format was successful, and staff will continue to monitor Reno Direct, Think Reno, phone calls and emails to council members, public comment, to identify the issues for which citywide or ward-specific hot topic meetings need to be scheduled. The Think Reno Idea Portal, the overview is that the, the portal offers citizens a chance to interact via online forums with each other and the city of Reno to improve their community. The tool allows citizens to submit ideas, provide valuable feedback, and helps prioritize what's most important to the topics of the city, to start discussions, to submit and receive feedback on development projects, and highlight specific neighborhood issues, and much more. We believe that the, the portal allows citizens to participate when it's convenient for them, to provide ideas on any topic. We did just add a question today, asking if the city of Reno should be involved in, in the golf services arena, so the banter is, is proceeding now within our own website, so we will wrap that up in a nice report when we, when it comes back on your agenda, and you'll be able to have a summary of what the, the citizens' feedback was from that portal. The Reno Citizens Institute offers an eight-week program annually to citizens. We've had over 1,200 graduates. Staff will continue to coordinate this popular and interactive outreach program for citizens. The next one is February 4th, so if you know anyone that is interested in our local government or that you think can help us lead, please invite them to be involved. In the future, we'll look for webinar-type opportunities that will allow those who cannot attend evening meetings to participate at home at their convenience, expanding the city's chance to further educate citizens. We heard loud and clear through these discussions that development projects are important, and neighborhoods want to be a part of that feedback. The way that we're addressing it is that previously, NAVs heard development projects and submitted project review forms for consideration by the planning commissioners. Developers, while not required by law, had been encouraged to attend NAV meetings to solicit input. Currently, those citizens can visit the, the community development webpage of the city's website to follow a project, contact a planner directly, or a developer, to comment and see all updates in a timely manner. So, the important difference here is that we've recognized that the Planning Commission has a ward Designee, the Planning Commission is made up of ward Designees, and so what we're going to do is encourage that Planning Commissioner to come to the Community Forum, and when we need to visit development projects, the, the city council person and the Planning Commissioner will be in attendance to hear that. Staff worked additionally with Dr. Marlene Rabore, Community Engagement Specialist with the Office of Service Learning and Civic Engagement from the University of Nevada-Reno, to utilize her expertise to review our programs and provide feedback. She was encouraged by the proposed programs to provide meaningful avenues for engagement to empower citizens and lead initiatives, to become partners with local government, and share in the decision-making process. In addition, her consultation services she shared with us, she will be leading a facilitation workshop. We've recognized that our staff today needs some help as we host presentations and lead community meetings, including task force, forces. We need to serve, and serve on boards and commission liaisons. We need to make sure our staff learns skills to be impartial, subjective, and conduct productive meetings to provide the most effective citizen engagement. Staff also suggests that we initiate a citizen survey so that we can get a broader perspective of what our community wants. How do they want to be communicated with? What do they want to know about? It's been difficult because we've had such low attending numbers in our workshops on the NAV specifically, that we believe a survey of something like this would give us a broader perspective of what people want and how they want to be communicated with. Per citizen feedback, staff is requesting $50,000 for outreach be allocated again in the fiscal year of 14, 15 for continued ongoing outreach efforts to include advertising media buys, facilitation training, and marketing promotional materials. Here is an example from last Sunday's Reno Gazette Journal of Sparks Placement. So, community engagement is a citywide priority, and staff desires to continue to provide meaningful forums, transparency, and interaction with its citizens. Staff recommends that the current NAV program be redirected and provide OCC the opportunity to continue productive new citizen engagement initiatives through community forums, grassroots outreach efforts, hot topic meetings, the Think Reno Portal, and a communication survey, as well as facilitation workshop to train our management how to productively run meetings, workshops, and task forces, and utilize all of our commissions more appropriately. So, if you haven't heard anything all, please hear this. It's important to clarify that we do intend to continue to evolve the engagement program. We're not committing that this is the end-all answer. We need to continue to be responsive and flexible and change. Today's presentation is not the end. Communication strategies change daily, and in order to remain flexible and innovative, we need to use our limited time and resources wisely. Therefore, redirecting the NAVs will allow us to be more productive with our time to put, put towards time that will improve the program. We have to challenge our managers to think differently and expand our efforts to truly engage with the community at an earlier, earlier time. We have to identify resources and strategies to strengthen the public problem-solving process and navigate the challenges of local government. To achieve successful and positive community engagement, we need to move away from directive to facilitative leadership, from monologue to dialogue, from customer service to collaboration and co-creation, from distrust to trust, from entitlement to ownership. Moving beyond neighborhood advisory boards is the first step towards that direction.
Okay. I do have a couple of people that would like to speak on this item before we go to questions. Trey Abney?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager. For the record, Trey Abney, and I'm here today as I served as the Vice Chair of Councilwoman Zadra's Ward 2 South NAV. I am not here today speaking on behalf of the chamber nor of any of my fellow NAV members, just my own two cents. We support staff's effort and the staff report in this case. I, and when I said "we," I mean "I." Boy, I'm used to saying "we." I support staff's effort in this case. Our NAV was very ably staffed by Ms. Barbara DiCiano. She's done a wonderful job. All city staff in this whole process through the open meetings and the town halls and everything we've had in here did a great job, but in my, I don't know, Councilwoman Zadra, I think I've been on there two, two and a half years now, nobody attended. There were times, especially when we would have presentations by Reno PD and Reno Fire and others, there would actually be more city staff in the room than there would be public in these meetings. And in fact, it really kind of came home to me when we had our joint Ward 2 NAV meeting. We held both NAVs together, and the topic was the future of the NAVs, the future of the Neighborhood Advisory Boards, and nobody came to talk about that. I think this is the way to go. I think having hot topics, things that pop up that are important in a neighborhood, whether it's a development project, whether it's graffiti, or my favorite wild horses, things of that nature, specific issues that we can come and talk to about in that neighborhood on an as-needed basis instead of taking staff time and taxpayer dollars to do this month after month. You know, before, we were allocated dollars, you know, to give to different charities and different important things, including park maintenance and everything, but there was really no rhyme or reason or no collective decision. You know, we need, we need to make better decisions about where those go instead of, I mean, really, it kind of depended on who approached us and the order in which they approached us and how much money we had left. Again, all worthy projects, and I voted, I voted for them. I attended a few meetings here when we were talking about this, and there were comments about, well, what if we provide food, and what if we provide water, and what if we provide, you know, all these things to cajole and twist people's arms to participate in the democratic process? I think it's the city's job to be as open as you can, as transparent as you can, get out as much information as you can about what you're doing through every avenue possible. But at some point, people in the Truckee Meadows, people in Reno, this culture, and individuals need to take their own responsibility for getting engaged. If something's going on in your neighborhood, then you get your neighbors together, you. Don't come down to City Hall and ask the city to do it. You get your neighbors together and talk about a problem. And then, once you've gotten your neighbors together, then come to the city and say, here's how we think you can help. I think that's the way to go. Again, I applaud staff, and I hope you support their recommendations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mac Rossi?
Good afternoon, council. For the record, my name is Mac Rossi. I was a member of the Reno Neighborhood Advisory Board for Ward 5. I was placed on that board at 2008. Got to see a lot what was going on. It was very informative. It was a shame there wasn't more residents that were involved in it, but it, as the other gentleman said, we had the same problem in Ward 5. It would have been nice to get a little more communication on the recommendations here. I was aware of some of them, but not all of them, not that I could give an opinion on all of them. I, I support what they've done. I've seen the, I've gone to a lot of the town meetings, and it didn't seem to be, it seemed to be more staff than, than there was residents. I've gone to a few of the other ward meetings and found out that there was people coming from other sides that weren't even part of the ward. The only thing I could recommend, and I would suggest that, instead of just one person conducting the meeting, I think there ought to be a couple of people, somebody with past history, and maybe get a couple of different opinions. The other thing is, I think that it should be conducted maybe once every month, every other month instead of every, every quarter, but otherwise, I think they did a fine job on at least reviewing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this item?
Mr. Vice Mayor, we got an email from another NAV member from Ward 2 that she thought she was going to be here today. She asked that it be read into the record.
For the record, Barbara DiCiano, Communications and Community Engagement. This is teeny, tiny, little text, so bear with me. This is from Naomi Dour. I had planned to attend today's council meeting to provide comments on item J 9 concerning citizen engagement. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend today as a family member has become ill. Therefore, I am providing a few comments by email. Please make my comments part of the record and read my recommendation into the record during the meeting. Many thanks. Background. I serve on Sharon Zadra's Ward 2 NAV. Over the years, Councilmember Zadra has been extremely supportive of the NAV, attending virtually every meeting. She was very engaged in the process and proactive in seeking citizen input. She was very engaged in the process and proactive in seeking citizen input. The NAB process was rewarding to me personally, and I saw projects and issues benefit as a result of NAB discussion. When the city council decided to review and potentially improve the citizen engagement process, they set up a Citizen Engagement Working Group Task Force Meeting Process. The meetings were held between July and November 2013, and the NAB members were offered a chance to participate. I attended and participated in most of the five meetings. The staff who supported the citizen engagement process did an excellent job. They were prepared for the meetings and did a good job in facilitating the process. They came early and stayed late, took notes, and provided feedback, concerns. I agree with most of the findings and statements in the staff report with two exceptions. Process: On Page Two, the report under the heading Citizen Engagement Working Group heading is the statement. Their NAB members' enthusiasm to remain involved continues to be high, but the group was not successful in developing specific recommendations as to program design and implementation. At each workshop meeting, we were requested to provide input on the staff's proposals. We gave it. However, to my knowledge, the working group participants were never asked to roll up their sleeves and design detailed programs themselves or to come up with ideas to improve the NAB process. It seemed too many who attended that the decision to eliminate the NABs had already been made. Two, disbanding NABs. The staff recommendation is to disband the NABs. Support for continuing the NABs was expressed over and over at the workshop meetings, as noted in the report. In fact, in all of the meetings I attended, I heard only one person say one time that the NABs should possibly be disbanded. My perspective. I think the NABs serve a very beneficial purpose. They provide a set time and place on a regular basis for both NAB members and citizens to meet with their council members, learn about issues of the day, have input on planned development projects, and provide feedback. The public seems to feel very comfortable and unintimidated by the format and setting. In contrast, some of the new town hall meetings have seemed almost too formal with lots of staff and public safety members present. I have been impressed with the 40 or so citizens who are members of the NABs. They are knowledgeable, committed, engaged, and care about Reno. If you do away with the NABs, I believe you may inadvertently disenfranchise this engaged group of citizens while at the same time you are diligently trying to get more input from the community. It is true that sometimes the NAB chairs did not facilitate the NAB meetings as well as they could. Things got bogged down with details, or the meetings were canceled by the staff chair, by the city staff or the chair, usually without input from the rest of the NAB members. The cancellations were for a wide variety of reasons, including lack of agenda topics, troubles with the meeting location, summer breaks, et cetera. I believe these issues could be addressed to ensure that the city gets the most benefit from the NAB process with the least cost. My recommendations. Consider keeping the NABs in place and the NAB members engaged. Ask the NAB members themselves to roll up their sleeves and come up with specific ideas to improve the NAB process. Consider reducing the frequency of the NAB meetings to bimonthly six per year or quarterly. Streamline the NAB agendas. Encourage council members to show up. Worst case, the council member can spend 30, 45 minutes talking with some very bright and engaged citizens. Better yet, other citizens may join in. I suggest giving this proposal a run, and if still isn't working by some metric, then discontinue the NABs. Try to fix them before you do away with them. Bottom line, don't discard a process with 40 active engaged citizens while you look for and try to engage new and different ones. The old Girl Scout rhyme may be helpful here. Make new friends, but keep the old. One is silver and the other is gold. Thank you for considering my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else want to be heard on this item? See none. I'll close the public comments section and bring it back to the table for questions.
I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. Over, just over a year ago, I'm not sure if I might have been the one that initiated it or not, but it was to kick off the discussion about the effectiveness of the NABs. And that began the process of seeing how we might be able to improve citizen engagement and communication. And that was because the very poor, poor attendance at the NAB meetings. I just want to go on record and say it had nothing to do with the board members. They are incredibly engaged, they care so much, and they really do help facilitate a lot of things. But the monthly meeting in a rigid manner with a formal agenda, I went to a number of them, and I was the only one in the audience. And we have, to do things the way they've always been done simply for that reason doesn't make it the right reason. So let me applaud staff for coming up with some different ways of doing things in the last year on a trial basis. Some were effective. The hot topic meetings, I thought, were very effective. The town hall meetings were not. And I think we've kind of learned from that. But I still am not in favor of a monthly, rigid, formalized, full-board meeting within the NABs. I don't think they're effective. I think we could do a much better job with citizen engagement in other ways.
Well, I am prepared to go forward with staff's recommendation. I think that we're on a positive note of thanking our citizen participation. Mr. Abney's sitting on the graffiti task force, which will self-expire in a couple months, and it's been a good productive exercise, and I think they'll bring a good product. And we have some members of an informal working group that we set up to talk about the police assessment district. So these topic-specific exercises with the public towards a defined end are, I think, starting to bear fruit, and it hasn't been that long with that approach. So I am pleased. I have a little concern that maybe the retooling of the forums might be a little more staff-heavy than I think they already were, so we'll have to watch that. Maybe Councilmember Zadra's on to something with, you know, a one-on-one coffee session, and maybe that could be part of the mix. I think that's a good approach. And one thing I would add is that Ms. Rabore, is that the woman who does the decorum training for the county commission that you and I saw?
Yeah.
Was it, or maybe?
Yes.
Okay. I like that, and I liked her training, and maybe, you know, at some point, we'll get training us, because I think the county's really seen success in working on their decorum approaches. That $50,000, that's going to be absorbed into the manager's already existing budget, you think, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good.
Could you describe a little bit more in detail, I'm sorry, how the community forums would work, the quarterly meetings, how it's similar maybe or dissimilar from the NABs?
Sure. That was probably the biggest focus where we spent a lot of time, because it's important to validate what we're hearing from our leadership and to keep them engaged. And what I heard loud and clear, that certain parts of it were working and certain parts were not, so we tried to address the things that were and weren't. Things that were working is they do like the citywide type of update. So we don't have to necessarily have staff there, but we could have a report from code and Reno Police Department and Fire Department as sort of a standing item. They want neighborhood-specific. They want some individualization so that we can tailor the agenda that best fits with the neighborhood and the ward. So that section of the agenda would be more flexible and driven by citizen leadership, and very likely, we need to use our existing NAB leaders to identify what those would be. And then, as certain development projects need to be heard by a neighborhood, we would bring those forth, invite the planning commission designated, and hear those items there as well. I think I've hit it all. The last portion of it is that as part of our strategic planning session, and you'll dive into this on February 4th at your strategic planning session, we hope to do a more community-wide visioning process. And with that, we would make a portion of the community forum be dedicated to that process as well. It's time to make Reno better, and we want to engage the public, and we're looking for all innovative ways to reach all the people in our neighborhoods. And I think that this is the stuff in the right direction that helps get us to a better end. We would keep the sort of NAB process that is working in the community forums, but we would have less meetings. There are only four proposed, one per quarter.
And was this, I'm sorry, if you said it, I didn't catch it in your original presentation. Was that specific recommendation, the forums discussed in any of the several meetings that you had with all of the NAB members?
The final aha moment was honestly, it came together in the last week. I think what I've done, a lot of spending time one-on-one with our NAB leaders to understand what they wanted, because it was my goal to stand up here and present you with a plan that worked for both our leaders and for our limited resources. So the community forum is a little bit of middle ground that we recognize could be a good opportunity to keep the NABs, in essence, but change them so that they are informal. Same time, same place, same location, so people can depend on them, but less of them, so less resources, but something that people can depend on, so we don't lose them completely.
Because I think that Ms. Jarden said it as well, and I feel very strongly, that even if it was just the nine or 11 NAB board members at the meeting, yeah, that was nine or 11 public citizens at a meeting because they were concerned. True, there weren't always, unless there was a really hot topic on the agenda, there weren't a lot of non-board members from the neighborhoods that attended. But that is an initiative of ours. It is a priority of ours, so I think that's critically important. And maybe this question is for Fred. We had the biggest full houses when there was development occurring in our community. That's when a couple hundred people would show up if it was really a seriously interesting proposed development. How would we be able to provide residents that opportunity to still hear about those projects before it lands at the planning commission?
So, thank you. Fred Turnier, Community Development Director. What we have currently in place is the noticing, 750 feet around the project. We have the postcard noticing. We also have our development review memo. So when projects do come in, when they initially come in, we write up the description of them, and we email them out to a listserv of people that have stated that they're interested in it, which also includes our NAB leaders are a part of that listserv. On top of that, we've been working with Deanna's group to get that on our website and actually get the entire planning packages that come in during the intake to have those online. So if there's Project X, that's 1,200 acres in the southwest, and someone is curious about the drainage report, they can actually go in and look at the drainage report, look at the contacts of the developer or the case planner, and be able to reach out to them. How that relates to the community forums is that it's an opportunity for our designated planning commissioner and a city council member to hear items of development concerns from the public. There's always the opportunity for the developer to use that forum as an avenue to reach out to the community. And so it's a resource that's there in addition to the resources that they can employ right now, which is having their own community meetings, or go in before the planning commission and vetting the issue before a planning commission. And the reason why I bring that up is that sometimes it's hard to gauge if a planning item is going to be a big issue or really big issue. And it could be something of a parcel map that comes forward that no one would think that would be controversial, and suddenly we have 100 people show up. So those are the opportunities for people to have their input.
I do want to commend staff for working very hard on trying to get us to some comfortable position here. I think you heard from some of my NAB members, and I had one that was texting me through the whole meeting, when is it going to be up? When is it going to be up? Because she's stuck in another meeting herself. But as long as we have this kind of more moderate approach through the forums, I would think they might be a little more satisfied, because fortunately, I had two very active boards, very active. And the community, the development audience within our community frequently said they actually loved coming to those NABs because they were so engaged. And I don't want to lose. I don't want those people to be disheartened in any way, that we don't care enough about the input that they so willingly have given over the last several years. So we really need to work hard on this forum piece in particular.
And I'd like to just emphasize something that Deanna brought up and specifically focused on, on the planning side of the house, is that we're always looking, we have our statutory requirements under our code of noticing people, but we're always, we always have that opportunity to notice more, to have more community engagement, and we'll be working with Deanna's group to see what works and what doesn't work to continue to refine that process.
I would just like to say, I think, Deanna, you and your team have done an incredible job. I know how long and how hard you guys have worked on this to come up with a solution for everyone. And sometimes it's not hard, it is hard to please everyone. But I mean, we are living in the year 2014. Things change. People engage differently. Look at social media. I just read a survey about people engaging on their mobile phones. I mean, it's outrageously high. And I think regardless, having even the old way and implementing the new way, I think you're going about it, you know, how we should be looking at it in, as, you know, going into the future and being able to provide something like this for all of our constituents. So, I mean, I just, I praise you. I know it's not easy, and Rome wasn't built in a day, and, you know, I think this is the right way of looking at things. So, good job.
Kudos. Awesome. I know we sat down a few different times, Deanna, and I think you've hit a lot of the things. As a former NAB member myself, I know that at times they were, they worked, and at other times they didn't. And as Hillary just stated, things have changed quite a bit, and I think you've been able to adapt a lot of that, a lot of those changes to your recommendations. So I appreciate that with the social media, especially reaching out to understand that the senior community doesn't get onto the portals and everything else, so knowing that we've got to reach them in a different facet, as well as the Spanish-speaking community, as well as how do we reach out to them. So I appreciate the fact that you're going and looking at and vetting through all those different processes to make sure that the community stays engaged. As much as in a perfect world, we'd all love to see the community advocates stand up and pull themselves up and get out there and get involved, but we all know that that's not the case. And I think as a city, our job is to make sure that we continue to reach out and be transparent, be accessible. And I think you've outlined a lot of that in your recommendations, so I appreciate all the work that you've done. So thank you.
Just a couple of comments. Should the $50,000 be approved today? Is that to promote these newly-formed community forums solely?
I would have to say no. For instance, we're initiating a Reno.gov awareness campaign to help get people more comfortable and aware of our portal, and how the best way to interact with us is through that Reno.gov site. And if we can get people to interact with us there, we can do a better job of outreach and about coffee and comments and meetings that are coming up. It's really important that people start to trust us and give us their emails, because based on resources, that's the very best way that we can give you your door-knocking personal engagement. We just don't have the dollars to do direct mail or even paid advertising like we need to, so that we'll be looking at creative ways to use that $50,000, and it's going to go fast. But we need to make aware of the meeting times and locations for community forums for sure as part of it.
No, I was just going to say, because here's what I think is fabulous with regards to the work that your department has done in the last year. The new website is amazing. The new phone app is amazing. The Think Reno campaign was amazing. I think a lot of people don't know about them. And having spent some time in marketing of a statewide law firm, you have to admit and embrace the fact that sometimes you have to pay money to, you know, increase awareness. And I think that's why I asked about where the $50,000 was being directed, because I think we need to certainly invest a fair amount of that $50,000 in these wonderful tools that you have created and that we have available. I just think a lot of people don't know about them. And whether we get the message out about those and the things the city's doing in the senior spectrum, in Hispanic publications, in the Reno News &amp; Review, in the Reno Gazette Journal, at the news stations, particularly since we're kind of launching some of these great new things we have, we have to admit that there's dollars attached to those.
And, Mr. Mayor, that's exactly where I wanted to go as well. We've had $50,000 in the budget for the last couple of years, and it hasn't been working. I think that we need to step up to the plate. If indeed, in our planning session for the last several years, and in particular last year, we identified public outreach as being a priority of the city, we need to put some dollars behind it to let it work, to make it work. And I don't think $50,000 is adequate. I think that minimally, yeah, minimally, and I know that that's a challenge for the financial team, Mr. Manager. I understand that. But it is a priority, and $50,000 hasn't been working for us. I would suggest 75.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, just to sort of clarify what you're approving today, I just want to make it clear, you're not approving an allocation of an additional $50,000 today. I mean, this is the recommendation moving forward, that this $50,000 continue.
And I understand that. I just want you to hear it as you start beginning, and you will in the next week or two, you'll be beginning your budget process. I wanted you to hear that message.
And what I wanted to say is that the, obviously, once we get into the budget workshops and that sort of thing, I mean, that's where we can talk about the funding. And trust me, Deanna has been advocating for more funds, as have all of the departments. So she certainly has pushed cadence and myself to say, "Look, I need more money," exactly for the reasons that you've outlined. And it, for you, as the council, it becomes a balancing act of where do we prioritize the funds. So we will have those discussions once we get into the budget workshops.
Yeah. I just think investing the dollars upfront for these tools that will improve communication and reporting, and, you know, whether it be graffiti or abandoned cars or whatever, we need to look at also the cost savings on the other end of the promotion of these things with regards to staff time that won't be allocated because of, you know, some of these newer technologies. One of the suggestions, you know, we, as we come into these meetings, and for anybody who's not looked at what a council agenda on average kind of looks like, this is kind of what we get and what the public gets. And just like we do a post-meeting highlight of some of the hot items, we need to do a pre-meeting, pre-light with regards to what some of the upcoming items are, and maybe, you know, greatly reduced agenda items, and maybe links to more materials should the public like to read more about it. But when we just put this whole thing in its entirety out and say, "Click here," that's not effective.
You got it. We started doing it yesterday, pre-lights. I need to please also point out that it's not just me, it's Lisa Mann and Barbara DiCiano that have put a lot of work into this, so I just want to make sure that you know that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and from my standpoint, I mean, a lot of the comments have already been said, and I know staff has worked really hard on this and put together, brought forward a plan that I think everybody hopes is going to improve the processes that we have. But in the event it doesn't, I mean, this is just, I mean, it can be modified. I mean, if we get down the road a little bit and we figure it's not working the way we expect it to work, it can be modified. It can, we can change it, we can tweak it, we can do what we need to do. If we find out certain things are working better than others, we can start moving in that direction. So it's not, it's, I mean, we're trying to move in a different direction to where it's better for everybody, and if we have to, we can modify it. I mean, it's that easy. So, like I said, I think staff's done a great job, and I'm ready to move forward. Anyone want to make a motion to accept staff's recommendations?
So moved.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're on item F2. Mr. Mayor?
Can staff go first? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and Mr. City Manager. For the record, Kate Thomas with the Office of Management and Budget. Slightly out of order, but before you for consideration today is item F2, which entails an amendment to the existing agreement with ADP for benefit and payroll services to the city of Reno. Council approved the original agreement in April of 2012, and today's action seeks to extend the contract to December 2018 by four months and include an additional implementation cost of $172,541 to be amortized over the five-year period at 0% interest. As you're aware, it wasn't without challenges that we implemented this system, but we are continuing to work with ADP to improve the way we handle payroll under council's priority of delivering efficient and effective city services. I'm joined today by Mr. Ty Arland, he's a government executive from ADP, and we're here to answer any questions you might have or provide any additional subsequent information.
I'd like to. Fine, okay. First of all, I'd like to know, how many municipalities does ADP work with?
Sorry, hi, Ty Arland with ADP. We have about 1,500 municipalities that we work with. All in all, in the government space, we've got about 5,000 clients total.
Okay, so you, I would consider that you are an expert in working with municipalities, correct?
Well, I would say that ADP as an organization is an expert at providing payroll services and working within the space, sure.
So looking at this, how could you not know that you would come back and ask for $172,000?
Well, anytime you start a technology product, project, which we've done with the senior leadership team at the city, you spend countless hours on the front end doing due diligence, figuring out what the scope of the project is going to look like, what a lot of the needs are from a union's perspective, and what all the system needs are going to be across the enterprise. And then you put that into an implementation plan, and then, once you get into implementation, there are certain items that come, that can change, that can evolve. There's policies around the city that potentially could change, and generally, there's always going to be some type of, you know, modifications to what you initially did.
So is that in the contract somewhere? That there are going to be modifications? And Kate, were you told at the time that we could be actually spending more money? Because this was, this happened before this council got here, correct? When you approved?
The original agreement was approved, right, in 2012.
Right, so I guess my question is, were you aware that this could change, and then we would come back to the table and you'd ask us for more money?
I have been privy to several technology projects in the past, so having that experience under my belt, I knew that that scenario could exist. We worked very hard with ADP, though, through this process, to make sure that those changes were minimized, and we negotiated the rates for which we brought, I mean, you know, nobody wants to come back and say, "Hey, we had modifications to the contract." But the reality of it was that we had a complex business process that we were trying to build a solution for, and so we had some customizations that were necessary.
Now, is that in the contract somewhere, saying this might change the amount of money?
Yeah, there, I mean, most contracts have a clause that, you know, "For unforeseen circumstances or circumstances beyond the original scope of work, you know, there could be additional costs." And that's why we're here today, before you.
Okay, because typically, all the contracts that I've signed with my business, that wouldn't be acceptable. $172,000 is a lot of money. So, looking at this, also in here, you say you have a reduced rate. What's your regular rate? You've reduced it to $75? What's your regular rate?
Well, in the contract, the rate is $150 per hour. Over the course of the contract, we've worked extremely close with the leadership team at the city to work hand-in-hand at minimizing the changes, looking at procedures that could potentially change that could help the efficiencies within the city. And the partnership that we've created, you know, we're here today for the $172,000. There's also additional fees that ADP has absorbed over the course of the project. Manager Klinger's team has been very diligent in working with us to minimize these things, and they've been very due diligent in having us review all of the changes in order. And we've, ADP as a company, to be a good partner, we've absorbed a pretty good amount of fees, I can't disclose exactly what those are, but it's been well above what the change control that we're here to talk about is today.
I would say our finance team is stellar.
I would agree.
But however, I just am concerned, because you do work with a lot of municipalities, and you didn't know this, and since our team is so good, they typically know exactly to the dollar and the dime what they're going to spend, so.
Can I just follow up on one of her questions? Kate, you said that if the scope of work changes, or you modify the work, then that's where you see the additional fees, but we didn't, we didn't change the scope, did we?
So, no, we didn't change the scope. What happened was, when we began the process of implementation, there were issues that came up that were not highlighted during the original business process analysis.
And that's, my next question's going to be for him, because that's where my concern is. We're paying an additional $172,000 because you guys didn't do a good enough job doing your due diligence? Is that correct?
I wouldn't, I would say that we worked collectively to try to figure out what the scope is, and in the due diligence phase...
But you just said that you've got some 5,000 government contracts.
Correct.
So this isn't your first rodeo.
Correct.
So, you come in, you do your due diligence, and you come back to us with a number. I'm relying on your expertise, because you've got 5,000 government contracts, to come and give me a decent number. And now it's $172,000 more? I mean, that's just, that's not acceptable.
Okay, sir, I understand. No two projects are ever the same, right? We could never say your city is identical to another sister city somewhere around the way.
But, but do you get what I'm saying, is because you didn't do a good enough job in your due diligence, you're going to charge us $172,000? I mean, that's the way I see this, am I wrong?
No, I understand. I would say that the responsibility is a shared responsibility with the collaboration we've had with the city. And again, we've run into challenges that were, I would say, not necessarily from the finance groups. It wasn't, I don't want to put fault at anybody, but there were a lot of things that were unseen that came up, things within the collective bargaining agreements and procedures and policies and the way things are done. Those projects...
But wouldn't all that be part of your due diligence? I mean, wouldn't you, wouldn't you, I mean, if you're coming in and you've got a scope of work to do, you're going to come in and analyze all of that before you bring me a price back, right?
We analyze everything that we can, yes.
And I'm just going to add, another nuance is that we have a really limited staff to begin with, as you're aware. And so, you know, I'm not saying it was one person's fault or the other, but, you know, there were some things that were discovered that we were unaware of, quite frankly, about our process as we went through this. So, I mean, it was, it was a good exercise to have gone through from strengthening the way that we do business around payroll and administration. But, you know, I mean, we've worked really hard to move forward to say, "Okay, ADP and city of Reno, you know, yes, we could have done a better job out front, potentially analyzing all this, but, you know, we shared responsibility on both sides," I would have to say.
In your, I worked with ADP for many, many years, and I found the product, the final product, to be a very good one. We didn't experience at the law firm the problems, obviously, that we've experienced here, but my question is for you, at the front end with regards to the contract for this, have you written contracts in any of these other 1,500 municipalities where it was a set, like I said earlier, a not-to-exceed amount? And any overruns were absorbed by you? Were the, are those types of contracts something that you, ADP?
You know, generally, in a technology project like this, you know, our methodology of doing business is, we try to produce, not necessarily a not-to-exceed, but we try to do all the due diligence upfront so that we minimize that on the back end. You don't have to look very far to look at, you know, any ERP project that an organization goes through and understand what those overages oftentimes are. We do absolutely everything in our power to make sure that that doesn't happen. There are times when things come up, issues arise, that are shared responsibilities, and we do everything we can to partner with an organization to minimize that risk that you talk about. Some of the things that we're doing in partnership with the city is, we've got folks, we went live, what, I don't remember exactly the date, I think we've produced 10 or 11 payrolls.
We've produced 11.
11. And since then, typically, when we have a client that goes live, once that happens, our folks are no longer typically on-site for more than a couple of weeks, and then we service from afar. Since we've gone live, we've been here almost weekly, working together to continue to try to help with process improvements and make things better. So, and we don't, we aren't accepting or asking for the city to pay for any of those services in addition to what's been asked for, billed for, right, on the implementation side, so.
So are you saying that this percentage of overrun is a typical overrun?
It'd be, it'd be hard for me to answer that question. I mean, there's so many projects, and I'm only involved in a handful of few, right, within the government space.
Because I was going to ask if it's a typical thing, was it communicated at the outset, and why wasn't it just included in the...
Our general contract states that we will implement for a certain fee, the scope, and here's the rates. And if there are changes, if there are things that come up, there's a contracted rate that we have, which is $150 in the contract. We have not billed at that rate for the changes. We've tried to be good partners, and we've owned a big portion of that and tried to absorb that internally.
Where are we with all the changes? I mean, how is, what's the feedback on the system as of today?
So, we actually committed a payroll this morning, so that's good. We have done 10 so far. We are, we have the systems up and running, everybody's been receiving paychecks. We had a tickler list, or whatever you want to call it, for post-go-live issues that we've been working on. Robert and his team in payroll sat down with me, some other folks went through all the issues that we want to see finished to enhance the system as we know, to get to the product that we know that it can be. We met yesterday with a different team from ADP to see where we were on those things. 25 of the items on the list have already been checked off, so we're progressing. We have weekly meetings to make sure that we have a status report on where we will be, and we're pushing very hard, because we know that what we want to deliver for the citizens of Reno is an efficient and effective system, and we're not there yet. It is, you know, it's, heck, we were paper-based not that long ago, right? But, but we are still progressing, and we are, there are further efficiencies to be seen.
Okay, of the, how many items were on the punch list?
I think there are 24 left, I think, something around there. Some of them have a lot to do with reporting, and so you can, if you lump those together, that's 16 of the remaining issues have to do with the reporting and the way that we're generating some fairly custom reports, so.
Okay, so 50% of the, we'll call them the punch list items have been, have been completed, and 50% are still pending. Are we going to get billed for that remaining 50% on the punch list?
No.
Right?
No.
Unqualified? No.
Right.
Right, we're working through that with the leadership team right now to take those and take them off that punch list, if you will.
At the same level of service that you've been providing, even though you're not going to get paid anymore?
I would say at a higher level of service than we typically provide.
Thank you.
Oftentimes, we do those over the phone, we've been doing them in person, most of them, so we can get them taken care of.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Sure, you can.
You know, I accept the explanation of a shared responsibility, and I think just like there can be mission creepage, there can be scope creepage, and the lessons learned, I think, again, are that we have weaknesses in our procurement capacities, just like we learned on the parking meters. I also think that sometimes technology programs get upsold. I think that's been reported recently about the digitizing of medical records across the country. It's very problematic, and sometimes it's a panacea, you know, "Let's get technology." But sometimes internal efficiencies are sticking with triplicate forms, particularly for an agency that doesn't have a lot of, you know, resources to man up a technology program is a good approach. I want to talk specifically on the contract. Now, this Annex Z, which is a new term I've ever seen on a contract, is the rate schedule. There's a lot of different items going forward. Do we have a five-year projection of what that rate schedule will be?
At this time, we don't. We were trying to get through implementation, we can certainly pull that together. We do it for budgeting purposes, because we want to know what we're looking at into the future as far as our obligations with ADP.
Okay, so that was not projected out when, you know, before the...
We did it one year.
We did it one year?
Yeah.
Okay.
But there were certain pieces that we didn't end up implementing, and so that shifted. But yeah, that's an exercise we'll be going through.
Okay, well, you know, I wish we had it. And then the other thing is, on the upselling, is it was represented that we would attrition out two payroll clerks, maybe assign them to other duties or so, I recall in that last staff report. I also understand, now they're working harder than ever. So are they going to be attritioned out, and are we going to gain the efficiencies on that staffing as it was projected originally?
So we're not that far out of go-live, and yes, people are working very hard to come up to speed on the new system. They've done an incredible job on figuring out what the new system is about. It's a complete shift in the way that we've done payroll in the past, so I have to commend the efforts that they've put forth. We will see efficiencies, we will see gains and efficiencies with any position, as one becomes vacant, we'll decide whether or not it needs to be filled. But at this time, we're sort of, you know, holding the line as far as the staff that we've got because of the needs around the new system and some of the complexities.
Are those like O8 twos that can move over to public works when we have a vacancy there, or some, I mean, are they HR techs? I mean, what are they?
Well, I wouldn't want to render, I mean, we're talking about people's jobs here.
No, I understand, but, you know, say there's a retirement over to public works, are we going to be able to do that, or are we going to move them to other HR functions? What was the thinking with those two payroll clerks?
At the time, those two payroll clerks weren't going to be needed because of the automation of the system, so they were going to be put into different capacities. We had already worked that out before we came to council with the item.
And is that still the thinking?
Things have, things have changed in that regard, as far as who those individuals are and where they're working and where the system is right now, so.
Okay.
You know, we're going to take those on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, so we don't know. I guess the other question is the termination clause, and this is where I go back to the parking meter issue, is there's penalties and a, you know, thick paragraph about termination, and at what point you, you know, you terminate how much the payout is by the city, or either, I think it was by the city the payouts are. how much the payout is by the city, or either, I think it was by the city the payouts are. So, have we gone live in terms of, so we've, because in, in the parking meters, it was, well, that we've never accepted them. Well, so we've accepted them, so where are we at on the payment payout schedule? If we were to terminate today, where are we at on the payout schedule?
Well, I haven't calculated what our termination would be. That would-
Uh-huh.
That's up to council's purview to make that policy decision. But we are live, and so we're proceeding with the system as originally planned and approved by council in 2012. So, we're, we're moving forward with the system and the payments that are due as a result of the annex Z.
Okay, so we are live. We have accepted the program, even though we have a tickler of 16 items to go.
Right. When we go live, that was the, we had a gating point at that point, where the executive staff got together and said, are we ready, you know, are we gonna, are we gonna go for it? And we did. There were a lot of nuances around the year-end process and things that made it really critical that we go live when we did, to avoid further costs, to avoid further delay, you know, those sorts of issues.
Again, a procure, procurement issue. When you let your contractor write the contract and you don't specify these things out to your advantage, you know, so I, I don't know. I mean, if we do this 172,000, and we terminate in six months, are we hit with a big termination fee, whereas a termination fee today, we, you know, do you know a differential on that?
Again, I haven't looked in the termination clause recently to see where we were, because all hands on deck have been pushed and moving forward with the system that was approved.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I, I just want to add on to sort of the line of questioning that Councilwoman Brekis went on, and I think Mr. Dorch asked the same question in regards to the efficiencies. I, I think one of the things that, that we discovered as we went through this process is, it's pretty easy to put down on, on pen and paper where you think you're going to save efficiencies. And then as you go through the process, and as you learn more about how we process things, I think one of the things that, that we, as the leadership team, began to realize is that we are and continue to be woefully understaffed in our HR department, including in the payroll section. So, I think if you take an organization that has maybe adequate staffing, and, and then you put pen and paper and say, here's some efficiencies that we can get, you can probably get that. I think we started in a deficit. I think that's one of the things that we recognized as going through this, is that we actually were in a deficit to begin with. The system, in the end, will help us with that. Will we actually be able to attrition out those folks? I'm not sure that we will. I mean, I want council to understand that. I think at the end of the day, I don't know that we'll be able to attrition those out. Now, did it create efficiencies out in the departments where we had some payroll clerks, or not payroll clerks, but staff working on time sheets and that sort of thing? Yes, it did. But that staff is typically administrative staff that then takes on other duties.
And I, and I guess my frustration, though, is, I would have expected ADP to tell us that. I mean, I would have expected them upfront to say, you're not going to recognize these efficiencies because you're understaffed anyway. I mean, when they come in and do their analysis, and they take a look at our system and what we're doing, and how they're going to improve it for us, they should spell that out for us. They're the experts, right? That's why we brought them in.
Well, and that relates to the questions that I have and comments. You know, I'm, I'm very concerned that, we're talking about a 13% overage this time. And most contracts have built into them a 10% over or under. Was there ever any, was that built into this contract? Was there ever any consideration that you don't get the first 10, but we would potentially give you 3%? Because that's very standard operating procedure. So, that's one question. And the other is, I'm beginning to wonder if I recall the reason why we had comfort with ADP, and, first of all, we recognize we need to go, we need to be more efficient. We have very limited staff, and we do need to move to an automated system. I totally agree with that. None of our labor conditions changed from the time we initiated a contract with you and the time you began doing your work. Nothing changed. So, that's a concern for me, that you're saying it was just more complicated. I'm sorry. You should have identified that. But where my concern is, is we have relied on some of the efficiencies that the state has gained with some of its vendors and contracts. And maybe we're just not a big enough fish in that huge pond to get the same kinds of efficiencies. Maybe we shouldn't have so much confidence that if it worked for the state, it's going to work for us, because this one clearly, with the 13% overage, isn't, isn't doing what we anticipated it would do. Response?
But I, I think maybe we're talking, I'm trying to understand your line of questioning. I think we're maybe talking two separate things, right? You've got implementation, and then you've got ongoing service. From a service perspective, as Manager Klinger mentioned, out in the field, some of the efficiencies gained around paper time sheets, and th, those are the efficiencies that we expect an organization like yours to see. Whether it be an organization of, you know, 50 employees, or an organization of 50,000 employees, those same efficiencies, granted they're at scale, can still be gained and should still be realized, around time collection, around the administration of benefits, eliminating paper. Those are the efficiencies that we should be seeing. From an implementation perspective, it's a quite different, I mean, it's apples and oranges to some degree. You know, when we're implementing, we base our implementations on a timeframe and on the number of hours that it's going to take to put into, you know, go-live for an organization. So, it's, it's based on that timeframe, and then how that timeframe looks, how the project runs, the timing that it takes to do it, those are all alternatives that we, we have no control over, once the project starts.
Is that any different in any other contractual relationship that you have with any other client?
No, it's not.
Have you failed with other clients to this level?
I, I, I mean, again, I, we have a lot of implementations that are happening all the time. In, in my opinion, and what we're seeing in this project, along with many other projects, you know, they're within, I don't know if I would even say guidelines, per se, but when you're looking at a timeframe of when the project will go, I mean, it's, it's based on the speed of which the partnership that we've got together works. So, I mean, I don't know if I could say-
I'm not sure what that means.
Well, if, if we say a 39-week implementation, and it goes 52 weeks, there's many things that could influence how that implementation goes, right? So, I, I don't know if I could, I mean, your question is, did we fail? I, I would, I don't necessarily, I wouldn't say that we failed the implementation.
Mr. Mayor, if I can maybe clarify one of Councilwoman Zodra's questions, and I think it kind of goes to Councilwoman Brekis's question on the procurement process. And you, and you had mentioned, you know, maybe we're not in the same pool as the state. And I just want to be clear for the, the council, this was not a, a joiner to a state contract. There was a purchasing consortium, and I can't remember the name. Ms. Thomas knows it.
TCPEA.
Yeah, that we used the, the contract through them. So, there was a procurement process, but it wasn't through the, the state of Nevada.
The point I was trying to identify is, we've seen a couple of vendors that have been able to perform well for the state, that at our much lower level, they have not been able to perform. And so, we need to be cautious of that.
I have, I have one more question, actually, two. What does our contract say relative to, should we terminate? What does our contract say relative to ADP making, putting us back and making us whole? What, what are our options? Yeah. My, my, my concern is, okay, so we've got 50% of the things still remaining on the punch list. And I'm not trying to say that those 50 are of same importance. It just happens to be 50% of the, of the total number. And you say that, you know, you're working towards correcting all of these. What is the timeline? When do you believe, or can you tell us you will have corrected, or, or completed these remaining 24 items on the punch list?
As of our meeting yesterday, when we met with the ADP staff to go through what was necessary to progress further, they estimated, from, from the point where we would have a completely, completely implemented all of the things on the tick list, it could be anywhere from a couple of months to, she, she said upwards of a year, not past a year, but up to a year. We don't anticipate it would take anywhere near that long. I've sort of given myself and, and our team an internal timeline of, you know, this is all going to be way behind us in six months.
You, you are certainly hoping so. I know you've, you've been struggling with this for a long time. I guess, I guess my point was that, my concern is, where we are so far down the road with this right now is our physical and fiscal ability to even go back. And I just want to hear that from this point, and this $172,000 today, that we will not be writing another check to ADP.
Yeah, I absolutely can, I, I agree. I don't know what else I can say to articulate that. What we're talking about right now, this $172,000, is from the last six months of work, right? So, once we went live, and we're producing payroll for the city, there are other things I, I would call minor, that are reporting capabilities. There, there are things we're trying to work out that don't affect the, the majority of them don't affect, if any, the outcome of when we run a payroll.
More comfortable knowing if the buyout fee, which is mentioned in your staff report now, six months and a year, you know, what that cost is, to make this decision today. However, if the ma, the manager feels that we have the information, and it is his strong recommendation that we continue through, I am inclined to go with this at this point. However, if we want to postpone this for, you know, the next meeting to get a little more of this information that I feel would be helpful, I would do that, too. But, you know, I think we need to move along.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, if I may, it, it is my strong recommendation that council approve this. You know, I, I will say, though, however, I mean, obviously, I want council to be comfortable, so, with a, with a decision. So, if there is additional information that you would like us to bring back, I mean, we can certainly do that. I don't think it's going to, or I know it's not going to change our recommendation on moving forward with this. And I can promise you all here today, I will not bring an item back beyond what we're asking for today. It just will not happen.
May, may I address, one of the questions you had was around the annex Z, right?
Annex Z, yes.
The, the annex Z and how that price structure works, and is there scope creep or anything like that?
Yeah.
I'd like to just take a quick second to explain how that annex Z works, and the reason that we write it the way we do. So, when you look at that annex Z, and you look at the fees in scope, it's all a, you know, consider it a utility-style billing. It's pay for what you use, right? And the reason that we do that is so that our clients can be accountable for what they do, rather than guessing on what they should do. So, for example, let's say that garnishment processing, that's the easiest example, let's say that we anticipate you're going to have 50 processings of garnishments that we do, but in reality, you only have 10. I'm assuming you'd rather only be billed for the 10 rather than the 50. So, the way the annex Z is written is it's a pay-for-what-you-use type solution. So, each month, those fees are going to be billed at what they're actually used. Does that make sense?
Yes, but my, my question is, through this discovery process of the scope creepage, have you found that maybe the annex Z is going to hit a little harder than it was, than projected initially?
Right, right. No, the, the, the discovery phase deals with implementation.
Okay.
The service phase deals with the annex Z, right?
Okay.
So, they're two different things. And that's why I just wanted to clarify that for you, so that you understood that.
All right. I'd like to make a motion. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we do have public comment, I'm sorry. Mr. Lorton?
For the record, my name's Eddie Lorton, candidate for mayor next, or this year. And I spotted this problem three months ago. And then, I also want to let ADP know as well, they're supposed to be the experts, not, we're supposed to know. They're the experts. But not to mention, let's be perfectly clear, they got us on the hook for $1,165,000 here, and we're asking for another 172. What happened to, to the $237,000 we already spent with AeroTech that's not mentioned here today, trying to get this system up and running? So, let's be clear on the money spent that we keep forgetting to mention. And I would like to read that contract. I don't think they can just keep adding on, adding on, adding on. It's their job to know what they're supposed to do and the scope of the work. Me, myself, I don't even like this system. We're not going to save money in any way. All we're doing is paying money out right and left. In the end, once we figure in the 237,000, the $1,165,000, plus all the endless staff time that we've been working on this system for 18 months now, since it was implemented, it finally didn't get running till lately. And I've heard that one of the city attorney's paychecks was grossly wrong as well, and lots of people in the fire department's paychecks are wrong. So, my idea of live is for it to be a fully functioning thing, not just semi-working, and we'll piece it together as we go. And then all of a sudden, since I found the oversight, I might say, of the spending to AeroTech, which was 237 now, now we stopped that right away once I found it, okay? Then, since that happened, because, well, I, I have the payouts, and all of a sudden, since we brought it up last time, it stopped. But since, we paid out $108,000 to ADP now, all of a sudden, and we didn't pay them anything before, then it went live, we quit paying AeroTech, and now ADP's doing it. So, we paid them $108,000, the system's not even working yet, 18 months later, to the fullest of its capability. I see wasted money. I'd like to bail out of it, put the payroll clerks back to work, let them do payroll, because then, as it changes, the human factor's in to not have us put out hundreds of thousands of more dollars for them to implement something new that we're going to do to improve the system. And other people realize that are in business here, too. You can hire banks, do payroll all day long. Why should we, you know, pay for this system, put all this money in? I know we ended up buying another 144 computers or something, too. They say it doesn't have nothing to do with ADP, which was $150,000, but their processors weren't quick enough to run ADP. So, it could be tied in, couldn't. All I know in the end, we'll be at about a million and a half dollars trying to implement this system. I don't see where there's going to be any savings. I know we're trying to get this pounded down our throats, but I hope you know what misspending is. And I didn't like it in the beginning, and there was oversights, paying AeroTech. So, let's put the AeroTech money into the equation, too, that we already spent for 237,000. And if anyone has a question on it, when they try to deny it, everybody can call the city and ask what was paid out to AeroTech, and they'll let you know. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, normally, don't comment on public comments, but I think there are a couple of things in the, in there, just for the public record, that need to be cleaned up. AeroTech was, just so this council understands and the public understands, AeroTech was the project manager that we hired to, to manage this project. So, a completely separate contract, although related to ADP. That contract actually expired, and correct me if I get this wrong, Kate, that contract expired in August. We made the decision in August not to continue that. Did we still need a project manager on site? In reality, we did, but because of, you know, the delays and everything else, and we had spent, and what we had spent to date on that AeroTech contract, we made the decision that we would take over the responsibility for project management, and we did that. To the comment about, you know, putting the payroll clerks back to work, they are working. They have been working. They continue to work. They've done a fabulous job. They've put a lot of effort into making this system work. As far as the paycheck issues, and please, staff, correct me if I'm wrong, we did have some paycheck issues in the beginning, but as Kate said, we have ran 10 payrolls now, and the, the latest ones, and I see Mr. Chisel coming up. Mr. Chisel, if you want to come to the podium. My understanding is, we have not had issues with paychecks. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Robert Chisel, Director of Finance and Administration. The payroll clerks work for me, and I, I, they do a fabulous job above and beyond what anyone could ever imagine these people work. They do a tremendous job and work very hard, and they're very proud of what they do. And our pay, the pay of the employees, with 1,400 checks going out every two weeks, are there going to be errors here and there? Yes, there probably are onesy-twozey errors. But they have consistently provided accurate paychecks. There have been issues with accruals, but the paycheck and the pay for the employees has been timely and has not been interrupted. So, they have done a great job on that, so.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chastain, O.C.D. Attorney's Office. Before motions are made, I wanted to advise council of a procedural matter under NRS 350.087 relating to medium-term obligations. Such an obligation has to be passed by resolution by a two-thirds vote of your membership.
Thank you. All right, so I have a proposal. What's his name? What's his name?
ADP. Quit talking to him. Get up there.
So, I have a proposal for you.
Yes.
How much is our total contract?
Estimated.
It's estimated, okay.
Are you, are you talking implementation or service fees?
It's in the-
The whole kit and caboodle.
Okay.
How much?
It, it's, it's-
Okay, so it's one million?
Exactly, right.
All right. So, do you want us to cancel our contract?
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not, right? Okay. So, and this 172,000-
Okay, so, and this 172,000 is what, about 13% roughly, about 13%? So, how about if you incur the costs and not make the taxpayers incur the cost at 13%? I think that would be, I think that would be very generous for, for us to offer, considering where we've been at.
Right.
It's a very small amount compared to what we're going to pay you, and I just don't think the taxpayers should have to pay that.
Okay. I appreciate your comments. Unfortunately, I'm not
13% is not a lot to keep a good relationship going.
I agree. Unfortunately, I'm not in a position where I can offer that.
Oh, okay. So, wait, do you have the ability to approve that, yes or no?
No.
No?
No.
No, okay.
I do not.
So...
However, what I can approve, and I've spoken with Kate just before we came in here, I can approve a small reduction to 122,000 for a $50,000 reduction in the change request fees that we're talking about.
Okay, wait a minute, so now, we're going to go down $50,000, wait, so this is, this is, and, so, so, okay, wait, now I'm really confused.
Okay, the fees that we're talking about.
You're going to reduce it 50,000.
So, you're going to reduce it, so now, what's it going to be, 50,000? What's it going to be now?
122.
122.
So, you didn't walk in here today saying, oh, you could all
Why didn't you tell us that at the start?
Yeah, why didn't you walk in here today and tell us that you would offer us 122,000 instead? Now, that kind of really upsets me.
Okay. I offered, I offered that with Kate this morning when we were talking.
Well, that wasn't, yeah, it wasn't presented. I'm sorry, I just, I can't move forward with that.
Let me hear, you're offering what now?
A reduction in 50,000.
By 50,000?
And the one-time fees of the 172.
So, that still doesn't take us to the 3% that I was suggesting. It would be 116. Are you willing to take 116?
That's what, that's what I can do. I cannot authorize that right now.
Well, maybe we should get the person that can authorize that, because if they, if they care about the, what is it, 1 million? Do you know what the amount of the contract is?
The annual value of the contract roughly, and again, I'm putting numbers, roughly is about 700,000 annually, not, not including the implementation. I'm talking just the service fees.
Do you think your company would fuss over 4,000?
Do I think they would? No, but I am not authorized to do it, I have to ask.
I would approve 116.
How'd you come up with 116?
10% over/under, he's asking for 13, we'll pick up the, the difference.
I, I just have to say, this has become a negotiation at this table.
That's crazy.
And that I find maybe more offensive than the original overruns. That is not a way in which you get future clients, sir. I, I have real concern with that. Now, I'm not going to look a gift horse in the mouth and maybe an opportunity to put this thing to rest if this supposed offer, which we're negotiating, includes a guarantee of absolutely not a penny more without a reduction in your service.
I appreciate that, and it was not meant to be a negotiation. It was something that I had a conversation with this morning. I didn't know the exact appropriate time to bring it up. I apologize for that, it was not
Is your boss still at work? Do you have his cell phone number?
My boss is on the East Coast, I'm not quite sure exactly.
Well, call him and wake him up.
Okay.
Sir, it may be worth a phone call to you.
Okay.
Yeah, can we take a recess?
Well, we're going, we're going, we're going, we're not going to take a recess, we're going to postpone this, we're going to go on down the agenda. We're going to put this, we're going to table this for a minute.
I'd like to make a motion. Do not approve this, and especially considering what's gone on this afternoon here, because now, I really don't have any confidence in ADP, and I apologize for that.
It's okay.
However, I'd like to make a motion that we do not move forward with 172,000 on this contract, and like I said, you can call the decision maker and see if you'd like to save this relationship to 13% or something.
Okay.
Is there a second on that? Yes, go ahead.
No, what do you?
Well, he made, she made it, that she wanted to table it until he goes, makes an offer to eat 13, continues.
If he goes back and asks the decision maker on this
Yeah, I mean, I guess at this point, what, what maybe the best thing to do for counsel is to, to continue this item to the next meeting, is that, is that?
Mayor, we're talking about continuing until, until later in the agenda?
Well, we can continue it till the next meeting, or, yeah, I don't care if it's later today or the next meeting.
And I don't, I don't know, Todd, if you guys can get
I can certainly make a phone call.
Get a decision today, we can do that, otherwise
It, it sounds, though, as we have a couple of different people with different thoughts, so
Well, those thoughts could change based upon your phone call.
Okay, so, could you clarify with me exactly what you would like me?
I want you to She wants you to eat 172.
She has a different opinion than, right.
That we're not paying the 13%.
What are you willing to negotiate?
I think Councilwoman Zodra recommended a, recommended a 10%.
I think the taxpayers have to pay for that. It's their mistake.
Think you have enough direction.
No, he doesn't, Joe.
I know, I mean
And that will continue.
I guess, is it, is it the
And that will continue, and we can talk about this, as what you said.
Okay, ask for ADP to eat the entire fees, is what you're asking for.
Exactly.
Okay.
If only 13% can keep a good relationship.
Is that a changed motion, then?
No, it's not a motion.
Oh, okay. Well, there was a motion on the table, so we should probably
There was not a motion on the table. There was never a motion on the table. We're going to table this until a later hour. You go make some phone calls and see what you can do, and then come back, see us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have a few people that are waiting around here that have been sitting here all day and been very patient, and I'm going to move item J7 up on the agenda. As much as I love seeing them here, I will move item J7 up on the agenda.
I asked Kate, I said, why didn't you, was it that in the beginning? Right, I know, I know, I know. Right, that's what I asked you. That was the first time I heard that.
Take over, we're going to talk to a young man. Tell him to get his head out.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, Mr. Klinger, Steve Hardesty, City Regional Public Works. Item J7 is, the item is regarding the proposed assessment or expansion of the Police Special Assessment District, as well as a report on the subcommittee that you had directed count, or the staff to formulate back in May of 2013.
Yeah, I'm coming right up.
Before you is Chief Pitts, who's going to be one of the presenters, and also Par Tolles, who was elected as the chairman of the subcommittee, and they'll be speaking just a little bit. For you today is, is a report on the activities of the subcommittee that you requested back in the May of, of 2013, and also, we're here to get direction from you regarding the possible expansion of the downtown Police Special Assessment District. Par Tolles, the subcommittee chairman, is going to do his address right now, so, there you go.
Everybody left? Good afternoon. Excuse me for reading this testimony, there's a lot I don't want to miss, so I'm going to, I'm going to read it. My name is Par Tolles, I'm with Basin Street Properties, I'm on the Board of Directors of the Reno Alliance for Downtown, and Chairman of the Police Special Assessment District Task Force. Per your direction, our task force was instructed to evaluate the special police task district from all aspects, including the value, effectiveness, and cost. You requested that we return with our recommendation and implementation of a strategy going forward that would provide you with the realistic direction of the SAD's future, that may include its termination, continue the status quo, or find a new direction or modification to this subsidized portion of the law enforcement downtown. We had a diverse group with many opinions. For the first two meetings, we allowed ourselves to discuss macro and micro issues from homelessness to pub crawls, and dialogued and debated on the current status of our downtown and what we hope it will become. Although lengthy and at times confrontational, it was effective, and set a collaborative foundation on focusing on our objective of the future of this SAD. So, here are our findings and our recommendations. While many of us maintain our own security, we believe that the 14 officers that we support make a difference, and we want to continue to support them. We believe that a great city needs a great downtown, and that a big part of that is safety, security, and an active and visible police presence. We understand that the city's budget is constricted, and at this point, cannot afford to pay for these additional officers without jeopardizing existing critical needs. While we understand the city needs the help of the private sector, there will and should come a point where the additional subsidy is not needed, and the funding of this district should and will be reviewed by this task force on an annual basis. Although many of us don't cause the problems that need the police, we believe that a rising tide lifts all boats, and we are willing to continue contribution for the greater good. The lines of this district were drawn in the early 1990s, and that, and at that time, there were 18 more casinos, gaming revenues were flourishing, and property revenues were trending higher. Obviously, we are in a much different economic environment, and in addition, we now have 900 million, or, excuse me, $90 million of exempt properties, either nonprofit or government-owned in the SAD that are not contributing to this special benefit. The cost for the remaining stakeholders in the SAD has essentially become too burdensome, and for many, unaffordable. So, the choices were to defund the SAD, let the city deal with it in the budget, in a budget that can't afford it, or come up with another solution. It was clear from our meeting with Chief Pitts and his staff that we, that there has been crime displacement, and the downtown officers are fielding calls outside of the lines of the SAD. Or, in other words, there are many properties and people that are benefiting from these officers that are not contributing to the expense. Working with Steve Hardesty and Chief Pitts, we are recommending a modification and an expansion of the existing boundaries that will assist in the cost of the existing officers. While we are satisfied with the solution and the ability to share the cost, it is still expensive, and we were hoping for an added benefit that would add positive leverage to all the existing stakeholders and to those that will be brought into the district through the expansion. Chief Pitts resurrected an idea that we will go, that he will go into more detail on, of a volunteer force that would more than double the 14 officers that we currently have in place. Our continued contribution will pay for these 14 officers as well as the funds necessary to implement this program. The chief will explain that it is viable, it is effective, it is affordable, and we enthusiastically support of its implementation. In summary, we are proposing the expansion of the Police Special Assessment District, the continued funding of the current 14 officers, with the additional costs that would have gone to two additional officers to be used to assist in the volunteer team and other supportive police programs. Thank you for giving us this chance to be involved. We believe that by sharing the costs with a broader territory, we can continue to support what we feel is a critical and effective benefit to downtown. Thank you.
Okay, so, what we're going to do now is go through a slideshow, kind of give you a little bit of a background of what we're, what we've done and what we're moving forward to. Am I doing this thing right? Here we go. Subcommittee, there were six, we had six meetings since you directed us to have the committee put together. We've had really good attendance. Our first meeting, we had 17. We had a workshop up at UNR that lasted three hours, and we had 19 folks show up for that, and the final membership in the subcommittee ended up being 15. We feel, we felt that the largest, larger the group, the better, because we were going to get a lot of varied ideas and a lot of different input. We had residents, businesses, casinos, we're all there. We also invited and had attending people that were in the district, as well as those that are in the proposed expanded area. We kept it very, very informal as much as we possibly could. We followed, we followed the open meeting laws as best we could, but we actually didn't form our subcommittee until December 5th, and we elected our chairman and vice chairman, our vice chairman is Roberta Ross. The proposal before, before council today, with the expansion and the increase in the, in the value of the thing, was, was voted on by the committee on December 5th, and it was passed unanimously. Timeline, to get this thing done, we have no, there is no spare time. It was a short timeline when we started the subcommittee. To get to the point where we're at now, took everything we could to get it right here. But, today, with the direction to proceed, we'll start mailing the petitions out. Staff has been working on preparing letters and everything else up until this point for about the past three weeks. We will hold two public information meetings. They're tentatively scheduled right now for the 6th of February and the 20th of February. If you give us the direction to proceed today, then I will lock those dates in, and hopefully we'll be doing those right here at 6 o'clock in the evening on both those dates. Petition drive will end on the 28th of February. That'll provide us about a week to get the staff report in and the, and the ordinance that would need the changes, that would, that would have the changes required to implement the expansion. We also have to have notices out on that same day, because they have to be three, 20 days ahead of the public hearing date. So, we'll have plenty to keep busy between today and the 5th of March. We'll have the public hearing on the 26th. If it's adopt, or if it's approved by the council, then we'll come from the final adoption of the ordinance. Expanding the police district will be on the 16th. Notices of the public hearing for the budget public hearing will go out on the 18th, that's required by NRS. We'll have the public hearing on the budget to approve the police and maintenance SADs will be on the 13th of May. Deadline for approval of those is June 1st, and I have to have the rates to the county on the, no later than the 15th of June. So, it's a very, very, very tight timeline. This is the expansion map that we're looking at. The entire district is about 243, the entire expanded district, as proposed, is about 243 million dollars. That just about doubles the existing district. We're going to go from 1,016 in the existing to 1,833 properties. We will have to follow the 1025 rule, just as we did when we created the district, we have to follow that to do the expansion. That would require 183 signatures and about 60.7 million dollars in assessed value. One of the things that I wanted to do is the areas that we've identified, there's about 14 of them altogether. Area A, which runs along East 4, or West 4th Street, is located from Arlington Avenue to Washington. It has about 70 parcels in it, most of those are at the Bella Vista Towers condominium Area B is over Ralston Street, Divine Street, and it's on the south side of West, West 4th Street. There's about 25 parcels in that one. Area C is the area that would include the Arlington Towers, and also include the Greyhound Bus Station in that area. There's, counting the Arlington Towers, which I think has 192 parcels, there's 210 total parcels in that district. D would be the Aces Ballpark area, which is the center of increased activity of about seven, about seven months out of the year. E is the community, the shelters and everything up on Center Street, community assistance centers. F is a notch that was taken out, because those were all residential areas when the original district was created. So, up on Center Street, they just went into the back alley and took all those residential properties out. Area number one is the St. Mary's area, and all the medical buildings and stuff in that area. Area two is down in the south, business area, which would include Park Towers and in and around the courthouse buildings and all that stuff. Area three is up adjacent to Area three is up adjacent to the existing district on the east side. This area is where the Tassera Project would be going in. Area four is up at the top, and there's a transition area between the university and the city. One of the police grants that they put in, actually, the areas three, four, and one, a lot of the area that they put in for that grant is in that same area. So there's, there's an indication of a lot of problems in that area. Area five is, where in the heck did I put number five? Area five is adjacent to the area one, and that would be a continuation out to a legitimate barrier. It's right on the edge of the Saint Mary's area. So that would also fit into that same category and have the same kind of needs. Area six is in the bottom. What it does is it finishes up the block that the Bank of America building is on. For some reason, when they created the original district, they just cut the block in half to grab the bank. This would include the rest of that block, and also would include the Wild Orchid and Ponderosa Hotels, which have an increase in service calls for, for the police. Area seven is the area that would, that would have included the old City Hall area, Lake Mill Lodge, those areas, city center apartments. Those areas have had an increase in service, calls for service. Again, as Parr had mentioned, that there is a displacement, and so we're starting to see some of that happening in those areas. Then area eight is an area that's just across Fourth Street, on the north side of East Fourth Street, near the Community Assistance Center, which is mostly an industrial area, open space, and has a lot of, of problems because of the general nature of its location. Chart three B, you might wonder why I said three B, because we've been throwing these charts around at the subcommittee for quite a while, and I just stayed with the number so that nobody got confused. This is the proposal of, of, this is what the, the subcommittee came up with as far as a proposal. The two extra officer costs are in there. We're, we're figuring the cost of an officer at ninety-five thousand dollars apiece. So that would be sixteen office, the equivalent cost of sixteen officers, which is one million five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That would be the initial assessment for the expanded district. Current district right now is paying one point three two nine million, and their rate per million dol, or their rate is point zero zero nine zero nine six. That's nine thousand and ninety-six dollars per million dollars of assessed value. With the new expanded district, if it, if it works and it comes through, that rate'll go from nine zero nine six down to six two five four. The other thing that's, that is good about this is we can see that there is some stability in this now. Whereas before, we were jumping up fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, and thirty cents a year. With the larger district, we're now seeing that the, over the total, total of fifteen years, we're not even going up a full nickel in assessed values over that period of time. What else was I gonna say on this one? Two of the things, there's, there's way too many numbers on there. Believe me, I sleep, I see these things at night. Two of the things that we wanted to look at, the casino property assessed value adjustment, and the residential and other property assessed value adjustment on top. These, these are estimates of future values of downtown. With increased build-out downtown and some new investments and stuff like that, we're, we're anticipating that residential and other properties will increase in value, and that the possibility of casino properties continue to declining in assessed value. There's a formula that works that out, and we have a composite of one point five seven as far as the property value increases over time. We worked with the Small Business Development Center up at UNR, and over a twenty-year average, the CPI is two point one percent. So we've used that as a flat rate to adjust things on the CPI level, even though the last couple of years, we've had a one point eight that we've adjusted our, our numbers with. This is the same map that we had before with the different areas on it, but this is gonna give you an idea of some of the increases in call for service. You can start to see that there are some areas, you can see where the calls for service are based on area groupings, basically. The first, the yellow groups were the first groups that we tried to do the expansion with. It was a much small, smaller area. Area two was a second area that we kind of looked at, and then area three is the final. And you can see that there's an increase, actually, an overall decrease all the way along, but that's because the police are doing such a great job. But you can also see where the calls for service are expanding out, rather than staying in the middle. And that's it for me right now, and I'll call Chief Pitts.
Y'all getting tired of talking, or y'all wanna keep on? Never mind, go ahead.
And Evelyn Wood on this, sir. Honorable Mayor and Council Steve Pitts, on behalf of the Reno Police Department, and thanks for hanging in with us this evening. I, I wanna start out by thanking Parr and Steve and everybody that, that worked with the subcommittee. Of course, it was council's direction. Those things are usually tough to get started. We've done some of these things before, as Sharon remembers in the past, and, and they're not easy things to do. I also wanna thank them for their oversight and their recommendations, and then ultimately in their support of what we're proposing today. I'll spend just a couple of minutes placing, really, the bike team downtown into context, and what we're doing in the current quarter. And, and we, you know, Steve has mentioned it, I think Parr mentioned it initially in his presentation, this issue of displacement, and, and why we kinda went with this plan. When you look at the downtown enforcement team, I, I won't get into a lot of the history, but over the years since the nineties, they started out as that. They primarily did all enforcement, all right? And that's basically citations and arrests. They didn't really do a lot of community policing and problem-solving down there, and, and we got good returns on that investment. But over the years, what we've learned with that asset is that problem-oriented policing has been our greatest benchmark for making a difference. And, and just to kinda put it in perspective, we still do a lot of directed patrol. We do a lot of high visibility patrol with the bike team. But really, what I've asked them to do since two thousand nine and ten, when we reorganized the Reno Police Department, was really focus on hitting these underlying problems with crime and disorder and quality of life downtown. You've got two teams, sergeant on each, with six police officers, and their regular scheduled hours are listed there, but they frequently change their hours depending on these other operations that I'll share with you shortly, that they utilize to make a difference in the current quarter downtown. They have worked primarily, very strongly, with the tax district board, with Code Enforcement and Public Works, to change many of the environmental things downtown, and we believe, at least in policing, that, that environmental change through crime prevention and environmental design is the way to go with the vision for downtown, or really any neighborhood you're trying to make a difference. And so what these guys and gals do is spend a lot of time, not, not, you know, fifty percent of their time, but about ten percent of their time analyzing data, and then providing the best response or responses to deal with that. As you can see, just some focused operations by, by the bike team from two thousand eleven to current date, they've increased, and last year, we actually sort of narrowly focused them specifically on panhandling and drinking open container things downtown. These are the assets that this team has co-developed, and they have at their resource. I won't get into the summit in two thousand eleven, we've talked about that, but they have the community action officers that are assigned to that geography, and to the north side of our community, and to the south as it runs down to Mount Rose. We created the Community Safety and Service Team, CSAS. It involves public health, fire, Public Works, Code Enforcement, and I think this council will remember that two or three years ago, we used to go to certain bars downtown where we'd have a hundred and fifty, sometimes two hundred, calls for service a month. And the direction was, you know, Steve, you gotta fix this. And the creation of CSAS with the bike team, what they do is it's more proactive. They go out, they do some education, they do some preventative work with, with our partners downtown, and we've seen a big return on that investment. Kids to Senior Corner is, is an outreach program that the Reno Police Department created in the late nineties, and I won't bore you, but we service about sixty-two hundred seniors and kids a year through that program that are living in this quarter. The Help Program, about five hundred and eighty-nine. Crossroads is the former train program. Some of you that have been on council a little bit longer remember the train program that Honorable Judge Dorothy Nash Holmes helped us with. And really, that is that serial inebriate approach, and so what we did is worked directly with her court and serviced about one hundred people, and that's, and that's, that's correct. That's a four point five million dollar savings for the region. So when you take one of these one hundred people that are frequent flyers, let's say for law enforcement, or public safety, mental health, and you get them into nine eleven par, then they're moved on to another resource, and they get treatment through a local medical facility, I can go on and on and on. But the calculations from the work that Judge Holmes has done with this, with the new Crossroads program, is it saved about four point five million just in the last year. Most is a program that we work with, obviously, the state and locally, and we assist people that are mentally at risk, and, and they work a lot in the downtown quarter, and we've serviced and, and provided service to about eight hundred and fifty-two people there. We run a variety of undercover operations focused on narcotics, prostitution, and other things oriented around what may be going on in that season. We do a lot of undercover work before the, the special events, specifically oriented around certain things that would go on as visitors or undesirable visitors would come to town. And Mrs. Jordan had mentioned earlier, in a, in a previous council item, the, the whole issue of dealing with the juvenile innocence lost and the prostitution, and we have a team that's nationally recognized that does that work, really citywide, but, but downtown. We created Serge, and again, I'll pay attribution to Portraeus's work. I mean, Serge is, what you're doing is you're surging all of these assets into a certain geography, because you're looking for an outcome. You're not just looking at a means, what you're looking for is an outcome, and that's, at least in our business, is to improve safety, right? Obviously, there's service associated with that, and reduce calls for service and improve quality of life. The Foot Patrol Program and the Reserve Program, I, I wanna get into those in a little bit, a little detail. Parr had mentioned those in the budget last year. I had requested your permission to develop a volunteer reserve program, and I was informed yesterday that the scope of the program is done. We'll have a presentation next week, and we'll probably start recruiting. Obviously, there'll be backgrounds and hiring for that, and we're gonna shoot for about twenty volunteer reserves. But what we started, which will start actually, excuse me, this Thursday night, is I requested my patrol operations, those commanding officers, to develop a, a program that would lead this off, and that is a current foot patrol program in the quarter. And so we've developed a program that's gonna last about two months. We'll, we'll build it two months at a time and analyze it, and what, what my thoughts are, at least, or command's thoughts and operations, is, is those officers will be on foot, working in that, in, in that corridor downtown, primarily from Center to Sierra and Virginia Street, probably from the river north to Fifth. And I wanna just see high visibility, I want them interacting with businesses and visitors down there. And that program will kick off this Thursday night, and will run it Thursday, Friday, and Saturday for the next eight weeks, and that's where we'll bring in, excuse me, this volunteer program. So what we're kind of doing is preloading this foot program downtown of regular full-time police officers, and then bring in these other twenty volunteer reserves and plug them directly into that program. And we feel that if we measure it, I, I know sometimes we get criticized for overly analyzing things over there, but I'll, I'll tell you what, it, it comes in handy to have that kinda data available, so you can do a better job of serving. We're gonna analyze this current program over the next two months as we implement and, and kind of interface the volunteer program with the regular police officer foot program. Motel Interdiction, you're familiar with it. We've been doing it in the quarter and outside of the quarter for years. It's highly effective at displacing undesirable behaviors and, and persons of interest, and we'll continue to work, the bike team will continue to, to deploy those assets in the We conduct an annual survey. Last year's survey, we asked a series of questions with Andrew's permission. I think I shared it with you before, you know, some of those are risky. I mean, what's going on downtown? Can we do a better job? And, and you can take a look at the numbers. I mean, is downtown safe during the daytime? Oh, nine, eighty-eight percent. It's up just two percent in thirteen, and then oh, nine, thirty-nine, and fifty-three percent. I think Dick had mentioned it at one of the meetings, you know, fifty-three percent isn't good enough. You're right. We need to push that up. But I think as we evolve with this proposal, this recommendation to expand the district, what you'll see is the bike team will continue to be the nexus for driving all those other assets I shared with you into that area. And you look at the bottom, those are calls for service in the current tax district since two thousand and ten. Of course, we've lost some businesses down there, and you can see there's, you know, attribution to losing businesses and jobs and things like that in the calls for service. But when you analyze those, when our crime analysts take a look at those, forty percent of those interactions are the Reno Police Department getting out and talking to people, if it's in a neighborhood contact, but it's proactive. And that's what the bike team does, and they're very, very good at it. Added value, or what is the special value, which I guess is the legal term in the language for the, the proposal, is we think you will increase the debt team's operational capacity. Both Steve and Parr talked about displacement. When we're working hard in a certain geography, if it's the downtown current tax district, we will displace crime and problems in proximity but outside that region. And we think what you do, if you, if you approve this proposal, is that bike team will continue to grow and work on those problems that you kind of saw in Steve's slide that kind of framed the current district. We think that we can predict reductions in calls for service, as you've seen in the last slide. Crime and neighborhood problems. We'll expand our problem-solving and outreach efforts, and we think this vision, collective vision, if it's a Rad, if it's Reno PD, if it's the City Council, the City of Reno, to really build a strong economic footprint downtown, we think that will make a difference. It will assist, it'll be our part in that, and continue to build strong relationships and partnerships, and create this sense of ownership downtown. The urban lifestyle and the social value that we can create downtown is something we learned about in the summit in two thousand and eleven, and we've really focused on that at the Reno Police Department. And I would recommend that you support this proposal, and we're prepared to take any questions. Thank you.
Any questions of members of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment. I, I participated in all meetings but one, and I wanna say that I think this was a really good example of public involvement. It was frustrating at some points. We really had a wild gel as a group, or the group did, but I think it was very productive, and a lot of issues were uncovered. But we're moving into phase two, if we agree with this, because we're expanding, and some of those expansion areas, those folks weren't necessarily participants. Some of them got the win last year that they might be expanded, but, you know, we'll move into phase two, and staff, you did a great job too, both, both departments, and legal was involved too, so, so great. And I'm just very excited about the Foot Patrol, because that's how I feel physically safety, safe. When I go to other cities, the bikes are kinda whizzing by a little bit fast, and I'm, I'll be out this weekend looking for them, because I will be downtown and I will be saying hi to them. So, so great, and I'm, I'm very excited, and I think everyone.
They won't be there till next week.
Is it next week, Thursday night?
No, I'm only kidding.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to see the chief's face, you know? All right. Chair entertain the motion. Oh, oh, yes. Yes, I do. Is that right?
That's right. I'm Brynna Bowman.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you, City Council and Chief Pitts and Steve Hardesty for all you do. This is my first City Council meeting, and I have a whole new appreciation for what you do here. And I just wanna start by saying that last year, City Council acknowledged the disproportionate burden on residents of downtown, as well as the outdated boundary, boundary lines. And most residents do not feel they should be financially responsible for the increase in police force, as we do not have liquor licenses, nor do we entertain large public crowds. We do, also do not generate eighteen percent of the call volume, or close to the percentage, I forget where we're at now, of the, the assessment, that is our share. The casino's declining revenue was taken into account, but perhaps not the residents' income. This assessment equals approximately one percent of my income, so if you think about a hundred thousand dollars of income, which isn't what I make, but if someone did, that would be a thousand dollars to the city for the special assessment for both the police. for both the police and the maintenance. So put in those terms, I think it changes things a little bit. Residents do make for safer areas. We're eyes on the streets. We have year-round support for the businesses. We're also driving less, so road maintenance is less. All that being said, the original assessment was, the assessment district was created before residents lived downtown and were, so we could live downtown. And we're very grateful and impressed with the way the City Council and the police force has stepped up and really cleaned up the streets to make it more livable and enjoyable. So I think this expanded district is just a great way to spread the burden, especially off of residents. And I really like the way that residents in casinos and small business owners have worked together to come to some solutions instead of just, you know, trying to nickel and dime against each other. But I really want you to keep in mind going forward what an impact this has on residents. And not only that, how difficult it is to be involved and to come here. This is my fourth time here today. I have to pop out and take care of my life, and I took the whole day off my job so I could be here. And it makes it a little more difficult, too, if the agenda isn't followed, and some things are timed and some things aren't. So I have a friend watching from home so he can tell me when I'm out doing things and I need to run back. So I really appreciate that, and thank you so much for listening.
Yeah, we should get to where we don't take things out of order, but you know what the hell. I got to keep Par here to listen the whole day, so it was a lot of fun for me. All right, now we're back to the table. Motion? Huh? I don't have any other public comment. You gave me three cards. Roberta Ross doesn't get to speak. So what else, who else you want?
Eddie Lorton.
Eddie Lorton wants to speak? Go ahead, Eddie. TV time, Eddie.
You get more than I do.
I'm not running.
I know, you've been there for twelve years.
That's right.
My name's Eddie Lorton, running for mayor this year. And I ended up also, I wanted to let them know, it's not just businesses for the call of service, it's the homeless shelter. That's a big brunt of the calls of service. But I believe in, I see them there a lot, but I believe in the special assessment districts where before there was one little flaw that I seen in it. Mr. Pitts does a great job for businesses and property owners downtown. Where I have a property in this district, I don't mind paying more, that's fine. But the thing is, one of the flaws I seen was a lot of them could see which hours they wanted, and I didn't see as many people down there at night. I've seen a lot of them, sometimes I'd see all these extra people. On Sunday, you drive down Fourth Street, you see twenty different cop cars when I think they're more needed at night. So if we do this special assessment, a lot of the crime happens at night. So to make people feel safer, I hope that if, you know, this one property that I have, if it's included in that district, I don't mind paying more. But I hope that we can have more of these people on nights instead of just more on the daytime because that's where it's more needed, is at night. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve Staff's recommendation. I just want to thank the group that, I mean, worked hard on this and put a lot of time in. I think you guys did a great job, so thank you.
Thank you all very much. I have a second.
Second.
I got to thank you all very, very much for what you've done. This is great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Now we're going to go back to item F-2-1.
F-2-1.
I'm trying to figure out, wait. I'm with that lady, wait. I'm going to run herd on these, moving these things around next time. F-2-1, yes, sir. Identify yourself for the record, and let's get after it.
Ty Arland with ADP.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Cashill, I made a phone call, and I was authorized to take half the fees away.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that very much. That's a good step in the right direction.
So that's a total of?
Eighty-six.
Deputy City Attorney Ann Wilkinson. Based on my rough math, adding what the reduction has been to the previously approved implementation cost, the new total would be one million, two-hundred-and-fifty-one, three-hundred-and-six and fifty cents.
And what's the addition?
Yeah, the one-seventy-two.
Eighty-six thousand.
The one-seventy-two was reduced to eighty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy dollars and fifty cents. Thank you. So if the council does move forward to accept what Mr. Arland has put on the table, I would ask that the motion also include an opportunity for us to add language to the amendment to set the implementation cost at that not-to-exceed amount.
Thank you very much. Chair, entertain the motion.
Motion.
Have motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second.
Mr. Mayor.
The motion is to approve the eighty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-one, right?
Yes.
Eighty-six, two-seventy-one?
Yes.
No, two-seventy.
Two-seventy. Eighty-six, two-seventy, fifty. Eighty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy, fifty cents.
Mr. Mayor, as part of that motion, include direction to legal to include additional language into the agreement, please.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to ask, the motion, or if that was to ask, have that not-to-exceed numbers?
Yes, yes.
All right. Now I have a second, everything, any discussion? All in favor? Whoops. Discussion?
I just wanted to know.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Oh, did you? Okay. So it's six-one. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Do you need the resolution?
Yes.
Resolution, resolution number seven-nine-three-zero. Resolution authorizing a medium-term obligation in an amount of up to one million, three-hundred-and-thirty-seven, five-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand for the master services agreement and services and service amendment with regard to financing implementation costs with Automatic Data Processing, Inc., related to payroll services and related products, directing the officers of the city to forward materials for the Department of Taxation of the State of Nevada and providing certain details in connection therewith. Mr. Mayor, as part of this resolution, it should have the amended agreement, as you already indicated. And this is an up-to amount. It doesn't have to be utilized in full, so I don't know if Ms. Olson is here. Does she want that amended?
Here she comes.
For the record, Jill Olson, Finance. It does not need to be amended because it states it's up to that amount. And I will clarify in the packet to taxation what the actual amount is that was approved, including the copy of the minutes.
But do we want the up-to amount to be, I mean, that'll look like we're approving up to one-three-three-seven.
But it can be a lower number. When I submit the taxation packet, I have to attach an excerpt of the minutes of the meeting, so they will see clearly that it's the lower amount. And I'll make sure I indicate that in the cover letter.
But can't we just put it in here, or not?
Oh, you can. Either way.
Go ahead, Mr. George.
There's no harm in not doing it.
So what is that number again? One, one, two, five?
One million, two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, three-hundred-and-six dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, so amended to have that in there?
Yes, the title of the resolution on the amount of one-three-three-seven, five-seven-seven is amended lower, which is not material for the record, to one million, two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, three-hundred-and-six dollars and fifty cents.
With that change, I'll move to adopt.
Have motion, do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Show the votes, six-one. Do you oppose? Did you oppose?
I opposed.
Okay, she opposed, six-one. All right. Now we will go to ordinance adoption, item G-1.
Excuse me. Ordinance number sixty-three-twelve. Ordinance amending the Reno Municipal Code Title Four, entitled Business License Code, Chapter four-point-oh-four, entitled In General, Adding a New Section, four-point-oh-four, point-oh-six-five, entitled Stay on the Acceptance of Business License Applications Related to Medical Marijuana Establishments Operating Within the Corporate Limits of the City and Other Matters of Property Relating There Too.
Those that oppose, no.
No.
Whoops, it should be five-one. Four-one, one, two, three, four, five, four-one. All right, item G-2.
Which is ordinance number six-three-one-three. Ordinance amending the Reno Municipal Code Title Twelve, Public Works and Utilities by Amending Chapter twelve-point-two-zero Sidewalk, curb, and gutter or trail reconstruction. Clarify the provisions as to timing and notice together with other matters of property relating thereto.
Motion, second? A second? All in favor, say aye.
Right.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ordinance introduction.
Which is I-one, which is Bill Number six-eight-eight-two. Ordinance to amend Title Six, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter six-point-oh-six, entitled Rules of the Road, and Providing Other Matters of Property Relating There Too.
I have a question for staff on this.
Hi, for the record, Kurt Dietrich, Associate Civil Engineer.
Hi. Why are we doing this?
Susan Barroth, Deputy City Attorney. When Public Works was, specifically Kurt Dietrich went in to find an ordinance to cite to a citizen, he discovered that the ordinance was no longer there. For some reason, there was a huge codes change in this Title Six that inadvertently deleted important items that traffic engineering needs, and thus, that's the reason, to put them back in because they should not have been deleted.
Well, it seems like maybe, it says back in November seventh, before the new council set, whether there are changes made to it? And is that, I mean, have we, have we thought about these set of ordinances recently? Or are they just, you know, ones that we've been powering along through for a long time, and they're just hanging out? We're just putting them back in?
The, I can comment on the one, Susan Barroth, Deputy City Attorney. The alternative few vehicles was mandated by state law, and we diligently pursued to have that timely implemented back in the last legislative session. And by that, I mean 2011. So that was clearly new direction. I can let traffic engineering speak to the rest.
Yeah, there was actually a few traffic laws that we tried to enforce essentially, but were not there. One of them was obstructions at intersections, for instance, clear zones. So we had some difficulty enforcing vegetation issues for clear zones at intersection. Another one was restrictions as to speed. For instance, in neighborhood streets in the city of Reno, typically, they're not signed twenty-five miles an hour, but we have actually a city code that states that all streets, unless otherwise posted, is twenty-five. So, so we had some issues enforcing that as well.
Okay. I guess, you know, I know your work program's a little tied up, like everything else, but, you know, there's some things in here that, you know, it is indeed illegal to ride a skateboard. We have some consumer thing where we tell people, they buy a motorcycle, something. That's a little odd. Is that an NRS requirement?
Oh, let's see. I think relating to the motorcycle, I think that's something we didn't add, but that was something that's already in place.
It's just been hanging in there? It seems like an odd, if you sell a motorcycle, you have to tell them they are at risk.
Let's see. I think that particular one is the mini motorcycles.
Yeah, a mini motor.
Way back when. Yeah, when they were popular.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, there's some things, one thing in particular I see is about crosswalks. And, and this comes up because there's been a number of recent crosswalk requests. I had one, Mrs. Penrod had one, I think you've had one. And it says in here, the city engineer can designate the crosswalks, but when they come back denied as requests, it says it doesn't meet our criteria. And I like, well, what is your criteria? And maybe the City Council should establish the criteria for crosswalk installation. If, if we're saying that, you know, we don't know what the criteria is, and maybe we'd like to, to give some thought to that.
Gotcha. Let's see, for crosswalks, there's some guidance in the MUTCD that states that an engineering study should be done if it's away from actually stop control. However, it doesn't really give specific direction on what the engineering study actually, what's in place. So in the Sigarino Design Manual, there are certain policies to establish a crosswalk, like minimum pedestrians per hour. So that would be at council's discretion for that policy.
Is that something maybe we've just been having in there since forever? And now that so many communities want to be walkable and see that being walkable and encouraging walkability is so important and, you know, contributes to economic vitality, that maybe other communities are taking other looks at the criteria for putting in crosswalks?
Yeah, Steve Benell, City Traffic Engineer, Public Works. Typically, when we look at crosswalks, we will put them in if it makes sense. There's no safety problem with putting them in. Typically, we'll look at the amount of pedestrians that cross. But we follow this engineering, basic engineering guidelines in the manual on uniform traffic control devices, but we don't have to follow those exactly.
Okay.
You know, we can use some discretion when we put the crosswalks in.
Okay.
If it's council's decision to put in a crosswalk at a location, we will. If it makes sense, it's not a safety issue.
Okay, and that discretion.
You always have. I'm there to administer.
Well, that discretion, we're not using that discretion to deny crosswalks because, you know, we got to paint them, and our weather beats up the paint, and, you know, we don't have a lot of paint budget. It's not that, right?
Right, no. It is not that.
Okay. Well, maybe for, if we go ahead with the introduction, maybe for adoption, you can let us know what criteria we're using, and if maybe there's some approaches that are being thought of, and how to exercise that discretion more favorable, if that's the trend in cities, to promote walkability in crosswalks. Because I hear crosswalk requests a lot, particularly now that these walking school buses are popular. I do have a question. Thank you for bringing that up, Jenny. So, so tell me, there's not a, a traffic count requirement to put a crosswalk in?
You can look at the number of pedestrians that cross at a location.
But it's the number of pedestrians?
But that, but that can vary.
Okay.
You really, you need to look at, if you want to funnel pedestrians to this one location, all of them vary. There's no one set number that you would use. We did, we did have a policy where we would say, you need a minimum of twenty pedestrians in an hour, but we don't necessarily have to follow that.
Okay.
We can use our discretion whether we need to put in a.
Okay, and the reason I ask it is I think, I move forward, and if Bubba's here, maybe she can help elaborate on this, with regards to a crosswalk up in my ward where a senior community lives on West Seventh Street, and they, they, it's not a long distance, but I'm sure for a senior particularly, who might have some mobility issues to travel down to where the light is to cross over to the shopping center. And I had requested, because the neighbors had requested a crosswalk be put in so they could have a more direct access, and I thought I got a no because the counts weren't right.
No, I think that location, I do, I'm familiar with it. It's a little dangerous because of the high speeds and the curve. And we didn't want them to cross there because it was dangerous. We felt it was going to be unsafe.
But I guess my, my comment is, they're apparently, and if I'm not mistaken, I believe someone was killed there before I was on the council, I believe it was a couple of years ago, but they're crossing there anyway.
I don't think it was at that exact location.
Okay. The feedback I get was that they were crossing there already because of their mobility issues and their age and the whole thing, and so, because it was.
For Keystone, you better put up a traffic, I mean, flashing lights to let them know because Keystone and Seventh Street over in that area, they really fly.
And I don't disagree with that at all. I just, maybe I got misinformation. I thought there had to be a certain count or something to trigger it, so.
All right.
Move to refer.
Move to refer.
Have motion, second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Parking fine increase. Have motion, second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. I-2-2. Ordinance introduction.
Which is ordinance number six-eight-eight-three, and it is ordinance to amend Title Six, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter six-point-three-zero, entitled Parking Violation, Civil Infraction, Civil Infraction, Section six point three zero point six two zero entitled Schedule of Civil Fines and Providing Other Matters Properly Relating There Too.
Move to refer.
Have motion second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. We go now to Adam J. Two.
Aye.
Come on, come on. Adam J. Two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Fred Turner, Community Development Director. Before you is an update to the city council regarding legislative items that have been approved that impact the Community Development Department. There are nine items that will be brought forward in the next couple of months before the city council making changes, various changes to, to land use descriptions, a standardization of school zoning for AB eighty-seven that we're working with the jurisdictions to standardize common development standards for the school district, craft distilleries, medical marijuana. Right now, we have a stay that has been approved by city council or working on, on an ordinance as the federal or state regulations come out that articulate how we need to work locally. Also, for utility corridors, we have a model ordinance that has come out that currently, it's, it's in the ordinance that we have to adopt, a model ordinance for utility corridors, group home distance requirements, and also revisions to our special assessment areas for code enforcement for abatement and nuisances, and also the corresponding business license changes for craft distilleries and medical marijuana. The thing, the item I wanted to emphasize is that even though that some of these bills are effective today, if someone comes in today, we will refer to what's in state law. Even though it's not in our, our ordinance, we will address what's in state law. We're going before the Planning Commission on February fifth to give them our, our work plan regarding the updates to these text amendments, and subsequent from that meeting, we'll be coming to the city council over the next couple of months with amendments to various ordinances in our business license, code enforcement, and planning sections. And at this time, I'm available for any questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You know, I wish if people in the legislature were so focused on zoning, they, you know, run and seat on local governing bodies where they can have a zoning ordinance to administer and, and not do zoning up at the state statutes, with state statutes. But having said that, nine is a lot. I don't think I've seen a session come out with nine. I didn't realize there were that many. Um, you know, we have so many issues in our zoning ordinance that we have not had the time or put the money into, to do, and, and we need such a comprehensive rework. Do you think some of these nine can maybe be shortened in by three or four with the provision that gives the administrator the ability to classify similar uses? Have you looked into that? Like in similar uses and just let them run and not have to do all nine? Because that's going to take a lot of work.
Thank you, through the mayor. Our mantra is where we can keep it simple, we want to keep it simple, so if there is a like use out there, we're going to just make that interpretation that's a like use. But some of these items, because like the school zoning, we're going to have to change our ordinance to reflect more of a region development standards for schools.
Yeah.
And again, they have to be flexible enough because what's built in unincorporated Washoe County may be different than a school built in downtown Reno.
Yeah, well, I sat through the bond committee for the school district, you know, last week, and, you know, they're not seeing a school being built in the next five years, so maybe that can be number nine that you work on? I don't, I don't know.
We're actually under some legislative timeframes on this, so we did hear from the school district that they don't anticipate anything over the next ten years, but it's in NRS, some legislative timeframe, so we're moving at that speed.
Move to first, Spencer.
Have motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Adam J. Three.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Linda Wildman. I'm with the Housing and Neighborhood Development Division of Community Development, but I'm here today to talk to you about the Washoe County Home Consortium. And I had a quick question for you. I have a presentation that'll take a few minutes, or I can cut a little bit shorter for you if you'd like and get to the scheduling part.
Why don't you get to the scheduling part?
Okay. I thought that one might be it. The Washoe County.
We appreciate your report, but.
Well, what I can do for you, if you'd like, I'd be glad to do a memo to you and give you the information on the consortium that I was going to cover. Basically, I was going to tell you who's on the consortium, what the consortium is, different things like that, but I think that that can come to you in a memo. I did want to let you know that at this present time, the consortium is in the midst of what we call a funding round, and that's the round that we do that allocates the funds that we receive from HUD each year. At the present time, we have one application for these funds this year. We put out an RFP in October, October first, and we received back one application in December. Next week, on the twenty-first, we have our first public hearing, and this project is one that is, will be located on North Virginia. It's across from the university, and my understanding is it's, I think it's forty-five units of rental property that will be for, I'd say, small families because it's more like one-bedroom type of units there. So we'll be doing that public hearing. After the public hearing, there will be another public hearing in February and another one in March. We're required to do three so that people have an opportunity to come and hear about the project. Once it goes through those three public hearings, it'll go to the directors, who are made up of the three managers from Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County. They review the application, and then it goes to the Regional Planning Governing Board after that. So some of you have been familiar with this, some of you've gone through these processes before with us, some of you have not, and that's one reason I'll make sure that you get the information on the home program. One of the things I did want to mention during this process is that the city of Reno, I used the term lost their member on the TRC, which is our Technical Review Committee, but I found that that meant something other to, of some people when I said lost. Actually, she had to resign because she's moving. So I'm looking to council, to anyone who may have someone that they'd like to see placed on the Technical Review Committee, and I can give you information on what that entails and all of that. So we are looking for applicants for that position. Our hope is that the project that comes forward this time, we feel like it's going to be a good one. It'll be for people who are at or below forty percent, excuse me, of the area median income, which is one of our priorities. So we think that it'll be beneficial to that area. We don't have anything up near the university on Virginia Street, so we're looking forward to doing that. The final allocation will be in April, and that's done again by the Regional Planning Governing Board, and these funds, and we just found out yesterday that our funds aren't being cut, they're pretty much straight across the board that we've been seeing for the past couple of years, so that's good news. And they will be available for use sometime after July or August of this year. So I'll take any questions if you have for the home program.
Well, I, Mayor, I just, I just want to, this is so important to me. I, I worked in affordable housing before coming onto the council. That was one of the areas I focused on most recently, and I've become familiar with the processes, and, you know, the need is so great. We have so much need for affordable housing in our community, and the resources are primarily federal, and, and they have declined over time. And so, you know, how do you prioritize? And there's been a lot of work regionally to prioritize and good progress over the years, but it really is going to the very low and moderate income, and also complementing the housing with services. And so that puts a big burden on these projects to pencil out. And so with that, I think that we have good priorities in place. I particularly support the very low LMI ones and the ones for folks coming from homelessness. We have put so much effort at this city on homeless, the CAC, but we need to, we need to round that effort out a little bit. And so what I, I want to see very much, and I don't know if this is a, I think this is a post-homeless pro, program that the Churb is doing up on North Virginia.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So, but we need to also work very hard and focus in that area. So I think the chief was actually talking about a, a program that Washoe County runs, the Crossroads. It's not used home funds, but it uses their welfare money, and you, and it's some of these serial inebriates, folks who are downtown, a lot of substance abuse. But I think we need to think about partnerships with the county as the social services provider on what they can bring to the table, and the housing authority. It may be that to hit the goals that we've set, we need the housing authority to step up to vouchers so that it's a layered subsidy, because they have vouchers and they have been off on their side, and it may be that we need to get the projects we want, that we either get another subsidy included in these projects. So I would ask that maybe we direct staff to have conversations over the next year, for the next round, to work on the priorities that are established, but also see if we can work with the housing authority or the county to bring in other layering subsidies to make these projects what we've, we've set forward. So that's kind of my.
Okay, we were just talking that your request and things can be put into our action plan.
Oh, yes, and we are working on.
We can do that.
Okay.
And to, to let you know, we do work with the Reno Housing Authority. They work with some of our NSP funds to purchase houses and to rehab them, and actually, you know, have low-income people in those. We've been, if you've had a chance, and I appreciate it, when council comes out to see the new projects, we just opened one on Moran, and that project's full now. I mean, it took two weeks and we've got a full project. We just opened one in Aspen Village that's in Sparks. That one is renting up quickly. So you're going to see over the next few months, new projects opening up very quickly, and they fill up in the minute we get them open.
Okay.
And we're proud of them, and we appreciate it.
Okay.
And if any of you'd like to come, do a tour of any of the projects, let me know, and we'll gladly take you through them.
Thank you.
We do have several. There are a couple of foundations right now that are looking at building some transitional housing, and they will be coming to visit with you because they are looking, because of the homeless problem, they're looking for transitional housing once we can graduate them.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you.
Adam J. Six.
Did we do J. Five?
No, we didn't do J. Five. What is he doing to me? You didn't do.
The bonds, the bonds, yeah. Strategic.
We have to get a verbal refer on that, or can I just move to accept?
Move to accept.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yeah. J. Six, that's one of your better presentations, Mr. Chisler.
I'm getting better.
You're getting better, very good.
Same on J. Six. You want your.
But give me the motion. Have motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, don't count. This meeting, that goes. Update presentation discussion of the newly updated Reno.gov set. Why don't we have that? That's a great presentation. How long are you going to take?
Three minutes? Would you like us to continue it, though? We would, we would be happy to do either.
I think this would be a great presentation at.
The next meeting?
Yep. Or at our strategic planning.
Okay.
At, when you come back to tell us that there has been more dollars dedicated to promoting the website and the app and the, Andrew.
Boss.
Let's, why don't we do that? Thank you very much. That's a very good presentation. Adam J. Ten, resolution, adopting revised special events policy.
Resolution number seven nine three one, resolution adopting the revised special event sponsorship policy.
Second.
I do have a little comment on this.
Oh, sorry. You know, when we adopted our strategic plan, we talked about, we love, want to support our special events, and then we put a tag on, and our revitalizing business districts. And I somehow want to see that value expressed in our special events, and what I'm going from is, I talk to merchants in our different merchant districts, and, and they may not be a sponsor of a special event, but they have something that they want, and it may not be even a formal group. They have an idea, and they want to be eligible for some participation. They're here twenty-four seven with their doors, oh, not twenty-four seven, but they're here three hundred and fifty-sixty a year with their doors open doing business. And for, I'll give you an example, the revitalizing Riverside Drive, there's a merchant there who says, hey, we, we'd like to see Christmas lights along Riverside Drive, you know, for a month to bring people down to our area and, and, you know, bring attention to our area. How could they be eligible for a special event sponsorship if it's just a small group of merchants or the Wells Avenue neighborhood when they want to hold up, you know, with some events? Are they eligible, eligible for special events?
Not under the current policy if it's adopted today, or the, the policy that stands today and the current policy that I'm hoping council will approve today, it's in-kind funds. So it's if you, we require that you have city funds for either a street closure for public works or police services for public safety. We add those additional requirements on your permit, and, and then if you ask for in-kind funding, then we look to see if you meet our qualifications through the new policy.
Okay, well, you know, I would submit to the council, and maybe we don't have to do it this year, but I think we put in the expectation to our business districts that they should be eligible for special events. I mean, when people, special events seems to be very oriented towards our tourism industry, but, you know, the vibrant economies are those where the locals have a lot of opportunity, and the locals have opportunity and, and great year-round efforts in, in revitalize business districts, and it helps, you know, the whole economy to make these districts attractive where people want to go, and then tourists want to go where the residents go. So, I don't know, you know, I'm not on the policy group, but I, this is something I'm starting to hear.
Why don't y'all look at that?
Well, under the current policy, I just want, or the policy that we're, that's before council today, we actually do have categories for the small events that you're talking about, legacy events, which are the big ones that you're talking about that bring tourism, that's obviously in there, but new events, community events, and nonprofit events are also looked at in the policy. So we're really hoping to span all of those, those community events where they are for the small business and they're not necessarily looking for tourism.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor, I, I would add to that, yeah, because we really have been working on this for, oh, golly, three years pretty intently at least.
Why don't y'all?
At least. And, and we really did finally agree that no matter what the plea, it is not a cash donation any longer. It is strictly in-kind, so it's the road barriers and.
Generally only a percentage.
And police care services and, and that type of, of city activity, not cash. I think if we looked at, at cash, that would just open up the barrel all over again to the events who've finally just begun to appreciate that we can't do cash. And we did, as, as Alexis identified, we added a new category this year, and we've put a lot of, I've met with her in Cadence several times trying to get this one, that it really does take care of the ones that don't fit anywhere else, but they still need some assistance. Yeah, and I can understand that, but, you know, some, sometimes it's time for new, new approaches and, and new strategies, and I think you see a lot of cities that support their small business organizations.
And we can do.
Receive money.
We can do that, and there's things we can do, but a lot of these small businesses along Riverside Drive and what I've seen in San Antonio and stuff, what really starts it is they start off doing, and I'm just going to use Christmas, they end up starting to put Christmas lights up. I think every tree up and down Virginia Street should have Christmas lights on them too, but that, but we need to get it started somewhere and look at it, but.
Definitely.
Chair, entertain a motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did have a motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Adam J. Eleven, update and potential licensing of the use of the biggest little city in the world.
Deanna Geshider, Director of Communications and Community Engagement. For the record, we are here today at the request of council to report our findings and recommendations on a licensing program to protect the biggest little city in the world and the Reno Arch. Paul Klein and Alexis Hill will talk about the history of the brand's use and the future protection of its use. We are recommending that council support a licensing program and further protections of the slogan and the arch. Before I turn it over to Paul and Alexis, the purpose of the proposal licensing program is not to hinder the brand's use, but rather manage and protect its use for the good of the city, of city of Reno. Would the council like us to take you through the PowerPoint presentation for background, or would you like to?
I do find this important. I think we're going a little soft on this. I, I really do, especially when I see what other cities are doing, and we're being a little, we're being pretty easy on this, and we're, I don't.
Do you want to?
Let's hear the presentation.
Thank you, sir.
I'm assuming we, we own the rights to it? Paul Klein, Senior Creative Services Manager.
I don't think we do.
For the Office of Communications and Community Engagement. All right, so the biggest little city in the world has been serviced mark with the state of Nevada. We did this in nineteen ninety-nine. In the fifteen years that we've had this protection, it's been licensed six times, although we believe it's being used much more in merchandise and things along downtown. So what we're really looking to do with this program, at the start of the program, is to protect the slogan and the arch image, which are Reno's top brand elements known throughout the world. We want to track those that are using it for commercial and non-commercial use, and then, of course, to value it. To value the slogan, the arch image is something that's important. Reno encourages proper and consistent use. What we're really looking to do is, is protect its natural use. So what we'd like to see with a program is the more consistent. So, what we'd like to see with a program is the more consistent that it's used, Reno, the biggest little city without manipulation, the more memorable it is, the more equitable it is. This means that we want to discourage use here. These are some examples. As for the biggest little blank car diner place, or the biggest little blank in the world, we currently have protection over the full phrase, the biggest little city in the world. And that's what we're looking to preserve right now. And in all, any misuse of the brand or variation thereof that is derogatory to the brand we're trying to project, we will handle that on a case-by-case basis.
Alexis Hill, for the record. Per council direction, we did research some other cities to see how they manage their service marks. The Las Vegas Visitors Authority does not license what happens here stays here, or what happens in Vegas stays in Vegas, for any other purpose other than to market the destination. They're very strict on who can use it, and their purpose is to maintain the brand's integrity and protect it from overuse. The city of New York does not license the Big Apple either, but they do license their municipal brands, NYPD, NFD, DSNY, for merchandising. Their licensing program is run by a licensing director, and the program has a two-tiered system. All licenses under $8,500 gross revenue are free from fees and royalties. And if they exceed that, then they fall under a program that are each individually tailored to each brand and moved into a contract with fees and royalties. Keep Austin Weird is owned by a business alliance group. The group allows merchandise to use Keep Austin Weird without agreements, and the city government is not involved in the mark. And the Dallas Convention and Visitors Bureau has registered the Big D logo, and big things happen here. And the licensing of the registered trademarks is handled on a case-by-case basis. But they do monitor and restrict the use of the marks when it doesn't benefit the bureau and destination, and they do not allow the Big D to be used on T-shirts that they do not make. So, with the program, we are asking that year one, 2014, is free with an application and approval. Businesses currently utilizing the city of Reno service mark will be identified. They'll be sent a letter to register their use. The application and agreement will be free for the first year, and give the city's Office of Communications and Community Engagement an opportunity to review their use and require brand standards. Year two, 2015, we're looking to charge $50 for any commercial use. That's from anyone profiting from the use of the biggest little city and the arch. It would be free for all non-commercial use. So, if you were a nonprofit, you wanted to do a fun run, and you wanted to put biggest little city on the T-shirt, we would just ask you to register through the office, but it would be free. And year three, 2016, we consider additional fees and our royalties, and we build that into a contract. And we want to show you how simple the application is. And staff recommends this approach for three reasons. It gives the city a starting point to protect the brand. The program requests fees for commercial use, but it doesn't charge for nonprofit. And the program also allows for the city to grow the program and potentially look at the city of New York model that monitors the commercial use of the mark and generates revenue. And we also ask for council to recommend potentially looking into the pursuit of a trademark copyright and/or federal protections for the biggest little city of the world and the images of the Reno Arches. I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, so instead of doing that, why don't we just encourage people to use it and send them thank-you notes when they do?
No, I mean, I think we want to protect it.
How many staff people you're gonna have to hire?
We're not looking to hire anyone for this program.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think we should protect, I mean, we do have four people who've been working on this. I think everyone gets a cease and desist. It's 500 to come under consideration, and we'll create an exemption for nonprofits to use it.
No, no way, no way.
Brand protection is important.
Well, but Jenny, I think maybe what's being missed here is, all that usage is still promoting the biggest little city.
Or is it diluting it?
No, I think it is absolutely promoting it, and I can imagine the negativity that would come from saying that someone needs to be paying a fee or is in some sort of violation of something because they are promoting our biggest little city. I'm not in favor of that.
I don't think that's consistent thinking of cities. I was in Old Navy today and saw the NYPD, you know, shirts on dummies, or mannequins, you know. And I think you preserve the specialty of it, and I'm not an expert, but by doing that. And we have such a great one that we're just now ourselves rediscovering. But if I'm in the minority of that position, that's okay.
Can I ask, where did this come about, and how did we get to?
I had presented to council a service mark agreement with Circus Circus to utilize biggest little city of the world on a cup. And council asked for a comprehensive program. We wanted to protect the brand, which we thought that was the direction from council, but we also, we wanted to have a fee for anyone that is profiting from the use. We don't have to go that route. We just wanted to show you what other cities did, and we're happy to look at other possibilities.
Circus Circus used our arch and stuff and own a cup?
Yes, sir.
And they gave them away?
I'm not sure what they did with them. They're actually supposed to give me a report this year, per the contract, and they paid $40 for the use for the year. And that was approved by council last year.
I wonder how many they bought, Jesus.
I wonder, I wonder how many of the cups went back to their, wherever they're from, and promoted an additional visit to our city. I'm not, we're not gonna, no.
I used to, when I owned Boomtown, I used to have a Boomtown logo and had it on baseball hats and stuff. And I had people from Mississippi and Louisiana come and say, hey, I saw Boomtown hat down there. Do you have something? Come on, give me a break.
You guys spent so much time on this. Can I get a rap from you guys as to what are some goods, some pros and some cons, just in general, from what you guys researched?
We actually had some internal struggle ourselves about the philosophy of this, this brand, because we obviously want to further it as well. But it's important to protect it. So, when things do come up that really make us look in a light that we don't want to project to the outside world, this gives us protocol so that we can go back and say, we've created a program, and now we can say, you don't have authorization to use that, without hindering its use also. That's why the program is free. There may be possibilities in the future. That's why we put two years out. Maybe we can come back and look at what type of commercial profit that we can use for other things here in the city. But, you know, giving some time to document how much it's used, that gives us an opportunity to say, this is what it's really valued at.
Mr. Mayor, if I might jump in real quick. I was gonna suggest, if the council desires to, I mean, obviously, part of the recommendation here was that it's free for the first year, and so maybe that's all council authorizes at this point, is that we go through the process and see who's out there, see who's using it, and we can come back in a year and report to council the results, and then look at possibly...
How do we make the determination on what we like and what we don't like? Because even if you go back to that slide, the one where you had, I mean, that one.
Typically, you try not to bastardize your logo.
On those ones that are discouraged uses, I don't dislike those. If someone's using our, if it's still got our name on it and it's promoting us, it's promoting us.
Well, let me ask you this. So, if there is a T-shirt shop that's making $250,000 a year off of our logo, what do you guys think?
Fabulous.
Is it a local shop, paying taxes?
Absolutely. But, see, and I think because it's a government entity and it's a city, we are promoting for people to come here. Otherwise, our likelihood would not be out there. So, I think it's very different coming from a municipality versus a commercialized brand. So, that's where I think you really, you know, you struggle with it, you get into that. But I agree with Dwight. You know, you want more people to come here. You want people to recognize our brand and what we do.
You're encouraged use up there. What's that Reno Nogus or whatever is that? What the hell is that? The one up there, it says encouraged use.
What I see is that you guys presented something that's very simple, very streamlined. It's free the first year. It's not gonna, it'd be cool to track, to be able to track who's using it and what's doing what. And we all, and I remember last year at the strategic planning, that we all decided to go ahead, as Jenny was saying, to go ahead and take the biggest little city in the world again in a positive light. And so, I mean, we've all been different places throughout the country, and we all know that we get hit left and right from the negative use of what the city stands for. So, I think it'd be pretty cool to be able to track, and then at some point, but it doesn't seem like they're hindering anyone.
Well, no, that's, and I guess that was my, that was my point, is even these ones that we've got under discouraged use, I wouldn't have a problem, I mean, they're using our name, they're promoting us.
If I may, Dwight, what about, you know, if we legalize marijuana, it's the biggest little city bong, you know, or the little, little biggest city itsy-bitsy streetwalker Halloween costume? I mean, are you all gonna feel good about that?
I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just, that's what I'm saying is what, I mean, that's why...
Maybe that's, that's gonna be up to the person as to who gets to say yay and aye.
Right, and I don't know if that's a good thing.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, maybe staff can explain the criteria that you use to sort of break out the encouraged use versus the discouraged use.
We're trying to keep the brand icon intact. It has more value when it's consistent and out in the marketplace. You try not to detour away from that. So, some of the discouraged uses are not the best way to showcase our brand.
This is also, you should also know that this is the most family-friendly examples of discouraged use we can find. There's some things out there that we wish we could say, please don't use our brand in this way.
But then we would discourage all of them. We would discourage this too.
Yeah, you know, essentially...
I mean, it's either all or nothing, right? I mean, it's...
Right.
Oh, we wouldn't retain any discretion in this?
Well, it's what they're saying is the discretion is it has to look like the arch. And it has to have, it has to...
It would be tighter, yes.
What about the product? I mean, biggest little city bong, okay? You know, are we gonna want to go there? Or say, the Big Gulf drinks are, you know, super potency alcohol that's being sold for walking events. Is that what we want, the biggest little city, you know, logo?
This specific recommendation is for biggest little city in the world. That exact phrase, the image of the arch. It's those type of renditions, we don't really have a say over those. However, if there is an instance we can talk to legal about that maybe it's close enough that we have protection over, we can do that. But this, again, is for the specific phrase, we've service marked.
Biggest little city is going to be more difficult to own.
Under the, currently, the city council owns the service mark, which is why we originally submitted the cup for Circus Circus last year, and this program was asked to be created. We're looking, also part of this recommendation is giving the city manager's office the permission to approve people who use the service mark, and asking to renew it and possibly protect it federally. So, also, that is another part of this process that we're requesting.
Let me ask you a question, the one on the bottom with the bowling pins. What does it say?
Super Bowling Championship Weekend.
So, as a special event promoter, we would, or someone who supports the bowlers in our community, we would discourage someone using something like that?
We would ask the biggest little city in the world to stay on there, but they could put whatever they want on the bottom.
I'm not in favor of that. I think it's clear what it...
All right.
I can understand wanting to control it sometime.
The challenging part is the Reno 911 case is the best, where we don't have any recourse.
We still wouldn't allow it.
In that case, you're right.
They could, I mean...
Yeah, we wouldn't have any recourse on that.
But we'd like the opportunity, if we can establish the protocol, to be able to exercise that right when it would be appropriate. It is a good opportunity to own your brand, and you should try to at least keep some control of it. That's why we try to be very careful about how we approach it. So, it's not too much, but it is some, because we had a lot of the same internal debates that you're having.
I mean, to some degree, I get what you're saying, but I just look at, unfortunately, and probably a good thing I didn't see the other ones, but I'm looking at the ones that you're showing us, and I wouldn't have a problem people promoting their event in that manner.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, perhaps there's a compromise to be had here, rather than not doing anything at all, because I do, I do think that the council sees the value in protecting the brand, and that there may be instances where it really is detrimental to the city's image to have our logo used. It seems as if these types that we had previously identified as discouraged use in sort of best practice with brand management, but that's not the desire of the council, that what, perhaps what the direction of the council, rather than there be this full step, would be that if it is, if staff believes that the image is inappropriate or derogatory or inflammatory, that at that point, that it would need to come back for some additional review before a denial, if you will, of the use was indicated. But that for the purposes of tracking and trying to establish the brand value, that we do implement the voluntary registration, if you will, for the first year so that we can get some numbers behind how often this is being used and what the value of the brand is, and that report back to you within a year as to the results of those.
Are you gonna be telling the people what they can do with it during that year?
Mr. Mayor, it's not our intention. I think based on your feedback today, no. Unless what they bring forward to us is, in staff's estimation, damaging or derogatory towards the city, and in those cases, you know, we'll need to look at what the review process is, and if we are going to indicate to someone that we wouldn't want them to use, we would bring that back for council to make that decision.
So, staff time would be dedicated to this?
Yes, councilwoman.
Okay, we have, in my opinion, far more pressing issues than to dedicate staff and taxpayer dollars to this.
Understood.
Well, what was item number, so I can move on?
And that was not meant as an offense to the work done to this point? Let me make that clear. I didn't, that's not what it was meant. I just don't believe we need to spend money on furthering this.
I've just gotta know more about it before I can buy it, because I just think anytime I can get Reno out there somewhere, but I just, I just need more information. All right, now we'll go to item K one. City Reno Arts and Culture Commission, do you have an appointment? Who's on that? Arts and Culture, you have one. All right. Okay. Youth City Council. Continue. Yes. Okay, go ahead. Sharon Hardick Bear, yeah, we know her. Have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
And Mr. Mayor, is the civil service appointment coming back?
Yes, it's supposed to.
Okay.
It's supposed to have done this time, but it didn't make it. Doesn't matter, next time.
Next meeting.
Identification of mayor and council items?
Mr. Mayor, I have two.
Okay.
That we consider Reno be, being a no puppy mill or a puppy mill-free city, and create an ordinance to achieve that. Many cities around us and across the nation have done that. And I think it's something that we want to consider. It was actually a request of one of our very active citizens, our institute graduate and a NAB graduate. And I've been contacted by several others when they heard that he was making this plea.
I definitely think it, and I agree with you. And code enforcement ought to get on the ones here. We already have them down.
And it wouldn't be putting any local reputable businesses out of business by any means. They don't perform in this way.
All right, what other one?
And then the other is, relating back to the conversation we had earlier today and last year, I'll just make it really official, an official request that we take a look at our ordinance relating to the conditions for authenticating and licensing escort services.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, any other, yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I'd like to put on a future agenda item, the issue of synthetic cathinones, better known as bath salts, and synthetic drugs that mimic illegal drugs in many regards, and what our code says relative to their availability in, like, gas stations and convenience stores. I know that wording has been put in place that says that it's, you know, it's not legal to sell things that say cathinones. There's a certain word on it. And what's happening is trending across the United States is these synthetic drugs, they're just modifying one component to change the name of it to get under this. So, I'd like that to come back and maybe a report from PD, what's happening with regards to that. and maybe a report from PD, what's happening with regards to that, and how we can tighten that up. That's it.
Mr. Mayor, I have one. It's come to my attention that it's been more than a year since we had an evaluation for the city clerk. And so I'd like to put that we discuss a process for evaluating the clerk, much in the same manner that we established a process and criteria for evaluating the city manager, because the clerk is under the council's auspices.
Okay. Any others? All right. Liaison report. Ms. Brackus?
I have that.
Ms. Zadra? Mr. Delgado? Mr. Dorch? Ms. Jordan? Ms. Jordan, you got anything?
No.
Thank you. That's very good. Ms. Sheevy? Good. Reports on any conference and professional meetings? Resolution, resolution donating council funds?
This is resolution number 7932. Resolution donating council donation funds to Nevada Opera Divide Live Opera Performances, education and outreach programs in the amount of $500 that comes from the general fund.
Okay, so comes out of his...
They proposed by Councilman Delgado.
Yeah, we'll take it out of your funds, Delgado. As motion, I got all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item L5. Ms. Jordan?
Mr. Mayor, this was just to dedicate staff time to come back, particularly as a majority new council on packaged liquor licenses, particularly in the downtown court. More as we move forward to develop kind of what we want to be, what we're going to be, I would just like to know where we are with regards to some, certainly the liquor licenses.
Because we used to have 25 liquor stores downtown.
That's what I kind of wanted, was an update on what's trending, where, you know, and...
Ms. Zadra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for...
What?
The motion is...
Oh, yeah, a couple hours. Okay. Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Items L6.
For us to take a look at Plum Lane, what isn't in this language that I had specifically requested is also a TOD, consideration for a TOD along Plum Lane. But yes, absolutely to look at Plum Lane as a major corridor for the city, from the airport to Virginia, beginning midtown and...
You're absolutely right. We want...
Okay, Claudia Hansen, planning engineering manager. We wrote it very generally, so that it could be a TOD or whatever it forms.
Good, you can bring it back next meeting. Thank you.
Terrific. Thanks.
Motion, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. No public hearing, any public comment? No. Motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll now go into a Reno City Council and Redevelopment Agency meeting. Mr. Scott, somebody help the old boy up here a little bit, eh? He's been sitting there. All right, Madam Secretary, call the roll, please.
Sheevy, Brackus, Zadra, Delgado, Dorch, Jarden, Kishel?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Any public comment, guards?
Aye.
Approval of the agenda? Have motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the minutes for November 20 and December 11. Motion, second. Second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item E1, ordinance adoption.
Which is ordinance number 6314, and ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city of Reno, Nevada taxable lease revenue bond series 2014 to pay in part the cost of refunding certain outstanding obligations of the city, providing the forms, terms, and conditions of the bond, and the security, therefore, providing other matters relating thereto. And on this one, this would be a vote of only the members of the city council, not of the redevelopment agency.
Okay. Any discussion, any questions?
I sat with Ms. Olson yesterday and went over the bond documents. And I think as a result of that, there were some formatting clarities, and a new revised documents were presented to us. And I guess, do you want to just, what was this that was handed to me right now?
For the record, Jill Olson Finance, we are distributing, one, just minor change to the ordinance. The trustee and the financial advisor requested that we change the language related to the minimum reserve requirement, and this is consistent with many other bonds. This will allow us to not have to calculate and recalculate every year to change the reserve amount.
Okay. One follow-up question. Is there interest rate sensitivity to this bond, you know, once it's, or is it a lock?
No, it's not locked. It's based on LIBOR plus 40 basis points.
LIBOR, so it's going to float?
Plus one.
Yeah, 30-day LIBOR. Okay. Okay. A lot of my questions were answered, and I appreciate her, because it is complex, and I appreciate that. But I will not, I will not be supporting this again, and I do that knowing that the votes get recorded in the bond documents. But I believe that a revenue bond is a revenue bond, and bringing new revenue into a revenue bond with, you know, whatever justification made is not good policy. I don't think it is good policy. And I think it is precedent-setting in a way that we may soon regret and may not even be able to understand at this time the ramifications of. So I will be proposing this.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Chair Linder, take a motion, Mr. Dorch?
Would you reverse it?
Adopt. Motion, second. Got a second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no.
No.
Show it, vote 6-1. As you stayed for all this, Mr. Scott. Item F1, identification for future agenda items. Here none, we'll move to item F2. Senator Manager to use, Ms. Brackus, what is this?
Well, Mr. Mayor, we've been talking a long time about, you know, what is the role of redevelopment, and I mean the agency, you know, going forward. And I think we need a workshop, the agency. Well, it is paying off a lot of the debt, but there's also resources there, like some of the properties, and we just pledged some on the debt. But, you know, maybe there's other opportunities as housing sites for transitional folks along the, you know, the properties that the agency holds. And I think we need to talk about the status of the agency, or is redevelopment really our revisiting to downtown in the many facets that is taking, like the maintenance district that we did today, and your comment about packaged liquor. So maybe redevelopment for us in the future is going to be a focus on just downtown, and that brings in geography issues, because redevelopment is, goes out to Boomtown and out to Park Lane Mall. So, you know, that conversation, I think, needs to be had. And I think following up to the discussion we had today about citizen involvement is, we have an advisory board to us on redevelopment, and they haven't met in a while, and I think we need to work with them. Mr. Scott represents them, but there's a whole other crew. So I'd like a workshop to just, and I'd like to, you know, plan that and have that maybe in the first quarter. Okay, I was just, yeah, go ahead.
No, I knew our strategic plan is coming around, right around the corner on the fourth. I think as part of some of those conversations is reexamining the downtown redevelopment and everything else. Maybe we can continue this until the next redevelopment and see next time we meet on the joint redevelopment council to talk about where we want to go with the workshop, after that's been done, after the strategic planning meeting.
So you think have it February 4th, have the dis...
Have it after February 4th.
Oh, have the discussion.
Yeah, of all this, after. So we can see that first.
Okay. I can live with that. And then that can be conveyed to our appointees on the citizen advisory committee, and maybe they can even come February 4th and listen a little bit in.
Okay. All right. Any public comment? My favorite motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries. Thanks for staying, Mr. Scott, because we really needed you.